Twenty twenty three. We have a number of items on the agenda here. Um, just so everyone's aware, and you probably have seen it in the agendas that were distributed and for the public that's might be online. And listening, um, public that's here. We're trying to um, create a little bit of of additional structure and. Uh, timeframe to the applications. So uh, moving forward with each of our meetings, uh, we're instituting a couple of different things. Obviously, the six o'clock start time will can uh, will remain. Um, all of the applications, as noted on the agenda, there's an approximate time duration that we're allowing for each of the applications. Um, to be heard and be presented. Um, that includes our deliberation time internally uh, among the commissioners.
The recommended times we can't outright require that.
Not required, sorry, recommended. They're recommended. But we'd like to try and stick to them as much as possible in order to get all our agenda items done. Um, the other item is we, we will be going till. Ten thirty. At the latest, and we will not be hearing any additional agenda items after ten thirty. So things get prolonged or pushed, uh, takes additional time. And ten thirty mark passes, we will close out the active item that we're deliberating or discussing at that time. And no additional items will be heard, it'll be pushed to the next meeting. Um, I would also ask even of the commissioners as we're going through these applications. I know that we want to be as diligent as possible and thorough as possible in terms of the questioning. But I would ask the commissioners to also be as succinct and act and. And focused on the questioning that's that's. Put forth for the applicant, um, so that we can be expeditious as possible in our own review as well, not just on the applicant's side. So. With those things said. Why don't we get this meeting going? Um, I'll take attendance. Uh, Dan Radman here, Krista Nielsen.
Here.
Dick Ward.
Here.
Kent Turner.
Here.
John Cris.
Here.
Art Casavant.
Here.
Claire Tascornia.
Here.
Chris Herring.
Here.
John Engel.
Here.
Paul Knag.
Here.
Tom Benton.
Here.
And Alan Swirdlow. He dialing?
He's not on Zoom.
He's not?
No.
Okay. So Alan's not with us, okay? Alrighty, he is getting the emails, right? Cause he, I don't know if he has a town email.
Um, he filled out the paperwork to get a town email, um, and he has gotten emails because he, he has shown up before.
Alright. Alright. Um, so first order of business is actually. An older order of business, fifty one Main Street, um. We closed this hearing and we, we um, voted on this uh, last meeting, but due to a technicality. Um, where uh, Mr. Benton was uh, seated as an alternate. That day, but he wasn't, should not have been seated because we have the required number of um. Commissioners here for that application. We would just need to, and correct me if I'm wrong, we just need to re-vote on this application.
Pete can speak to that, but I believe it is reaffirming the vote.
Just reaffirming the vote. Pete, can you?
Billson?
Yes, exactly. It's, it's not a revote. It's just uh, affirming the vote without um. Any, any alternates taking part in it, um. So that the commission. You know, without any alternates, the main, the, the regular members of the commission, just affirming their vote. So that it's clean, there should only be nine um, people voting, and I think there were ten. Uh, accidentally, so uh. You should just do a roll call and, and people should just affirm um, their vote.
Do we need a new motion just because Tom Benton was one of the motions on? One of the items?
Oh, I didn't realize he was, okay, um. Well, it. Uh. No, I think if, I think if there's a, a motion and a second to reaffirm all of the votes for fifty one um.
Okay.
Maine, that's sufficient.
Okay. Do I need to go through and read each of the?
No, no. No, because it's not a new vote. It's just reaffirming a vote that, that you've already adopted. Um, minus um, the Mr. Benton, who, who was an alternate and uh. And shouldn't, we're just really clearing up the minutes as much as anything to make sure that the vote is reflective of who um, should have voted.
Okay. Okay, so uh, do I have a motion to reaffirm the vote of our previous? Denial of the resubmission for fifty one Main Street.
Mr. Chairman, this is John Cris. I so moved that we reaffirmed the denial of fifty my, one Main Street, New Canaan.
Okay, so John Cris first, do I have a second?
I'll second it. Dick Ward.
Dick Ward's second.
Uh, Dan, if, yeah, I'm sorry, um, you might do three separate, you know, there's a site plan, a text and a map amendment, so you might. Just. To dot I's and cross T's, um. Do that three times and, and I, you know, I assume Mr. Cris can, can um. Specify which of the three. Components of the application he was speaking about there. I know this is a little. Overkill, uh, but I would, I would do it three times, once for the tax amendment, once for the site plan, once for the uh, map amendment.
That's fine. Let me, let me clarify then. This is a, do I have a motion for the? Denial of the resubmission on the application for fifty one Main Street for the zoning regulation amendment?
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Cris. I so move that we reaffirm, that uh, we reaffirm our. Uh, denial of the uh, application of fifty one Main Street uh, relating to the amendment of the zoning regulation dated sixteen June two thousand and seven revised. December nineteen, twenty twenty two. Unless you wanted to read the whole thing.
No, I, I think. To be clear, we're, you're. You're uh, motioning to. Reaffirm the denial from the last. From the last meeting, which was March fourteen, fifteen? Fifteenth?
Yep.
Yeah, so from March fifteenth, twenty twenty three meeting.
Yes, this would be.
I'm in a P and Z meeting.
Hi, you are?
Yeah.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, this is, just to be, uh, well, let me uh, be profoundly clear, uh, I move that this commission. Reaffirm its vote of denial for the resubmission for application of Timothy Hollister Hinckley. Alan authorized agent for fifty one Main Street LLC owners for a zoning regulation amendment to amend the zoning regulations dated. Sixteen June two thousand and seven revised nineteen December twenty twenty two and to add a new section. Five spot. One, one housing redevelopment zone HRC, HRZ, sorry, in parentheses, to accommodate an eight thirty G set aside development of a twenty unit. Dwelling. Or twenty dwelling unit multifamily development located at fifty, fifty one Main Street in the B residence zone map T. Block forty three, lot eight two two and located in the historic district.
I couldn't read that. I wanna. I was trying to save everyone the time.
Time, but I want to be sure the T is crossed.
Fine, do I have a second?
I'll second without repeating it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Dick Ward seconds. To uh, roll call for a motion to deny on this first item on the zoning regulation amendment.
Just a motion to reaffirm, Dan, not to deny.
Motion to reaffirm the denial of the resubmission. Uh, I'm Dan Radman, I vote yes. Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
Ken Turner.
Yes.
John Cris.
Yes.
Art Casavant.
Yes.
Claire Tascornia.
Yes.
Chris Herring.
Yes.
John Engel.
Yes.
Okay. So that takes care of the first one. Second one is the. Um, petition for change in zoning boundary. Again, this is a motion, do I hear? Uh, well, I'll read the whole thing, so. Resubmission for application Timothy Hollister Hinckley Allen, um, Hinckley Allen authorized agent fifty one Main Street and petition for change in zoning boundary for property currently located. In the B residence zone and located in the historic district requested change is to designate the property located at fifty one Main Street map T block forty three. Lot eight twenty two as the housing redevelopment zone HRZ. Do I have a motion to reaffirm the denial of this application?
This is Krista Nielsen. I'll reaffirm, I'll make the motion to reaffirm the denial.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Well, I'll second this one as well.
Thank you, Dick. Vote call here, Dan Radman, I vote yes. Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
Kent Turner.
Yes.
John Cris.
Yes.
Art Casavant.
Yes.
Claire Tascornia.
Yes.
Chris Herring.
Yes.
John Engel.
Yes.
So move, so uh, so denied. Uh, final item is resubmission uh, for application of Timothy S. Hollister Hinckley Allen authorized agent for fifty one Main Street LLC as owner. For an eight thirty G set aside site plan application for the property located at fifty one Main Street in the. B residence zone map T block forty three lot eight twenty two and located in the historic district. Items two, three, and well, yeah, I kept going. Um, so that is the final item on this. Do I have a motion for um, motion for reaffirmation of the denial of this application?
This Commissioner Cris, I move that we uh, reaffirm the denial of the application just read by you, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Second.
Um, I heard Claire first. Get Claire on the second. Roll call on the vote, Dan Radman, yes. Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
Kent Turner.
Yes.
John Cris.
Yes.
Art Casavant.
Yes.
Claire Tascornia.
Yes.
Chris Herring.
Here, yep.
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion carries here with reaffirmation of the denial. Alright. Got that done in exactly fifteen minutes. Perfect. Alright. Moving on, next item, seven fifty one Weed Street. Um, hoping everyone got a chance to review the. The language that's been put together on this resolution. Um. There's, we will go about this the same way we have on the previous. Resolutions, both for primary and for resubmissions on similar applications. Um, I'll go through, we have to read each one of the items uh, on the resolution. Make any changes as we go along the way, anything substantive in terms of the change we have to vote on, anything that's. Your grammar or order, we can, we can just make that change easily. Um. There has been, uh, we pre-circulated this to a couple of people on the commission just to get pre-reads on this and incorporate. The bulk of the changes, so I think we're in good shape that way. Um, but I would like to um, just say to the commissioners when, as I'm going through this, feel free to jump in and stop me where you. Feel the need and we can change as required. So. This is, the first one is the um, site plan application resubmission. Uh, site plan application eight thirty G resubmission for seven fifty one Weed Street, uh, assessors map thirty two, block twenty, lot nine forty four. Um, so this is certify in a meeting of planning and zoning commission on March twenty eighth, it was moved by commissioners and second by commissioner X. To adopt the following resolution. We conducted, uh, it's, we conducted the review and findings based on materials and testimony in the record. Based on the fact that each member of the commission is personally familiar with the site and surroundings. So. Let's go through these findings. Um, background property and description. The applicant is WE Partners LLC affiliated with seven fifty one Weed Street LLC Carp Associates Attorney, represented by attorney Hollister, Timothy Hollister of Hinckley Allen. Uh, the development site is the three point one acre corner parcel located at the intersection of Weed and Elm. The parcel is currently improved with a single family dwelling built in nineteen twenty eight. Which has approximately nine thousand nine hundred and forty six square feet of living space, a pool house and an in-ground pool. The site is heavily landscaped with mature evergreen trees, bushes along the east and west property boundaries and a six foot tall stone. Uh, stone wall along its front property boundaries with weed and um. The modified site plan application proposes to demolish all existing structures on the site and remove the majority of the mature landscaping. And parts of the stone wall onsite to construct the affordable housing development. History, the applicant.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Rather than say affordable housing development, since only part of it is affordable, I would simply say uh. Multifamily development. Um, often in other documents that mentions just a multifamily uh, development, we should just say that.
So in our fifty one main resolution, we referred to it as an affordable housing development throughout the whole document, so for consistency sake, that's why I did not make that change.
Okay, fair enough.
And, and it's an affordable housing development as it's defined in uh, the statute.
Okay, fair enough then. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, history, the applicant in April of twenty twenty two submitted a three-part application as part of the affordable housing development pursuant to eight thirty G of the Connecticut. General statutes including a zoning regulation amendment to amend the zoning regulations dated June sixteenth, two thousand and seven revised August sixteenth, twenty twenty one. To add section five point one one transit oriented multifamily zone.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, uh, on the first sentence, the applicant in April, do we need to put a date there or just mention the month?
We didn't put a date last for fifty one Maine either.
I assume it's not needed to have a uh, have a precise date. I don't know, I'm.
I mean, we didn't, we didn't have the last one and Pete didn't see that, seemed to have an issue with it last time.
Fair enough.
No, that's, it's fine.
Okay, thank you.
B petition for a change in zoning boundary for property currently located in the one acre zone. The per, uh, request to change is to designate the property located at seven fifty one Weed Street map thirty two, block twenty, lot nine forty four as. TOMZ transit oriented multifamily zone. Item C, site plan application.
Dan, can this be put on the screen? Okay, ca- can it be put on the?
So when I did it at the last meeting, my laptop crashed, so I cannot, but this was emailed to you in your town email address, so you should be able to pull it up and look at it on your computer.
Alright, thank you.
Yep. Um, item five. I think that's where I was. Um, the affordable housing development application was reviewed and testimony received at four public hearings held in twenty twenty two, including. June twenty second, July thirteenth, July twenty sixth and September twenty seventh. Item six, the affordable housing development application was denied by the Pop Planning and Zoning Commission, the commission. At the November twenty eighth, twenty twenty two special meeting, the reasons for the denial of the three applications are listed in the three resolutions. Sent to attorney Hollister dated December seventh, twenty twenty two. Number seven, a legal notice of the decision was published on December eighth, twenty twenty two in the New Canaan advertiser. The local newspaper with a substantial circulation within the town of New Canaan. Then came, comes the resubmission. Item eight. Uh, under resubmission, attorney Timothy Hollister on behalf of the applicant on December twentieth, twenty twenty two submitted a modification, the proposed modification or resubmission. To the affordable housing development application within the appeal period following the December seventh, twenty twenty two decision as permitted. Pursuant to Connecticut general statutes eight thirty GH. The proposed mod, item nine, the proposed modification was officially received on January twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, the date of the next regularly scheduled meeting following the date of resubmission. Item ten, the proposed modification requests a site plan allowing construction of multifamily housing development, uh, sorry, housing project pursuant to the Connecticut. Well, should we change that to a multifamily housing development, since we're using that elsewhere?
Sure.
So, Mr. Chairman, um, on point nine, there's a semicolon in the middle of the sentence, it should not be a semicolon, it'd be a comma.
Uh, good point.
Okay.
Um, the proposed modification requests a site plan allowing construction of a multifamily housing development pursuant to the Can- Connecticut general statutes eight thirty GH containing. One hundred and two dwelling units of which thirty percent or thirty units are proposed to be deed restricted forty years as affordable housing. Located in one. Structure with associated site improvements, it also requests an associated zoning text amendment and map change. The resubmission. Proposes minor changes to the site from the original affordable housing development application. The dimensions of the structure and building setbacks remained unchanged. Again, we're talking about the resubmission here.
Dan, yeah, uh, quick question maybe to Sarah. If there are more than a hundred units. Then there need to be more than thirty units affordable.
Okay, um.
So maybe it was thirty one units that were proposed to be affordable.
No, it's been, I believe it was thirty in the application.
So thirty percent of one oh two is thirty point six.
Yes, so that means.
Round up.
Well. Thirty percent of one hundred is thirty. So thirty percent of one oh two is more than thirty. Percent, so I mean, it's more than thirty units, so you need. Thirty one units to be compliant.
Fine.
I, I'm guessing the application was compliant, I don't think. The applicant would not have submitted a compliant, but I just want to make sure that. The resolution is accurate because. Uh, it. You know, if you have more units, eh eh, thirty percent of one oh two is more than thirty percent, I mean, more than thirty units.
Would it be, uh, this is Commissioner Cris, could we say at least thirty? Would that address the issue?
Yeah, it would, it would. I, I'm, I'm sure the application was compliant, but yes, it, that would address the issue for purposes of the resolution.
Okay, so. Containing a hundred and two dwelling units of which.
At least.
At least thirty percent are proposed to be deed restricted. And just take out or thirty units.
Okay.
Okay. Item eleven, the alterations related to the resubmission can be found in plans titled section eight thirty G resubmission of seventy fifty one Weed Street. LLC and WE Partners LLC for multifamily residential development of seven fifty one Weed Street. By attorney Timothy Hollister, landscape plan by solely engineering dated December twenty first, twenty twenty two. And site plan review set of multifamily development by Deandrea Surveying and Engineering dated December sixteenth, twenty twenty two. Item twelve, the proposed modification includes the addition of a six-foot fence. Along the eastern property boundary where mature existing evergreen trees are proposed to be torn down. Additionally, a marginally wider vegetated island is proposed near the western property boundary consisting of understory shrubs. The one-way drive aisle in the northern parking lot has been narrowed from twenty four feet to sixteen feet. And the number of parking spaces in the surface lot has decreased from forty two to thirty three. For a total of one hundred and sixty six spaces onsite where one hundred and seventy five spaces had been proposed. A seven hundred and fifty square foot rooftop terrace and glass elevator enclosure has been added to the proposed structure.
Excuse me, should be have been added.
Uh, right, have been, yep.
Plural. Also, Mr. Chairman, on the first sentence.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the very end, uh, proposed to be torn down, just idiomatically, you don't tear it on trees, you either cut them down or fill them, so. Verb used.
Are proposed to be removed?
Removed, you've removed or cut down. Cut down and removed.
Cut down and reme- proposed to be cut down and removed.
Torn down, it's more of a building is torn down, but not trees, so. Cut down, removed, I would suggest.
Okay, thank you. Accessibility has been modified with the addition and relocation of ramps and sidewalks. The applicant also recommends the town construct a sidewalk along Elm Street's northern side. That connects the site to the existing sidewalk at the intersection of Elm Street and Kimberly Place. Finally, more updates have been made to the drainage system for resubmission. Number thirteen. The modification was discussed at three public hearings, January twenty fourth, twenty three, February fifteenth, twenty three, and March fifteenth, twenty three. This commission, number fourteen, this commission finds for all reasons stated in the original resolutions that the affordable housing development application was rightfully denied. Item fifteen. The commission has determined that the resubmission addressed its original deficiencies in protecting the public substantial interest in vehicular safety. Number sixteen. The proposed modification has failed to address. Um. Just. Wondering if that should be plural. Okay, the proposed modification has failed to address the substantial negative impacts the development will have on stormwater management systems. Additionally, the affordable housing development as proposed creates significant dangers for pedestrian safety and creates significant challenges. For vital potentially life-saving firefighting procedures. Then we get into each of the items, stormwater management. Number seventeen. The commission finds that there is substantial public interest in installing proper stormwater management systems pursuant to eight thirty G. Subsection G one A. The commission has the right and responsibility to protect the public substantial interest in proper management of stormwater as it impacts. Abutting neighbors and the town's stormwater management system as a whole. Number eighteen. Expert testimony from four professional engineers, PE, were received throughout the resubmission review process. Leonard Deandrea, PE of Deandrea Surveying and Engineering was the applicant's engineer and designed the proposed stormwater system. Maria Coplet, PE, is the town engineer and reviewed the application for compliance with the town's drainage policy. Joe Canis, PE of Ty and Bond, was hired as an outside consultant to review the engineer Deandrea and engineering. Engineer Coplets reports as after a year of adjustments, the proposed development still does not meet the town's drainage policy. Lastly, a group of residents hired their own private engineer, Steve Trinkus, PE, to review the proposed application. Item nineteen. After view, reviewing all submitted testimony, the commission finds that the following deficiencies remain in the resubmission as pertains to stormwater management. A, the stormwater management system does not meet the town's drainage policy and may not adequately capture stormwater. Because of this, immediate and material risks to persons, property and health could be created and be continuing. Uh, and continuing. In perpetua, well, no, are we okay with just leaving it as continuing? Yeah.
I believe it was.
That was my wording, um. I mean, be continuing, um. Yes, there's no uh, set date on that.
Yeah, that's fine.
For a certain time, unless attorney feels that it is vague or improper. I'm not hearing him, so.
No, I'm here, I'm here, uh, uh, Commissioner Cris, I, you could say and, and be continuing post-development.
There you go.
Okay, I get that, it's, it's implied, but I, I take the point.
That works. B. Relies on altering pipes in an existing easement which is held by a private property owner. Item twenty.
Uh, I, I'd like to comment here, I, I actually don't understand the. I, I understand the intent of the language, but it doesn't say that, because if we literally read it, it says. The following deficiencies remain in the submission as pertains to stormwater management and we either need, the plan relies on altering pipes. Or something like that, because simply relies on altering pipes in an existing easement which is held by a private, private property owner.
I think we resolve that by s- starting B off with. The current stormwater design relies on altering pipes.
The current stormwater design.
Proposed, the proposed stormwater.
Other, the proposed stormwater.
Requires. Um.
Yeah, altering of pipes.
Yes.
In an existing easement. In a neighboring property. Which is not. Controlled by the applicant, owned or controlled by the applicant. Is that clear?
Yeah, but that makes sense to add that.
Yep.
It's, uh, Commissioner Turner.
Yep.
Um, when we say altering pipes, I mean, it's. We're, we're. Eh eh, you could also change the diameter of the pipe, I mean, it's. Um, it's. Altering is a little general, do we want to be a little more specific? Replacing.
Use replacing?
Mm-hmm.
Pick up and replace.
They're expanding the pipes, it is expanding, makes sense.
Well, you have to.
This altering is actually correct here, it could be altered, it could be replaced, it could be expanded, right, there was some discussion about. Right, six versus eight inch diameter at one meeting as to whether it was really needed, I, I think we probably are fine, we are.
This Commissioner Chris, could we read the whole sentence back? We may want to vote on it too, given it's a material change in the language.
So it starts off with the precursor of item nineteen, which is after reviewing all submitted testimony, the commission finds that the following deficiencies. Remain in the resubmission as pertains to stormwater management colon. Item B, the proposed stormwater design requires altering pipes in an existing easement which is held by a private property owner, comma, which is not controlled by the applicant. Does that make sense, everyone?
Yes.
Got it.
I I, this is Commissioner Chris again, I'm wondering in the first sentence, since they following deficiencies, I wonder if you want to modify that within the adjective of material deficiencies. To make it a little stronger.
Which one?
At the beginning, so after reviewing all submitted testimony, the commissioner finds that the following material deficiencies remain.
Yeah, that's fine.
My my sense is these are material and it's simply being more descriptive of the, uh, concerns this commission is expressing.
Fair enough. Okay, um, if everyone's okay, yeah, I was about to say, if everyone's okay with that, let's vote on this change. Uh, again, we're per this pertains to item nineteen, subitem B that I just read. Go through roll call, Dan Radman, I vote yes, Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
Kent Turner.
Yes.
John Cris.
Yes.
Art Casavat.
Yes.
Claire Tescornia.
Yes.
Chris Herring.
Yes.
John Engel.
Yes.
Item twenty, the stormwater management system does not meet the town drainage policy and still poses a significant risk to the public right of way. At the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three hearing, town engineer Maria Coplet, P E, identified the proposed level spreaders on the property line are too close to paved surfaces, specifically Weeden Elm Streets, and have the potential to cause street flooding and icing conditions. In his March nineteenth, twenty twenty-three memo to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Joe Canis, P E echoed a similar concern. Item twenty-one, attorney Joel Green, comma, representing the abutting neighbors of the development site, comma, asked Steve Trinkus, P E, at the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three hearing to testify on the efficacy of the proposed drainage plan, given the soils on the site. Engineer Trinkus testified that the Coltech Systems Chamber System A and Chamber System B are potentially sitting in compacted soil, meaning they won't drain as modeled. If water does not infiltrate, there is no decrease in runoff volumes. This is not in compliance with the Connecticut D E P manual. There is no soil test data that demonstrates infiltration capacity. Uh, item twenty-two. The resubmission includes the resizing of an existing six-inch drainage pipe to an eight-inch diameter um, to to an eight-inch pipe within the drainage easement labeled on all plans as a sewer easement held with a private property owner. The applicant currently has no permission from the easement holder to expand their drainage pipe from six inches to an eight-inch pipe. Nor is it legally clear that they hold the right to expand the drainage pipe. The easement is highlighted in red in the figure below, and we include a diagram of the site with that figure. Item twenty-three, the applicant's engineer Leonard DeAndrea, P E, stated on the record at the March fifteen, twenty twenty-three hearing that regarding the stormwater management system, open quotes, if the six-inch pipe cannot be replaced with an eight-inch pipe, then the design cannot go forward. Close quotes. The commission cannot approve a drainage plan that is contingent on improvements located on a private property not owned by the applicant. Pedestrian safety, this is the second item. Item twenty-four, under pedestrian safety. The commission finds that there is substantial public interest in preserving the improve and improving pedestrian safety throughout the town in New Canaan. Pursuant to eight thirty G subsection G one A, the commission has the right and responsibility to protect the public substantial interest in pedestrian safety of all residents that live adjacent to or interact with the Weed and Elm Street intersection, a particularly busy intersection in New Canaan. The resubmission did not address previous concerns as outlined in the December seventh, twenty twenty-two denial resolution regarding pedestrian safety. The commission elects to incorporate portion, incorporate the portion of the December seventh, twenty twenty-two resolution referring to pedestrian safety concerns into this resolution with specific emphasis on the following statement, A. At all hours of the day, cars turning into onto Weed Street from Elm Street are stacked up to and beyond the entrance of the project. Up stacked up to, comma, and beyond, comma. The entrance. Oh, that's right, it's a quote, shit. Oh, well. The entrance to the project, this creates a visual problem for pedestrians exiting the project site and significantly increases hazards to safety. Pedestrians leave the site to walk downtown or to the train station will have to walk in the opposite direction west on the north side of Elm Street, of Elm, to the crosswalk at Weed, cross Elm, and then proceed east. The large volume of traffic at the Weed and Elm intersection with no vehicular pedestrian signalization will create a significant safety risk for pedestrians as vehicles turn left onto Elm from Weed will not have adequate sight lines. Um, site should be S I G H T. Well. It's a quote, but we misspelled it in the first place, we should spell it properly.
You can use the S I C reference there if it's in the quote spelled incorrectly.
Yeah. Will not have adequate sight lines into the intersection to see persons in the intersection. As a proposed transit-oriented district, T O D, pedestrian travel is encouraged and there is no other path from the project to the train station. The lack of traffic control signals will increase risks of accidents. Item twenty-five, to remedy this concern, the applicant has proposed to construct a sidewalk on the north side of Elm Street for the duration of the property approximately thirty feet. The resubmission then recommends that the town, at its own expense, construct a sidewalk that connects the applicant's proposed sidewalk to the existing sidewalk on the far side of Kimberly Place along the north side of Elm Street, approximately five hundred feet. The applicant stated in their resubmission that they will not fund the full expansion of the sidewalk on the north side of Elm Street, despite their proposed development necessitating this improvement to help protect public health and safety.
Uh, I I would only add that the applicant stated in its resubmission rather than their applicant is singular.
Okay.
In the first sentence, we say the, for the duration of their property. Is it?
For the length?
For the length would be, I think. Duration is.
Yeah.
Temporal.
True. To the north side of Elm Street for the uh, for the entire length of their property.
The applicable length of the, I mean, I don't know, it's not entire, because it's not wrapping around the whole thing, but.
Oh, true, for well, but we are describing the the fact that it's on the north side of Elm along that.
I would for that section of their property.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. Hmm. Um, I'll just follow up on the last sentence, the applicant stated in its resubmission that they will not well, should they then be?
It would be it again. That it will not.
That it will not fund the full expansion of the sidewalk on the north side of Elm Street despite its proposed its proposed development necessitating this improvement to help protect public health and safety. Item twenty-six. Um, and below this, we have a image of the site as well with annotations. The below image illustrates the applicant's proposed sidewalk expansion in black, the pedestrian pathway without the proposed sidewalk expansion in blue, and the proposed pedestrian pathway should someone dangerously jaywalk across Elm Street in red. Third item, fire safety. Item twenty-seven, the commission finds that there is a substantial public interest in the preservation of life and property by minimizing the threat from fire and similar catastrophes and challenges to vital and effective responses there too. Pursuant to eight thirty G subsection G one A, the commission has the right and responsibility to protect the public's substantial interest in fire safety. The commission finds that the resubmission did not propose any changes to the structure to address the outstanding fire life safety issues raised from the original application and subsequent denial. Item twenty-eight, expert testimony was received by two fire safety experts. The town utilized the expertise of Andrew Kingsbury to review the proposed modifications, and the applicant hired Joseph Verstig. Both of their resumes are in the record. Number twenty-nine, Mr. Kingsbury noted in his memo to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated February sixth, twenty twenty-three that the resubmitted affordable housing development did not satisfactorily address his concerns from the original proposed proposal regarding access to the building as pertains to ground ladders and emergency vehicles, locations of stairwells. Uh, that should be, as pertains to ground ladders, comma, emergency vehicles, comma, location of stairwells within the proposed building, comma, and the density of this development. And it's.
It's a sentence structure.
Yeah, as well as the density of this development.
Period. Each of these.
Or or comma, all of which places significant strain on the fire department's operational capability.
But how about this, individ- which individually and combined? Both individually and combined, even stronger.
That makes sense.
Okay, let me reread that.
Yes, please.
So Mr. Kingsbury in his memo to P N Z dated February tw- sixth, twenty twenty-three, that the resubmitted affordable housing development did not satisfactorily address his concerns from the original proposal regarding access to the building as pertains to ground ladders, comma, emergency vehicles, comma, location of stairwells within the proposed building, comma, as well as the, as well as the density of this development, comma, all of which places a significant strain on the fire department's operational capability, comma, both individual and combined.
I'd say strains rather than strain, plural. You said strain, singular, I would say strains. Certainly looks like more than one strain here to me, anyway.
Does that work?
What was the last part, both individual and?
Both individually, combined, individually and combined.
Both individually and.
All right, got it.
Got it?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, item thirty. The resubmitted affordable housing development would create several significant risks to life and property. Therefore, the commission elects to incorporate the portion of the December seventh, twenty twenty-two resolution referring to fire safety concerns with specific emphasis on the following statements. A, quote, the height of the building creates a challenge for fire rescue by ground ladders according to the New Canaan Fire Chief Bassett. The fifth story residences will not be easily accessible. In fact, New Canaan does not possess the equipment necessary to effectively fight a fire and would have to rely on Westport, which has the only piece of equipment in the immediate area that could reach certain parts of the building. This, of course, assumes that Westport is not otherwise using that piece of equipment. Item B, quote, when asked about firefighting operations at other eight thirty G set-aside projects in New Canaan such as Canaan Parish, Chief Bassett pointed out that firefighting operations work much better at Canaan Parish despite similar densities because of the design. The project is broken into multiple buildings that can be accessed on all sides with fire trucks. The buildings are limited to four stories inclusive of parking in height, making all units reachable by ladders.
We we need to amend this because, um, Canaan Parish is not an eight thirty G set aside, it is an affordable housing, entirely affordable.
Entirely affordable housing.
But it is not an eight thirty G set aside project.
But that was his, is that part of his quote?
So I copy and pasted this from the previous resolution.
So Sarah, I I I think that we need to either go back to the original tape to determine exactly what he said or indicate, I, because it it is factually.
Well.
So on the one hand, it is, it's not an eight thirty G, but all of the units are deed restricted to meet eight thirty G's requirements to be deemed affordable. So it is, so I don't know if Pete, you're trying.
Yeah, in eight thirty G application, uh, all units can be affordable in an eight thirty G application. It's a minimum at least thirty percent of the units have to be, uh, affordable, so.
This wasn't done under eight thirty G, it was the rebuild of the original nineteen fifty-four housing Canaan Parish was, so it was not applied under eight thirty G, I don't believe it.
Well, I, you know, I don't know what happened then, but it would qualify as, you know, it's, it exceeds thirty percent. That doesn't make it, um, not a potentially, you can have a hundred percent or something less than a hundred percent and more than thirty percent, which would still, uh, be an eight thirty G compliant development, so. I I'm not sure it matters, but, um, you just call it an affordable housing development if you want.
So Sarah, I I guess we have to leave that with you, if what, if this is a quote and it's what was said, we need to leave it as it is, but it it is factually.
Well.
It's it's not what Chief Bassett said, it's the lead-in to what he said, which was text that we approved in the language of the original denial.
Right.
So we're not modifying Chief Bassett's information, we're just restructuring the description leading into his.
So we should.
So we should change, yeah.
Thirty G set asides to add other affordable housing developments.
Correct.
Canaan.
Correct.
Or even make it, even make it an other multifamily housing developments in New Canaan. Um, you could say affordable housing or just limited, or just say of multi- multifamily housing developments. Which includes eight thirty G's and everything else.
Yeah, I'm like. Agreed. So item B, when asked about firefighting operations at other multifamily housing developments in New Canaan such as Canaan Parish, Chief Bassett pointed out that firefighting operations work much better at Canaan Parish despite similar densities because of the design. The project is broken into multiple buildings that can be accessed on all sides with fire trucks, the buildings are limited to four stories inclusive of parking in height, um, making all units reachable by ladders. Item C, quote, the lack of a center stairwell. The proposed building contains two stairwells on opposite ends of the building more than three hundred feet from the lobby. According to Kingsbury, in accord in his correspondence dated six ten twenty-two, this remoteness reduces the likelihood of both stairwells being compromised by fire, but creates very long travel distances for occupants and firefighters. The remoteness also increases the likelihood that occupants and firefighters will utilize the same stairwell. The remoteness also creates the potential distance increases the potential distance a firefighter will have to stretch a hose to attack a fire. Item D, again, quote, specifically, the town of New Canaan has six personnel on duty, an inadequate number to fight a fire at the property. According to the twenty twenty edition of the NFPA seventeen-ten, the desired staffing of a development of this size would be twenty-eight personnel responding in eight minutes. Mr. Kingsbury noted that a fire at the proposed multifamily development would overtax current firefighting capabilities as it would likely require all of New Canaan's firefighters as well as mutual aid. Um. It would require all of New Canaan's firefighters, comma, as well as mutual aid from neighboring towns.
And, Mr. Chairman, it's in a quote, I'm remembering how.
Oh, shit, yeah, yes, I forgot, sorry. Scratch that. Like we require all New Canaan's firefighters as well as mutual aid and would preclude the department from responding to any other concurring incidents. New Canaan fire personnel would arrive in two to three minutes, while mutual aid resources from Norwalk Fire Station would take approximately eleven minutes, Wilton would take approximately sixteen minutes, and Westport would take approximately twenty-two minutes. In his September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two correspondence, Mr. Kingsbury concluded, given the travel distances and response times of mutual aid resources. Given the travel distances and response times of mutual aid resources. New Canaan would in fact be challenged to fight a fire and perform rescue operations at a building as currently proposed for Weed Street. New Canaan Fire Chief Albert Basset confirmed this statement at the September twenty seventh, twenty twenty two Planning and Zoning Commission meeting stating. We would be challenged to get that adequate personnel and equipment on scene to perform more than one function at once. Item thirty one. Mister Kingsbury echoed similar concerns in his February sixth, twenty twenty three report to the commission with the following statements. The concern that parcel A, sorry, uh, subsection A. The concern that parcel delivery vehicles such as Amazon, FedEx, UPS, along with food delivery services such as Grubhub, Uber Eats and others. Will create obstructions for emergency vehicles is unresolved. Moving vans, livery service vehicles, maintenance vehicles and occupants moving in or out of the complex may also cause obstructions for emergency services. It is unfortunately common practice for occupants and visitors to ignore fire alarms. Emergency vehicle access should not be obstructed in any manner, including by the parking of vehicles. The applicant should designate loading zones that are clearly marked with signage and pavement labeling. Subsection B. Although Mister Verstig states in his correspondence that the design will meet the various codes. It is still recommended. Um, I know it's a quote, but. It's it's not proper, should it be various codes, comma, it is still recommended. How how were? You just cut and paste it from the other one, alright.
Also, I copy and pasted it from his report, so this is a direct quote of Andy Kingsbury's report.
I see, got it. Although Mister Verstig states in his correspondence that the design will meet the various codes. It is still recommended that the stairwells be rearranged or a third stair will be added in the vicinity of the lobby. The concerns remain that the remoteness of the stairwells will force residents to utilize the same stairwell. To evacuate as the firefighters are using to stretch fire hose and fight a fire. Sub item C. The applicant's response to a fire department staffing. To fire department staffing concerns in the resubmission seems to focus on New Canaan's ability. To respond to existing structures and a strict interpretation of NFPA seventeen ten. Not the staffing needed to respond to a fire at the proposed one hundred and two unit multifamily residential development. With a building of this size and the number of lives potentially needing to be evacuated. Even a relatively minor fire would quickly overtax the capabilities and resources currently available to the New Canaan Fire Department. So that takes care of those three. Um. Sections. Moving into balancing the testimony versus the need for affordable housing. Um. Section A, quantifiable harm. Item thirty two. The proposed hundred and two unit set aside development submitted under the provision of eight thirty G. Will cause immediate and irreparable harm to the public's interest in proper stormwater management. Pedestrian safety at the intersection of Wheaton Elm Street and the protection of life and property. Of those residing at or visiting the proposed affordable housing new development. Um. Uh, okay. I was just thinking, should we change that to multifamily? Housing development, but.
We've used affordable throughout the whole.
Well, we've gone back and forth a couple times, but. Um, item thirty three. The proposed stormwater management system does not meet the town's drainage policy. And the applicant's engineer has stated on the record that the proposed system cannot work without the expansion of a drainage pipe. Within an easement that the applicant does not have permission to expand into. Item thirty four. The commission finds that the resubmission did not address the applicant's pedestrian safety deficiencies and.
Chairman, on the number thirty three, I'm thinking you'd be strengthened in something along the lines of this. Um. Without the expansion of a drainage pipe. Within easement on a neighboring property, uh. Neither own nor controlled by the applicant. And that the applicant does not have permission to expand into. Or whether it's overstating it.
Hmm.
Probably okay as is, I'm gonna.
I think it's okay as is, okay, yeah, I think it's okay.
Very, thank you, Mister Chairman.
Um. So item, uh, item thirty, let me just reread thirty four, the commission finds that the resubmission did not address the applicant's pedestrian safety deficiencies. And suggesting that the town add five hundred feet of sidewalk for the development is insufficient. As proposed, this development creates an unsafe situation for the pedestrians to access downtown. Item thirty five. The resubmission did not propose any changes to the structure to address the fire safety concerns. As proposed, this development will create. With, not with create, will create. Create challenges for the firefighting operations and is unsafe for residents to reside in.
Mister Chairman, on a, um, just a parallel on thirty three, thirty four and thirty five. Um, because the verb is, well, let's say does not, and they said did not, and then it's again, did not. So it's somewhat different that we're talking about essentially same thing, so. I I I think they probably more accurately would say does not.
I think they should all be does not.
Does not, so thirty four should be changed from did not to does not.
Yep.
And then thirty five, the same thing. So they're all consistent.
Agreed.
Who can present tense that, you know, it's not doing it now, yeah, thank you.
Section B, the need for affordable housing. Item thirty six, the town of New Canaan continues to make assertive and creative efforts to increase units of affordable housing. And over the past several years has successfully boosted the stock of affordable housing units. With the redevelopment and expansion of both our Millport housing. Uh, I would just take out the comma. Behind affordable housing units. I should just roll into it. Boosted the stock of affordable housing units with the redevelopment and expansion of both our Millport Housing Community. And Canaan Parish, comma, the latter of which saw an increase. From sixty affordable units to one hundred affordable units. The community of New Canaan has utilized resources from the town. New Canaan Housing Authority and the state of Connecticut. To build and improve high quality and affordable housing in the town of New Canaan. These efforts have integrated the resources of the town and provided significant housing opportunities. For low income, senior and veteran households in order to enable diverse residents to live in New Canaan. Item thirty seven. At its own initiative, the New Canaan Public, uh, New Canaan Planning and Zoning Commission. Has updated and enhanced its zoning regulations to mandate that the development of five or more units. On a property. Must contain a minimum of fifteen percent deed restricted affordable units. Item thirty eight. Affordable housing is appropriate and welcome in any residential neighborhood or zone and must and most commercial zones in New Canaan. What is inappropriate and dangerous? To the public.
Well, I think it shouldn't say most commercial zones, I think I should just say commercial zones. Because we don't wanna. Create the implication that we're. We're saying any residential neighborhood.
Right.
Or more most, so I think it should just be in commercials and.
That's fine.
The other thing I think that we're missing in this one here is that, you know, we do point out that we've done fifteen percent. Deed restricted affordable units in our code, but I think it's also. Worth pointing out that we have a a pretty heavy levy on our building permits. Um.
I think when we were going through fifty one Main Street, we went back and forth and we decided that just those two in that section was enough and afterwards it was becoming overkill. So this was copy and pasted from the fifty one main.
Okay, well, I think it's like, what is it, a thirty percent fee on every building permit goes to affordable?
It's um, every time you're expanding, um, any sort of building, it's ten dollars for every a thousand dollars of construction value.
Yeah, so basically one percent. The what, you could almost say one percent of all fees, like. I don't know, I think that's a pretty significant. The structure, but. Okay. If we, if we all, I don't wanna slow us down.
Well, why don't, why don't we just add a sentence that says, yeah, New Canaan has. A long history of implementing. A. Funding mechanism. To fund the Affordable Housing Trust. Here in town, I mean, to simply adding that point is important and straightforward.
So are we adding a new paragraph or?
I would add a sentence to thirty seven.
Okay.
Yeah, since it's consistent with the initiatives we've taken on our own, which are not mandated.
So I think, I think. Do you wanna repeat that so?
Yeah, Art, you wanna, uh, sure.
In in addition, New Canaan. Has deployed. A. Taxation mechanism. To fund the Affordable Housing Trust.
For.
For the best, I was waiting for.
For all future.
For the benefit of. Low income households.
And co-development, you can say.
It could be, I I would, I was specifically not going further than that, I just, you know, cause that covers it.
And so I have, um, in addition, New Canaan has deployed a taxation mechanism to fund the Affordable Housing Trust for the benefit of low income households.
It's not really a taxation, it's not tax.
The fee.
Canaan, New Canaan has adopted an ordinance. Um, to provide that ten percent of. Um. Well, that a certain percentage of construction costs. Um, be deposited into the New Canaan Housing Trust Fund, I. Yeah, it's not really a tax.
So it's like the word tax to to fee and and that's, but I was trying to avoid Pete getting too specific because the. Trust is actually available for. No, both the trust funds could be available for this. Variety of purposes, so.
Right, no, I agree, I agree, I just didn't wanna use the word tax primarily.
So in addition, New Canaan has adopted a permit fee to fund the Affordable Housing Trust for the benefit of low income households.
Works for me. Need a vote?
Okay.
Yeah, we should probably.
Let's vote on that, uh, did everyone on Zoom hear that? What Sarah just read? Okay. Alright, let's take a vote. This is, uh, adding that sentence to item thirty seven. In the resolution. Dan Radman, I vote yes, Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
Ken Turner.
Yes.
John Cris.
Yes.
Art Casaba.
Yes.
Claire Tescornia.
Yes.
Chris Herring.
Yes.
John Engel.
Yes.
Thank you. Item thirty eight. Affordable housing is appropriate and welcome in any residential neighborhood. Or zone. And commercial zones. Doesn't seem, um. And in commercial zones in New, or and commercial zones in New Canaan. That's fine.
Chairman, can we just simplify and say, uh, affordable housing is. Appropriate and welcome in New Canaan, period?
Too simple.
Too simple, okay, simple. I've been accused of a lot of things with being simple, it's not one of those, okay?
Well, we could just say even so for, it's a appropriate and welcome in all residential and commercial zones in New Canaan.
Sounds good.
Sound good? Okay. What is inappropriate and dangerous? To the public is a proposal that fails to protect the substantial public interest in stormwater management, pedestrian safety and fire safety. Reasonable changes, item thirty nine. The applicant has repeatedly refused to make reasonable changes to address the outstanding issues outlined in this denial resolution. The commission finds that the applicant should be, the application should be modified. Finds that the application could be modified to address many of the issues raised above by making. Colon. A substantial changes to the height and massing of the building to address fire safety. Fire and life safety issues.
Yeah, it's a good change.
Sub item B. Adding a sidewalk between the subject property and Kimberly Place to facilitate pedestrian access to downtown. Excuse me, and to prevent jaywalking across Elm Street east of the intersection with Weed Street. And sub item C, a stormwater management plan that meets the town drainage policy without relying on private infrastructure improvements.
But Dan, shouldn't that be opposite, like stormwater should go first? Cause that's what we mentioned first.
Is that what did?
And then pedestrian safety and then fire.
Good point, yeah, we should.
It's backwards.
So just reverse it. C becomes, C becomes A and A becomes C.
It knows, so.
Good catch.
Yeah, good point.
Okay. Denial reasons, item, item forty. The commission has determined that requiring the installation of proper stormwater management systems protecting pedestrian safety. And preserving life and property by minimizing the clear and immediate risk from fire. And similar catastrophes is within their right as outlined in Connecticut General Statutes eight thirty G subsection G one A. And outweighs the need for thirty affordable housing units deed restricted for forty years.
I mean, at least thirty.
For at least. Yep, at least thirty affordable housing units deed restricted for forty years. Some, uh, item forty one. No reasonable changes have been proposed by the applicant to satisfy the concerns of the original denial resolution dated December seventh, twenty twenty two. Before I go to the end, does anyone else have any comments, questions or changes from what we've reviewed so far? Think we're good. Therefore, for the reasons stated above with the commission adopts as a collective basis for its action, the commission. By X number of votes will adopt the following resolution, resolved. The resubmitted site plan application submitted as part of an affordable housing development resubmission. Pursuant to section eight thirty G H of the Connecticut General Statutes is hereby denied.
For the reasons, for the findings and reasons as set forth above.
For the findings and reasons set forth above.
Or in accordance with the findings and reasons set forth above.
Hey. I call a vote. Dan Radman, yes. Krista Nielsen.
We, we need a motion.
I need a motion.
Mister Chairman, this is Commissioner Cris, I hereby move. That, um. This commission, um. Deny the resubmitted site plan application submitted as part of an affordable housing development resubmission pursuant to section eight thirty G subsection H of the Connecticut General Statutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Claire did second. Call a vote. Dan Radman, yes, Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Dick Ward. Dick?
Cause he walked away.
Uh-uh.
I mean, we still have a quorum without him.
Okay, we'll keep going. Ken Turner.
Yes.
John Cris.
Yes.
Art Casavant.
Yes.
Claire Tescornia.
Yes.
Chris Herring.
Yes.
John Engel.
Yes.
We do have a quorum still, so. This resubmission is denied.
Wait, here is Dick, he's back.
Oh, hey. Welcome back, Dick, uh, we just voted on the. Denial, uh, we read through it all, um, just went through the vote.
No, I heard the whole thing, yeah, I. I agree.
Thank you. That's a yes from Dick. Alright. So that takes care of the site plan application portion of it. We also have, uh, following that is the. Set aside site plan text amendment. Application.
So just the text amendment or the, and the map change?
They both say text.
Yes, I fixed that after those were printed.
Okay.
Which ones, which is where?
Uh. Should say it at the, in the last section. It's a petition for zoning boundary change.
So this one's text amendment, this one's changing zoning boundary, okay? Okay. Start off with the. Change in zoning boundary. Um. Same protocol here, um. Pete, do we have to go through the findings and application? Pete, do we have to go through the findings and application history? It's the same as the original application?
No, you can, you can incorporate anything that's identical to the site plan application and then just read. Though, for example, the application history, et cetera, I think is the same. When you get to item eleven, well, are you doing the text or the map first?
We're doing the change in zoning boundary first.
Okay, so. I think it's similar when you get to, when, when you get to paragraph eleven, it changes.
Right.
Prior to that, you can incorporate. Um, the language you read in the site plan, uh, resolution up through paragraph. In ten, inclusive.
Sounds good. All right, so this is for the resolution eight thirty G resubmissions for seven fifty one Weed Street, the change in zoning boundary assessors map. Thirty-two block twenty lot nine forty-four. Again, we, uh, we are foregoing reading all of the findings between property description and application history since they are the same as the. Uh, originals, um, application that we just voted on. Uh, we will. Forego Ida, reading items one through ten. And we'll jump right to item eleven on this resubmission application. Which pertains to the change in zoning boundary. The text amendment application would permit a development in accordance with the following table and it describes the TOMZ. Uh, TOMZ percentages and, um. Setbacks and regulations relative and compares them to the proposed developments.
Mister Chairman, and then. Number eleven, it says development, should we say multifamily development?
Uh, the text amendment would permit a development.
More accurate.
In accordance with the following table. And this is just, again, we're just outlining, um, outlining the resubmission and the. The pertinent information that was part of the resubmission. Item twelve. Alterations related to the resubmission can be found in plans titled section eight thirty G resubmission of seven fifty-one Weed LLC. NWE Partners LLC for multifamily residential development, seven fifty-one Weed Street by attorney Timothy Hollister. Landscape plan by solely engineering dated December twenty first, twenty twenty-two. And site plan review set of multifamily development by DeAndrea Surveying and Engineering dated December sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Item thirteen, no changes were proposed to the text amendment and the resubmission. Item fourteen. The modification was discussed at three public hearings on January twenty-fourth, twenty-three, February fifteenth, twenty-three. And March fifteenth, twenty-three. Item fifteen. The commission finds for all reasons stated in the original resolutions that the map change was rightfully denied. Findings, the resubmission continues to perpetuate its substantial negative impacts on the development. That the development will have on stormwater management systems. Additionally, the affordable housing development as proposed creates a significant. Create significant dangers for pedestrian safety and create significant challenges for vital potentially lifesaving firefighting procedures. Therefore, the commission finds that no reasonable modifications to the text amendment can be made to this application to address these issues. Item two. In a correspondence titled Resolution eight thirty G resubmission seven fifty-one Main Street text amendment application assessors map. Map thirty-two block twenty lot nine forty-four dated March X. The commission has denied the text amendment application. The proposed map change was filed, item three, the proposed map change was filed as part of a three-part application. Therefore, since the map amendment would permit by site plan approval only, the proposed site plan. The same public interests and considerations apply to a consideration of the text amendment and map change as applied to the site plan. Therefore, the commission finds that the petition for change in zoning boundary shall be denied for all reasons listed. In paragraphs seven through thirteen, seventeen through thirty-nine in the correspondence titled. Resolution eight thirty G resubmission seven fifty-one Reed Street application assessors map map thirty-two block twenty lot nine forty-four. Dated March X of twenty twenty-three. Submitted to attorney Timothy Hollister. Denial reasons, item five. The commission has determined that requiring the installation of proper stormwater management systems. Protecting pedestrian safety and preserving life and property by minimizing the clear and immediate risk from fire and similar catastrophes. Is within their right as outlined in Connecticut General Statutes eight thirty G subsection G one A. And outweighs the need for thirty affordable housing units deed restricted for forty. For at least. Least forty years, or at least thirty, yeah, yeah. Item six, no reasonable changes have been proposed by the applicant to satisfy the concerns of the original denial resolution. Dated December seventh, twenty twenty-two. Therefore. For the reasons stated above, which the commission adopts as a collective basis for its action, the commission by. Such vote adopts the following resolution. Resolved, the resubmitted. One second. So I can say it all at the same time. The resubmitted petition for change in zoning boundaries submitted as part of an affordable housing development resubmission. Pursuant to section eight thirty G subsection H of the Connecticut General Statutes is hereby denied. Comma, in accordance with the findings and reasons set forth above. Got that, yep. Do I have a motion?
As resolved, so moved.
Mister Engel? Do I have a second?
Second.
That Dick?
It was Kent.
It was Kent, okay. Call a vote. Dan Radman? Yes, Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Kent Turner?
Yes.
John Cris?
Yes.
Art Casavat?
Yes.
Claire Tascornia?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
This motion, this resubmission is denied. The final component of this application is the text amendment. And again, we're. We're not going to read the front end of this since sections one through. Actually, in this case, uh.
It's essentially the same.
It's essentially the same thing, but. Yeah, so the front end of this, uh, from the findings, items one through fifteen. Are the same as what we just went through for the change in zoning boundary, items one through fifteen, so I won't repeat those. I'll skip forward directly to the findings. Item sixteen. Item sixteen, this, again, this is in the text amendment application. Findings, uh, when considering a regulation amendment, section eight dash. Three A subsection A of the Connecticut General Statutes specifies that, quote. The commission shall state on the record its findings on consistency of a proposed regulation. Or boundaries or changes thereof with the plan of the development of the municipality, close quotes. Section eight point two C three subsection D of the New Canaan zoning regulations states that in making a decision. On a proposed text amendment, the commission shall take into consideration the plan of conservation development. Prepared pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes eight dash twenty-three. Item seventeen. The two thousand fourteen Plan of Conservation Development promotes the increase of housing downtown. To promote, provide for a diverse housing portfolio that is in keeping with the character of downtown New Canaan. There is no provision in the P O C D that recommends a density of thirty plus units per acre is appropriate anywhere in residential zones. Item eighteen. The resubmission continues to perpetuate its substantial negative impacts on the development. That, excuse me, substantial negative impacts that the development will have. That the development will have on stormwater management systems. Additionally, the affordable housing development as proposed. Creates significant dangers for pedestrian safety and creates significant challenges for vital potentially lifesaving firefighting procedures. Therefore, the commission finds that no reasonable modification to the text amendment can be made to this application to address these issues. Item nineteen. The proposed text amendment was filed as part of a three-part application. The text amendment was written to fit the proposed development. Therefore, since the text amendment would permit by site plan approval only. The proposed site plan. The same public interests and considerations apply to a consideration of the text amendment as applied to the site plan. Item twenty. Therefore, the commission finds that this text amendment application shall be denied. For all reasons listed in paragraphs seventeen through thirty-nine in the correspondence titled. Resolution eight thirty G resubmission, seven fifty-one Weed Street Site Plan Application Assessors Map. Map thirty-two block twenty lot nine forty-four dated March X twenty twenty-three submitted to attorney Timothy Hollister. Denial reasons, item twenty-one. The commission has determined that requiring the installation of proper stormwater management systems protecting. Protecting pedestrian safety and preserving life and property by minimizing the clear and immediate risk. From fire and similar catastrophes is within their right as outlined in Connecticut General Statutes eight thirty G subsection G one A. And outweighs the need for thirty affordable housing units and deed restricted for at least.
And so we're changing it to, or at least thirty?
At least thirty affordable housing units deed restricted for forty years. Item twenty-two. No reasonable changes have been proposed by the applicant to satisfy the concerns of the original denial resolution dated December seventh, twenty twenty-two. Therefore, for the reasons stated above, which the commission adopts as a collective basis for its action, the commission by a. X number of votes adopts the following resolution. Resolved, the resubmitted text amendment application submitted as part of an affordable housing development resubmission. Pursuant to section eight thirty GH of the Connecticut General Statutes is hereby denied. Comma, in accordance with the findings and reasons set forth above. Do I have a motion on this resolution?
This is Krista Nielsen, I'll move for the denial.
Thank you, do I have a second?
This is Commissioner Chris, I second the motion.
Okay, I'll call a vote. Dan Radman? Yes. Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Kent Turner?
Yes.
John Cris?
Yes.
Art Casavat?
Yes.
Claire Tascornia?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
This resubmission is denied. Oh, that takes care of the first application. Alrighty. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Uh, we're moving on to regular meeting items at this point. Are we doing on time here? Not bad. First one we have here is a pre-application. Uh, for the New Canaan Historical Society. At thirteen Owen Oak Ridge.
Okay, he should be able to do that.
Okay.
Mister Chairman, members of the commission, Michael Sweeney, Carmody and Torrance for, uh. The New Canaan Museum and Historical Society. As a point of departure, uh, thanks to, uh. Miss Carrie and to the commission for placing us on your agenda today. I know you have a lot going on and it's a full agenda, we'll try to be brief. The, the purpose of appearing this evening is really kind of twofold. One is to let you know what, uh, the historical society is planning. Get your sense that, uh, hopefully you agree as we do, this is a good thing for the town and will improve the campus of the historical society. And secondly, to seek some direction from you, I'll get, I'll skip to that in a moment, but. Um, we don't quite fit within the regulations under the different sections, at least as I read them. So we're going to be proposing a text amendment and, um, we're gonna have some suggestions and. At least the way I've thought it through with, with the kind assistance of Miss Carrie, we've bounced around a few ideas. But we did want to get a sense from you, if you feel comfortable doing that with at least some direction so that when we do file our application. At least we're in the right, uh, ballpark, um, for you to make a decision. So that's sort of the outline of our presentation this evening. Uh, with me is the executive director of the Historical Society, Nancy Geary. Also, two board members, Larry Caldwell and also Mark Markovich. Um, Mark, uh, prepared the documentation you have this evening, the site plan and the, uh, elevations and the, uh. Other material. Nancy Geary also, uh, submitted a, uh. A narrative description of what's going on at the museum and the Historical Society. No need to put it up on the screen, but if you've had a chance to read that or subsequently, if you have a chance to read it. Uh, Nancy will speak to that a little bit tonight, but it'll give you a little more flavor if you didn't know already what was going on, uh, at the campus. Um, also, just as a preliminary matter, a couple of months ago, we did file an application. To the Historic District Commission and that was approved unanimously, so that application of. Of this, uh, proposed, uh, structure to be, uh. Added to the campus has been approved by the HDC. So essentially what's being proposed is to replace an, an old dilapidated tool shed with a new structure. Uh, within that structure will, uh, house, uh, personal T property displays. Uh, that the museum, uh, uh, already, uh. Owns and, and displays elsewhere, but also to afford, uh. Uh, climate control to protect the material that's in the building and also to afford the opportunity to protect and save. Uh, the Addison Malar. Studio, which is located down near, uh, the Mill, uh, Mill River Silver Mine section of town. Nancy will speak to that in a moment as well, why we think it's important for the town in the Canaan to, uh, try to save that structure and the history behind it. I'll get, I'll get to it at the end, but essentially what we did is we looked at the regulations. And you'll see from the material that we submitted that we're already over coverage on campus. Uh, the new structure will be slightly larger than the existing structure, almost in the exact same spot shifted. Slightly, so we're exacerbating, uh, the coverage issue on the site. Um, we looked at the historic preservation regulations and. To see if we could fit in there, um, I think the intent of the commission, which has been prescient over the years and, um. With that regulation to preserve structures doesn't quite fit here because we need to erect a new structure to preserve. Historic material, not, not the structure itself. So we didn't quite fit within the regulation, at least the way we read it, without perhaps making a modification. Similarly, we looked at the non-conforming structure section of the regs. Don't we fit within there either for what's being proposed? Uh, again, after some conversations with Miss Carrie. Um, I think, we think that the most elegant approach to this would be to look at section. Uh, three point two C eighteen. And in that section of the regs, what the commission has done over the years is for, uh, important uses to the town. Uh, has received treatment where by wife's special permit. So that there's no unintended consequences, certain uses have been called out such as, uh, governmental uses, municipal, uh, uses. Uh, clubs, recreation, uses, uh, hospital uses. And allows the commission, again, under special permit. So at least allow an applicant to have the language and the tools to. To ask for permission to very cer- very certain sections of the regs. In this case, our application would seek to. Allow the commission to approve exceeding coverage by a few hundred square feet over what's there now. So that is essentially is, is the outline of, uh, what we're seeking to, uh, accomplish and I'll ask. This, uh, hearing now to speak a little bit about, uh, what the use of the building, what's going on on campus.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your time. I'm Nancy Geary, I'm the executive director of New Canaan Museum and Historical Society. Um, I did submit something and I don't want to be duplicative, but. The bigger picture is the Historical Society tells the stories of the town, its businesses and its. the bigger picture is the Historical Society tells the stories of the town, its businesses and its people. And we do that through our buildings and through the objects that we can display and through the exhibitions we put together. Um, the Tool Museum, if any of you have been over there, it was it was built as a garage in the nineteen thirties by the people that lived in the Hanford-Silliman House. And it's unfortunate that we really can't display much of anything besides metal tools. Um, it is not climate controlled, moisture gets in, animals get in. And what we now have is the opportunity to build something that will house not only some of the tools, but some very important items that we have not had before on display. Uh, the first of which is a carriage, an eighteen twenty-five Demarest carriage that we have been restoring for about a year. Um, it will be hopefully finished in the next six months or so. Um, the the second thing is the Ho Acorn Press, which is there. It was given to us by the advertiser and we really use it to tell the story of the impact of a newspaper on a small town. And the advertiser has given us all kinds of other things. And if we could have the space to make the printing press operational, we will have an old-fashioned print shop right on campus. Um, and the third thing, and certainly the most important thing for these purposes are is the Millar Studio. Addison Millar was one of the founding artists of the Silver Mine Art Colony. Um, he tragically died very young and his daughter was raised by the Borglum. Solon Borglum was a sculptor. Uh, you may have more people have heard of his brother who did the Mount Rushmore, but um Solon Borglum was a very famous sculptor and the Borglum family who live on Mill Road have gifted us Millar Studio. So it is a very rustic um building. It it uses the bark from the mills at the turn of the century when it was built and we have a plan to disassemble it and rebuild it and it will be partly enclosed and partly attached to this new building. I it will give us also space to have permanently on display rotating um paintings by the Silver Mine artists. So it will be sort of its own exhibit space on the campus. Um, the other thing is looking at the drawings. If you've been to the campus over the last six years, we've made a lot of changes, a lot of improvements. We're trying to make the campus more welcoming, which we think we have. There's signage, there's a terrace, there's um painted and restored buildings. And what this will do is really attach the campus. There will be brick walkways, more grass, less part, less pavement. There will be the same amount of parking spaces, but less pavement. And it will be one coherent uh campus, which is also very important for when the schoolchildren come because right now it isn't really clearly marked where they're to go. And one of the things about having grass connecting this new building to the campus is that there will be a more clear path and delineation for them to get off the buses and come for their school tours. Um, we think that this new building, which will be paid for, we've we received some ARPA funding to move the studio and um otherwise will be paid for by private donations will be an enormous addition to the town. Um, and it in terms of what it looks like even from Owen Oak Ridge, it's a it's a barn-like structure that that hearkens back to when there was a barn and a farm there. So we think it's a it's a major improvement to the campus um and one that will allow more visitors to come and see some of the things that are very special in this town's history. So I'm happy to answer any questions or I can just sit down.
Commissioner Turner.
Commissioner Turner has a question.
Just a question for it. Um, as far as the uh new parking lot, the what kind of lighting would you envision?
Sorry, I didn't catch that. What type of lighting is proposed for the new parking lot area?
Um, this this building is really only going to be used for the day, so there's no parking lights in the parking lot currently. Um, there may be some lights that illuminate parts of the building um at night just to for safety concerns, but the parking lot itself will not be lit.
So the lot as well as the pathway that connects the parking lots, none of that's not on your property?
No, we you we use that during the day. Um, and right now, so the the main parking lot, if you drive into the Historical Society at thirteen Owen Oak Ridge is owned by Saint Michael's Lutheran.
Right.
We have an easement to use it. The upper parking lot, which is marked as gray, is our parking lot. Um, we are going to repave that and reline those. Right now, if you go up there, it isn't paved properly. I mean, the pavement is all cracked and it's not lined properly that we will not be adding lights to that at night.
Okay.
Um, the occasional times that we use parking at night, um, we we still don't use that upper parking.
But the.
Okay, great. Um, as far as handicap parking, you have a couple of spaces?
We will have a couple of spaces. Um, our main building is handicap accessible. There's there's a ramp and there's um an elevator inside. The historic buildings are not handicap accessible. Most of them don't have high thresholds. You could maybe navigate, but they're not ADA compliant. This new building will be. It will have a um a slightly graded ramp to get into the front door.
Okay, and my final comment is um, I personally think the proposed building is beautiful and it could be very striking.
Oh, thank you very much. We do too.
Ms. Gary, just a quick question. Uh, do you anticipate a significant increase in either foot traffic or volume? And have you talked to your adjoining neighbors?
We have we have not talked to our neighbors yet. Um, we wanted to have this pre-application hearing and then we will certainly talk to them. There is increased foot traffic as it is now because the campus is so much better. So if you um come over at any given time, there may be dogs on the lawn. There's going to be people and children. Toddler time comes across the road and uses the lawn. Um, so there is increased traffic. We frankly hope there will be increased foot traffic because that's why we're building this, to make it um a a place that visitors want to come. So I I absolutely hope there's more foot traffic. Parking has never been an issue. I mean, we are not, um, we've never had, you know, thousands of people on a day and I don't think that that's going to change.
And and thank you. And I'm sure you then will talk to neighbors, but the the pathway that is shown on the schematic, is that in addition to the sidewalk that exists just outside of the wall there? Because if you walk on that street, there is.
Yes, if you walk on the street. So we have a low stone wall that that goes around the curve at Owen Oak Ridge and there's sidewalk. It's not our sidewalk. It's town sidewalk on the exterior and it leads all the way up to Saint Marks and then I think beyond. Um, what we did a couple of years ago is we did a what we call the historic trail and it's a it's the darker orange color and it's a series of brick walkways that connect the buildings. Um, and there's a brick terrace that has some seating and the additional pale yellow on the schematic is is some additional brick pathways that will connect the new building to the Hanford-Silliman House, which is the white uh building below it. And then you can walk over and you could see the Rogers Studio and you could see the Rock School.
This is Commissioner Chris. Are there be any changes or additions to plumbing of this?
It won't have any plumbing. It won't have a bathroom. It won't have um a kitchen of any kind. It's it's really a barn-like structure because the objects that will be on display there are big. Um, and so the idea is we have bathrooms at the Hanford-Silliman House. We have handicap restrooms at in our townhouse. And so that's where people will come if they need to use the facilities.
And could you um delineate for us some of the building materials you're planning to use?
Um, I'm gonna ask Mark Mark. Yeah.
It would be visible from outside.
I will I will say that the roof is the same kind of shingle that we put on the townhouse with the approval of the Historic District Commission about a year and a half ago. Um, the the siding is going to be the same board and batten that we have on the conference room, what we call the Lindstrom Room extension of the townhouse. Um, and Mark, I I'm sure I'm missing some stuff, so I'll get you to.
Uh, let's go back to the second slide. Hello, my name is Mark Markovich. I'm on the board of the society. I'm also an architect and resident of the town for the last thirty years. Um, so a question about the materials. Uh, this is a view from the from Owen Oak. Um, we like to think of it as a traditional barn with a modern twist. Um, that being the glass wall that uh contains the one of the main features of the building, the the carriage. Uh, the glass, uh, we've been looking at Marvin windows. Um, there's a one of their lines is called modern and it's um uses relatively thin mullions. Uh, so that's what that represents. As we go around the building, the sides are mostly solid and uh we are looking at board and batten finish pretty much identical to the addition to the townhouse, which is about uh battens every twelve inches. Um, and um, as Nancy mentioned, the the roof is asphalt tile also the same as in the the main townhouse. Uh, there's also going back to the elevations, there's a barn door on the side, which will enable the carriage to be taken in and out if, you know, occasion uh allows for it. Uh, then let's go to the next slide. Um, so in the back, uh, we see the barn, but with a different twist, which is the uh addition of the Millar or the the reproduction, reconstruction of the Millar Studio, which is uh was originally uh built as a lean-to to an existing house. So it reproduces the same form and of course it's clad in the same material. Those vertical stripes are bark slabs, which is like the first cut of the log that uh is milled. Uh, and then it's meant to be seen as a fairly independent element. So there's really glass all around it. There's uh similar glazing on the upper portion, the the triangular portion uh similar to the one in front. There are also uh thin uh windows on either side, again, to kind of give it more independent distinction from the rest of the barn or the the structure. Next slide, please. Uh, yeah, these are the the plants and elevation and section. Uh, the kind of the character of the barn is carried inside uh even though the walls will be finished and insulated and and so on, the usage of collar ties. Uh, we think will give it uh not only structure, but a nice kind of barn-like touch. Uh, next slide. And these are elevations. Upper left is the uh elevation looking out onto Owen Oak with the the maximum glass uh going around to the right is the one the elevation viewed from Hanford-Silliman House with the front door that would go right into the central display area. And on the right, you see the Millar Studio um addition. Uh, reusing the or or replacing the the bark cladding that exists including an existing door, which is um will be retained not as a using useful door, but as a piece of the facade. And then keep going around. We see the rear elevation uh as described before and similar north elevation at the bottom, right?
Can I just chime in on one thing? Um, Mark has used reproduction and and restoration. So the issue with this studio is that our intention is to disassemble the boards and move them. It's too high to actually move the structure. You'd have to take down all the electrical wires between Silver Mine and New Canaan to do it. So we would disassemble it and rebuild it. Our hope is to use completely reuse all of the siding. It's possible that some of it will be so fragile that we will have to get um additional boards to fill it in. And um our board president, who's here, has talked to several of the mills who are willing to donate their first cuts if we need them so that it 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 seems uniform.
This is Commissioner Chris. Again, two follow-up questions. One is just an uh advisory that as the building footprint is going to be expanded slightly, you'd want to speak to our town engineer regarding drainage issues.
Absolutely.
So you want to get, you need to do that.
By the way, we are replacing uh a large area of what is parking right now, what is asphalt. So we'll be replacing that with permeable surface grass.
Good.
So uh we're moving in that direction.
The other is, are you planning any landscaping enhancements? Or landscaping around the.
I mean, grass mostly, uh, you know, maybe some um low shrubs and places that there may be a condense probably will be a condenser unit on on the one of the sides on the driveway side. Uh, so there may be some planting there just to screen it.
Condenser would be for AC?
Yes.
Yeah, I would I would suggest that as part of a submission, you would want to have a detailed uh landscape plan, in particular screening issues for the modern apparatus uh as as part of that and um uh choice of plans for something local and uh friendly would be a good idea too.
Well, dude.
Are you are you saying a a plan that would screen the glass wall from the street?
No, the condenser unit in particular.
Oh, okay, okay.
Condenser. Yeah, the uh the the modern technology.
Yeah.
You would want to screen appropriately through. We would like to hear what you have to say on that, but some type of screening would be appropriate.
Okay.
Those are my questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Again, commissioners, this is just a pre-application submission, so feel free to comment on anything you'd like to see, Mr. Engel.
So I I'm uh it it occurs to me that the orientation of this building is that the big glass wall is west-facing, which is nice. And you're going to get morning light on the peak coming in the other side. Uh, so it'll benefit from natural light. I I was wondering whether there was a solar um thought. Uh, it looks like there is a south, a big rectangle of a south-facing roof and that might be something you consider because I know it's been important for all the other town buildings to to look for.
There's also a pronounced overhang over both east and west uh facades. Uh, we will be using low E um laminated glass, which, you know, offers some, you know, resistance. Um, and yes, it is. It is a large area of glass. On the average, however, you know, the sidewalls are pretty solid. So um, you know, we will um, you know, use the COM check to you know, to 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 determine the.
I mean, so solar might be a way. I know that we have geothermal on the uh Gore's Pavilion. I don't know how successful it has been, but I I just know that the the, you know, it's it's important, you know, consideration for all the town buildings and it would be one way to get rid of an external condenser on your very pretty campus by doing a geothermal, which eliminates the need for an exterior condenser, something you might consider.
Okay, I think I think to be fair to the applicant, they have to weigh that with the HDC's review as to the appropriateness in the Historic District, so.
Well, that's what I'm saying, getting rid of a condenser instead of adding one.
It well, I don't not exactly, I'm not exactly sure if solar panels on the building are going to be.
No, right. Doing geothermal might eliminate need for solar and a condenser.
Good point.
I'm just saying, consider these things because we'll probably ask them at the, you know, when they.
Sure.
When they submit.
The uh Rogers Studio does have a condenser in the back, so.
Okay. Commissioners, any further comments for the applicant?
I was just, uh, one quick thing. I think it's important for you to note uh just the the reduction in asphalt in terms of coverage in the application, just to make sure that's noted and the um and whether you, what type of lot, uh parking lot you're going to make, whether it's going to be a you know, a pervious parking lot or an impervious parking lot. Um, you know, for example, some of the applications have that parking spots be pervious, i.e. papers versus asphalt. And then um but just want to highlight, you know, the things like the roof pitch and your considerations on, you know, roof pitch matching the other buildings on the on the campus. So just some commentary on
Okay.
what your thoughts are in terms of those pieces, just help us.
Roof pitch is seven and twelve and which is close to the Hanford uh Sullivan House. It's a little less than Roger's Studio, but it's in that neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah, that kind of thing is helpful, I think, to highlight those. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, wait, hold on. This is Krista Nielsen. I had I had two questions or one question. Um, mostly, so I I think it's a a very nice looking building. I think it's a a nice idea. I have questions about the process in terms of the text amendment that you're proposing for the zoning ordinance and I was just wondering if we could talk a little bit about that.
Sure, thank you. Thank you for the the feedback.
Sure, thank you, thank you for the the feedback thus far, we'll certainly uh uh take it into account and uh. Uh we didn't get too much detail available tonight, it was just as a pre-app, just to get a sense from you. Uh I'm always aware of Mr. Chris's concern about landscape, and we actually talked about that already, so. We'll address that as well as of screening, that sort of thing, hopefully it'll be to your satisfaction um to process. Um I think the two sections of your regulation to look at would be looking at the Historic Preservation Section, seven point seven, but. I I think in order for us to fit into this about what we're doing, which is a another structure, which is preserving material. Inside the structure, which I don't think the original reg was meant for, I think it would require a fairly substantial rewrite of the regulation, and I think. We'd get caught in the weeds. Um the other section of the regs that we were looking at was section three point two C eighteen. And what you've done here in the past is. Um I I think we qualify now under the philanthropic and. Uh alumnary uh uses under the regulations, we could, we could call out another. Museum section there and then put together um. Some description, uh descriptive language uh in the. The section, which really only apply to this campus, I mean, your biggest concern is unintended consequences. So what I think what we would do is call out this use specifically um in that section. And then where you have the ability of the commission um under the regs. Three point two C eighteen, where you have clubs, the hospital, um what else is in there, municipal uses, those type of things. Um in that section, put a very detailed description of the only type of use. That could be given um. Uh special treatment for coverage, so to speak, under the regulations, and of course, by special permit only, it would not be as of right. Um and then there we would describe a campus of X number of acres, must be contained within the historic uh district. Uh must be on Owen Oak Ridge, must be a use dedicated for a museum and historic preservation. Dedicated solely to New Canaan, maybe some other ideas we have as well, or ideas that you will have. So it'll be so targeted that it really is for this use only. I think that's probably the most elegant way to approach it, at least in my view.
And Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Uh uh hold on, Mr. Chris, I just wanted to finish my line of thought here. Um so. Why, so you're basically, I I'm looking through that section right now, and I I see where you're heading, and I don't have a lot of issues except. I don't see anywhere in that section where we have made exceptions to our dimensional standards for any of these uses. And I'm guess I'm wondering why this isn't a variance.
So it's in, I think it's section six or se- it's three point six or seven, there are coverage exceptions. For clubs, for municipal facilities, the police station is about to come in with an application requesting a coverage exception. Um I can pull up.
Maybe I'm just not looking in the right place.
It's it's possibly three point seven two.
Okay. Okay, so we do have precedent then for not requiring a variance for this and for doing it.
You do, so if you go to three point seventy-two, excuse me for interrupting, um there you have a list of uh. Uh uses which allow the commission, again, by special permit to uh to look at coverage issues, and what you've done there in the past is. Um again, in the judgment that the commission makes under its planning function, there are certain uses, there are certain, you know, facilities uh in town. That we deem to be very important, and uh it's not a run-of-the-mill uh, you know, residential use or commercial use. But because this is important to the town, we're gonna call it out. And again, at least give the commission the ability to say yea or nay, and give us the ability to have the language to to seek permission.
Okay, I I see that section now, and that that makes more sense to me than what I was looking at before, thank you.
My ear, I should have uh referenced that upfront, sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this Commissioner Chris, I'm wondering, just thinking out loud, I mean, for, let's say, the library. A special zone was created for the library, I'm wondering if, but perhaps a special zone for the. Um Historic Society may be a way to address this. Uh with special. Uh rules and regulations that are particular to this very. Different, special, unique uh use of uh town of property in the town. Supposed to try to take current regulations and try to move them around to fit this. Uh start with a clean sheet of paper, maybe a way to do it. We have done that in other cases, Mr. Chairman. I'm wondering if perhaps it's something at least the applicant may want to think about as a potential submission to this commission.
So Mr. Chris, this is Krista Nielsen again, and I mean, I'm pretty consistent on this across the board. I don't think that we should be creating special zoning districts for every single piece of land in this town. We have done it, we did it for the library, um and I wasn't a huge fan of doing that then, and I think continuing that process really. Flies in the face of what zoning is intended to do. So um I I hear what you're saying, and yes, there is precedent for that as well, but I personally would not be on board with continuing that pathway.
And I I also think, this is um Chairman Radman, I also think, given the. The fact that three point seven specifically deals with uh dimensional exceptions uh in in particular yard exceptions in coverage. There might be something, you know, we could modify there to accommodate the historic district or the historic zone. Um as one of the exceptions.
That was our thinking as well, to be as targeted as possible, to be as la- laser beam as possible, but also to have enough verbiage to it so that you're comfortable that. There couldn't be another application within this limited area of town.
Yeah.
That you weren't anticipating. Of course, you could always say no anyhow, because it would be a special permit use.
Yep, understood. But you can, I mean, these are, these are details you'll continue to work with Sarah on. In terms of the language of the, however you propose to submit to us when you do come before us.
Correct, we have some ideas now, and I I suspect there may be some additional ones, we, again, our our goal again is to tailor it as specific as possible, so. We're open to suggestions that we might not be thinking about now, that again, will keep us within that crucible.
Okay. Anything else?
Very good, no, we appreciate the feedback and we'll ready an application and hope we see you in a month or so.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks again.
All right, Commissioners, um next one we have is forty-three Viddy Street. Upon application of David J. Rucci Lampert to E. Rucci LLC, authorized agent for Columbus Center of New Canaan. Owners for a site plan approval of sections. Uh four point five point C point uh eleven. For a change in use from an existing dry cleaner use to retail in the business B zone at forty-three Viddy Street. Map T, block seventy-five, lot six nineteen. Mr. Rucci.
Yes, good evening, uh David Rucci, I'm here for the Columbus Center, I'm actually here also representing the tenant um. On the property Mitch Hoffman, who's um about to enter into a lease in this particular piece of property. He runs a company called Eighty-four Sport LLC, and they do um a lot of things for the local sports teams here, they do embroidery, they do. Um clubs, uh NC gear, uh they were loaded, located over on um. Berdus Street, Berdus, right, Berdus Street um. Uh for a long time on one of the Kuda buildings, and now they are looking to move to essentially the uh forty-three Viddy Street. Which is the building that has a dry cleaner right now. Um let me just, I got a map here, how come this isn't going? Let me see. Okay, so, well, I don't know why that's like that, but here's a copy, here's the floor plan of the. Uh there's the building itself that sits on Diddy Street, it's a really large parcel, I don't know, you probably don't even really notice it. Um but behind it, it's uh it's extremely large, got a large parking lot in the back, the front of the store is a uh right now, as I said, it was a dry cleaner. Um which this space on the first floor, we're gonna be taking over, the second floor is the Columbus Center. Which is essentially a club that's been there for a number of years, the second floor has a large hall, a kitchen. A little bar area and it services um the Columbus Center group of New Canaan. Uh the current proposal is to um change the first floor. Um it's right now, as I said, a dry cleaner, um this is essentially what the layout's gonna look like on this, on the first floor. Um it's not necessarily a retail establishment, retail is actually not allowed in this business B zone. Um it is more of a specialty use, I mean, you're not gonna necessarily have people coming in and out and buying things off the shelf. This is really somewhere where you're gonna come in, order something, come back and pick it up at a later date, not unlike some of the other um. Uh other items, other businesses in that area, which is VD Street and Cross Street. Um so we don't think it's gonna have any sort of negative effect on um what's happening down there, and we actually think it's a great. Um new use for this particular site. Um the dry cleaner beforehand was probably more of an intense use based on what they were doing than than this will. Uh particularly be, so as a part of your um regulations, uh we need to get a site plan approval to change the use within this zone. Um we are going under four point five C eleven, which is essentially what allows it to become a specialty. Um type of uh business and um. You know, we don't, we think it's a, it's a good use, it's, the Columbus Center's happy about it, um we're happy to keep somebody local in town, not moving out of town for this business. Especially since it's such a important business to um, you know, the sports clubs and others in town in New Canaan, so I don't really have much more to. Um talk about, I don't know if you have any questions about it, I also have Mitch Hoffman here who can talk specifically about his business, if you have any questions for him.
Uh Mr. Rucci, just two quick questions. The prior use of the building, was there any dry cleaning work actually done onsite?
Not that I know of, I think that that dry cleaning was just, they went, they they sent it out.
Uh cause they've been closed for some time, correct?
They were, they were doing dry cleaning there.
Okay, so, uh uh and this is a separate question, which I presume Sarah you could grapple with, is, is there any requirement that there be environmental review, given the. Generally dangerous nature of of actual.
Not in our zoning regulations, and since this, you know, business is already established in town and exists in town. Since it wasn't required initially when it was brought in, why would it be required now?
No, I I I think you're gonna definitely have some type of environmental cleanup, if you're going from a dry cleaning establishment to a retail.
Oh, you mean, you mean for the building itself?
Yeah.
When it changes.
Well, that's only on the Transfer Act.
That would be the health code, building code, that wouldn't be. Planning and zoning, and the health department would have to sign off on any building permit, um but the remediation and stuff, that's not planning and zoning, it's more health and building.
State regulated that. Right, and also, I mean, just, you know, the Transfer Act in and of itself would would provide that, in other words, when this owner sells the building. They will have to comply with the Transfer Act, it will immediately create a phase one and a phase two.
Right.
Regulations where, like, if you remember the Napa next door, that had a tremendous amount of cleanup. On it, and then we put that new building up there, so it does come around.
So I'm just worried, because this isn't a transfer, this isn't a property transfer, it's a lease.
Correct.
So, so the new tenant will go in there without. The cleanup.
No, but we don't even know if there is cleanup on the site, you would have to, you would have to go, you would have to go out and actually test soils for cleanup.
And whose responsibility is that, the property owner?
It would be the property owners eventually, if they chose to do so.
But it's typically a stipulation written into the lease structure between tenant and landlord, where a tenant requires that. If the tenant doesn't require it, we can't require it.
Right. We can let the tenant know that. Maybe a good idea to require it.
Right, and.
Thank you, I'm fine with that.
Am I correct in that statement, or?
Yeah, I mean, the tenant himself would have to, you know, make sure whatever construction they were gonna do, if they find something like that, they would have to report that, and that would be the responsibility of the landlord, not necessarily the tenant. And the landlord would have some sort of. Maybe able to go back after the dry cleaner, may not, I mean, once the dry cleaner is gone, you're, the owner really is responsible.
Okay.
I don't know if you have any other questions.
So Commissioner Turner, um Attorney Rucci, um this is just kind of a a heads up. Um the uh main entry is on the bottom side of this drawing, the door. Um currently, it's not ADA accessible. I know there's a ramp, but the problem is that a wheelchair can't, there's not enough room for a wheelchair to maneuver there, um. Uh you can fix that problem by putting a uh automatic opener, closer, you know, one of those paddles that you push. Uh but just a little advice, you might want to look at that a little closer.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant? Will the um the existing awning, or I'm looking at on Street View, if there is an existing awning, will all of that be changed or removed or modified?
How you doing? Mitch Hoffman, uh owner of Eighty-four Sports, actually resident for close to twelve years as well, um. The, we're not planning, we're planning to update, you know, as much inside, that's our responsibility, dealing with the landlord in terms of the exterior sides. Um. Honestly, the blue does not fit our New Canaan theme, to be honest, so um there 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 would be plans on our side to to update that. Um but we still gotta deal with the the landlord on on how that's gonna take place.
How would that be treated? Um would they have to come back for a modified awning?
So, I mean, if if they were just replacing the fabric and making it red, and then just having, you know, letters printed on it.
That's a signage application?
And that wouldn't go back to you guys.
That would just go as a signage application?
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine.
No change to the bocce court?
I didn't know it was a bocce court, I thought it was a parking lot, I gotta say that, I had learned something new on this one.
Commissioners, any other questions? I think we're good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
You need to stop sharing your screen.
Good, offline there. Move into um. Public hearing, new business as well, item ten. One seventy-five South Bald Hill Road. We have the applicant here.
He's on Zoom.
On Zoom.
Yes, my name is Lars Newbon, I'm I'm the uh co-owner of the property along with my wife Jean.
Okay, let me just read the uh application information and then you can jump in. Upon application of Lars and Jean Newbaum. Owners for a special permit of sections three point four point B point five. To allow accessory structure in front yard, proposed structure is a pool cabana. Structure will be a hundred and thirty-eight feet from the property, front property line, and any structure less than a hundred and fifty feet requires a special permit. In the four-acre zone at four, one seventy-five South Bald Hill Road, map forty-six, block one twenty-four, lot forty. Mr. Newball.
Yeah, that that's correct, we we have an existing pool uh that was built in the late nineteen eighties. Uh we're seeking to to uh construct a. A pool cabana with a half bathroom and an outdoor shower, uh we've already uh. Approved, got received an approved septic permit for that and installed a a septic connection. The, unfortunately, due to the topography of the area and the location of the pool. The the only location for the cabana is is slightly over the hundred and fifty. Uh foot front yard setback, uh we're we're seeking to build a structure that's less than two hundred square feet. And uh we'll have a a visual appearance that's in keeping with our house, which is a Cape Cause style house. And uh it's really meant for purely seasonal use, the water, the water connection. Uh is not winterized, uh it will only be a spring and summer uh type of occupancy. Um it's our, this is our first major outdoor improvement we're seeking to do to the property, we've lived here for ten years. Um and uh we we would like to, if we get permission to do this from the from the board, from the commission. We would like to construct this either in the fall of this year or the spring of next year.
Thank you. Have there been any um letters or neighbors' comments?
Nothing from the neighbors, no.
Nothing from the neighbors on this one. Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a number of, a couple of questions, um this is Commissioner Chris, I'm looking at the landscape plan. The landscaping appears to be um screening the pool area from the house. Am I reading that correctly?
That's what it looks like.
Uh that 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 is, that's proposed landscaping that's on that plan. Um there's existing landscaping. There's existing landscaping to the, to the west between, between South Bald Hill Road and the proposed location of the cabana. Uh, that's not on that picture. And that's, and that landscaping is, is a, a natural berm in the earth. Uh, and, and about five hemlock trees and three Norway spruce trees that are mature.
Yeah, um, I went through the, um, plants and almost all of them are from very far away, East Asia, Africa, Iran, Armenia, Japan, China, and so forth. I would suggest that you may wish to revisit this plan and replace it with some more appropriate native plantings to help our environment.
Are you, are you referring to the, to the proposed landscaping by the landscape architect, by Bruce?
Yes, sir. There's a list of, uh, plantless pool area.
Yeah.
Each one of them.
Well, that's, uh, that's nothing that's in place yet, so that could, that can all be changed.
Also, one other point on the screening, I noticed that the, uh, the large trees, which I guess are already here, they're on the, uh, Bald Hill, towards the side of Bald, South Bald Hill Road. Those are the hemlocks and the Norway maples that you refer to, sir?
The, the Norway spruce, yeah, are, uh, yes, they're, they're actually, uh, they're actually not indicated on that drawing. They're, the, the, the architect primarily focused on a new additional. And, and he's got, he's got, uh, on the southern side of that drawing, or sorry, the western side of that drawing, he does have some exact. I'm looking at it now, he does have some existing planting. That, that is what I'm referring to, yes, sir.
As I'm comparing that, let's say to a satellite picture and also a drive-by of your, of your residence. Much of the, uh, screening, I think, would want, often screening is to screen it from neighbors and from the public street. And, um, just looking, there, there's sort of one gap, we don't have a tree. And then a little bit farther north, there's not. I would suggest you may want to add one or two trees in there to increase the screening to the road to, uh, help hide the, uh, pool cabana from the public right of way. Probably three trees would do it. Revisit of the, um, plant choices for the, uh, for the, uh, around the pool area, which you have in the submission to this commission.
We could do that. I, I, we also intend to add, add some screening on the north side. There's a, you'll see from the, 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 the high scale drawing of the, of the, of the total property. On the north side, there's a shared driveway there. Uh, we'd like to add some screening there, you know, not only so that the, the users of the shared driveway don't have to see the cabana, but that we're also screened from, uh, people using the shared driveway.
Sir, uh, what type of, uh, plantings are you, uh, considering for that area on the north side?
Well, well, currently we have some, some, some fairly young holly growing there. But we would, we would stick, we would stick with similar, uh, similar type of, of plantings that retain their foliage year round. And, and, uh, and, and balance, balance the need for, for fast growing uh, versus the amount of light that, that that area gets, which is somewhat reduced.
Well, holly certainly work well and they're, they're certainly green all year round.
Yes.
Those are my questions, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant?
Uh, just one, can you confirm there's not gonna be any HVAC equipment on the backside?
I, 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 I intend to put air conditioning in there. So if the air, that part of this pool does get a lot of sun and we would like to put a split unit in there.
And where will that go?
That would be on the, that would be on the, on the rear of the, uh, of the cabana.
Inside the setback.
Well, the, the, the setback base, it basically runs through the middle of the cabana.
This is Commissioner Chris, so, um, the, um, condenser unit would be on the ground then on the north west? Sort of.
Yes, yes, it would be, it would be a small ground mounted condenser since the size of the unit is very small.
I would suggest also that, uh, screening for the condenser.
And the, uh, a, a split unit.
Yeah, I would suggest that, uh, you may want to, it would be probably appropriate to have screening for the condenser as well.
We can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any further questions? Yeah, Mr. Newbone, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Okay. Next application we have is one thirteen Hemlock Hill Road.
Chairman, yes. Public input.
For South Bald Hill Road, do we have any public input or any public commentary on South Bald Hill Road? Thank you. Okay. None heard, we'll move on.
So are you closing the application or?
No neighbors and.
I, there's no neighbors then.
Okay, so just.
Yeah. Application's closed. Next application is one thirteen Hemlock Hill Road on application of David Rucci, Lampert Tuie Rucci LLC, authorized agent for Michael and Allison Reeves, owners for a site plan and special permit approval pursuant to section three point four point C point one point A, three point four point C point six, three point four point C point seven and eight point two to allow an accessory garage of a twelve hundred square feet within the hundred fifty foot front yard setback. The garage will result in more than five vehicles on the property, proposed to six in the two acre zone at one thirteen Hemlock Hill Road, map thirty-three, block thirty-two, lot twenty-nine. Mr. Rucci.
I can't seem to find the other one.
Which is still.
There we go. Okay, sorry, thank you. Yes, David Rucci, Lampert Rucci, um, here representing the Reese's in connection with their application for a, uh, accessory garage on their property at Hemlock Hill Road. As you, I've, I'm gonna apologize ahead of time. I tried to reprint some of the landscape plans. They did not come out very well on your, um, sheet to the back there. So, um, you may have to go forward to the screen when you start looking at some of those, it just didn't copy well. Um, essentially what you have is you have a rear lot. A rear lot, um, as you may recall, requires forty foot setbacks all the way around, um, the property. In this particular case, the rear lot, we also, even as you come up sort of this accessway, which is about two hundred and twenty-five feet from Hemlock Hill Road, that's actually considered our front yard as well. So where your house faces the accessway and a rear lot, it's your, it's your, it's your front yard. Or I'm sorry, where the property faces the accessway. So we're essentially are looking for a, um, we're in the front yard where the accessory structure is, okay? You can see that, uh, the accessory structure on the, on the, on slide number three is sort of off to the right. You come in through the property, you go through a little courtyard and the property and this accessory garage sits in this particular spot. The accessory garage in and of itself is, um, going to have three bays. Um, it's detached, it will have a storage room, will have a half bathroom and it will have a small office all within this a hundred and fifty foot setback on the property. Here's just a kind of blown up view of, of where this is going to sit on the particular prop, piece of property. The house, this whole property is being developed already. It's essentially a four, it's a double lot, it's a four acre, um, lot in the two acre zone off Hemlock Hill Road. Mr. Kassudas couldn't be with us, um, this evening. So I will, um, just wait on the site plan for the time being, but obviously the site plan's been reviewed from an engineering perspective, uh, from the town and will obviously comply with all the drainage regulations. And with respect to that, I do, um, also have with me the architect who's, um, Tanner White this evening and Gina Kapinski, who can talk about the landscaping as well. Uh, here's a blown up view on page eight of sort of the site plan itself and how everything is coming in. You'll see the accessory structure, you'll see the, um, uh, the way the drainage is working on this particular piece of property. And you also, if you, if I can just show your attention kind of more towards the six bedroom house that's being developed, you'll see where that garage sits now. You know, we weren't gonna add another three car garage here. And just to let you know, this, we are at, looking for a permit to allow us to have five, more than five vehicles on the property. So there's a three car garage and there's also three cars in this detached garage. Um, as far as the architectural goes, it's a one and a half story, um, uh, building. I think that what I'll do is I'll ask Tanner White to sort of talk about, um, the design and where he picked this particular spot. Um, obviously it makes sense, just the way the driveway comes in and the way it's separated from the house itself. And also this is where, um, there'll be some, you know, storage, it's a little setback from the rest of the property. But, um, if you could, uh, put on Tanner White's, um, microphone, I can let him talk a little bit about this.
He's unmuted.
Yeah, I'm un, I'm unmuted. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, hi, so again, for, um, I'm Tanner White of Tanner White Architects. I'll, I'll make it brief. You know, basically we located this garage, uh, in spot for a couple of reasons. The main, oh, uh, the main version, the main reason for, for locating it here as, again, aside from the fact that it's easy to get into, is to locate the, um, additional car storage away from the living quarters, away from like, maybe the, the, the back of the, uh, you know, where the garden's gonna be away from like, you know, where people are gonna be living and enjoying their, their, their time. Because there is a little spot for, you know, like, um, a, a small workshop um, to be working on the cars or something like that. It's keeping the structure, you know, basically removed from the house, which is also why, um, and it's also a very low structure, we're trying to kind of hide it within this, uh, you know, rolling downhill. So we're using natural materials on the side of the, of the building in order to kind of help that, keep it a little bit more, um, low key. So again, we, we basically kept it to a minimum. And that's, that's really the reason we, we, it's for location, it's for ease of access, ease of entry, but also to keep the noise of, um, any kind of maintenance on the cars or anything like that away from the primary residence.
Do you want me, Mr. Chairman, should I just go on through the landscape plan? We'll come back to anything with the architect?
That's fine.
Okay, um, so if I could ask Gina Kupinski to kind of run through the landscape plan uh, with you, and once again, it might be easier to look at the screen because the way the copies came out for you all is, is not great. But if I can ask Gina to kind of run through her, her landscape plan, uh, especially, uh, along the south border of the property.
Uh, sure, uh, good evening. This is Jenna Kopinski, landscape architect for, uh, from William Kenyon Associates. We developed the, um, landscape plan for, uh, their entire property. And you are right now, uh, seeing the latest, uh, planting plan. What we have is, um, um, the entire parameters of the property, uh, we are proposing, um, combination of different evergreen trees. Uh, they are American, uh, arbovites, um, uh, in, um, eight to ten feet high and, um, white spruces and Norway spruces in, uh, twelve to fourteen feet, uh, height range. Um, on top of it, uh, we have of course developed the foundation plantings around the, um, proposed, um, residence and, um, to soften the, uh, the look of the, a proposed detached garage, we have, um, gro- groves of, um, native flowering trees like service berries like, uh, kusa dogwood, I'm, I'm sorry, like flowering dogwoods and, uh, uh, eastern red buds. And, um, in several locations, we also have, um, the native, um, shrubberies like, um, arrowwood viburnums like, um, um, bayberries, um, that's, uh, you know, in the closest, um, adjacent area to the proposed attached garage.
Mr. Rucci, just to be clear and for the commissioners as well, which is most evident on the landscape plan, this, this application for the accessory garage and the associated relief that you're looking for on it, it's all part of a master plan for the overall development of the site, which is all new construction, correct?
Correct.
So all new primary residence, all new landscaping, all new driveway, all new pool, everything.
Correct, the, the property, the house that was there before has been razed. It's gone. Yeah, I mean, we, we have to come back as the town planner, um, noted also in her comments that, uh, we would have, we're still gonna have to come back for some, there's like, some boardwalks that are going through the wetlands. So we have to file for a wetland permit. Some of that just hasn't been fully developed yet as far as what the, what the client wants to do. But we will absolutely have to come back for a wetlands permit, but that has really nothing to do with at least the, um, the garage, the detached garage itself. Same thing with a fence, if we wanted to do a fence in some of these areas, uh, we would have to come back either to this commission or make sure at least it complied with all the regulations. I mean, as of now, what we're planning on doing on this site is all gonna be compliant with the regulations other than what we're requesting today, which is what we're requesting a special permit for. We have had discussions, um, with the Bodenheimers who are the neighbors, uh, to the south of the property, which is along this particular line, where the proposed garages, where the proposed garage is going.
Forty foot.
Yeah, uh, proposed garage and, um, they have expressed some concerns, uh, with the property line in and of itself. Not so much the garage, but it's all works within each other, you know, they all work together. But, um, Mr. Attorney Hegney, who I know is on today and he sent a letter in, I think today as well about some of the things that they're concerned about, um, and wanted the commission to look at and what they wanted to look at. You know, I'm aware of, our clients are aware of, you have had been, been having discussions over the past couple of weeks, not with Mr. Hegney, he is a new attorney who's involved in the, in this particular, um, matter, but, um, you know, we want to work with our neighbors, we don't want to be opposed to our neighbors. The issue that, um, that the neighbor has is kind of more of a property line issue and not necessarily a garage issue, but as I said, they all work in and of, within itself when you come and ask for a special permit. I'm not, I don't want to put words into, uh, the attorneys. Uh, he can, he can talk to himself about this. And with the commission, you know, I think they wanna, wanna hear what he has to say as well as to whether or not they feel it appropriate to close the application or to whether or not we should be, um, having further discussions and continuing the application.
And that the, uh, neighbor's attorney submitted information today, you said?
Today, he's just sent it a letter at requesting for a continuance.
It was like five or five thirty this evening. He, um, sent an email to me requesting that this be continued so that they have more time to review.
Understood.
And he's, he's on Zoom, um, as well.
Mr. Rucci, I have a question.
Sure.
Property line issue.
Yeah.
Tell me what that means.
So as, so for me, I have a lot of these. It's a stone wall that started on the line on a property line that's shared by two people and eventually sort of meandered into one of the other prop, into the other's property. So in between the stone wall, in this particular case, in between this stone wall and the actual property line itself, there's an area that the neighbor has been maintaining, taking care of, planting trees on, um, and wants to make sure that that stays the same, which, you know, I don't blame him for. They've been doing it for some period of time, I don't know how long it's been. But this whole wall itself that sits there and the landscaping that sits there and the area that he's main, been maintaining has been a, you know, is something that's been discussed as this construction is going on. And now more specifically with this particular application. So it was something that we were working with. We were trying to resolve and we're not quite at a point where it will be resolved, it's resolved yet, although I am hopeful that it will be. And like I said, it's, it's, it's much more of a private, potential private property issue between two neighbors than it is with this particular commission. But nonetheless. Um but nonetheless, he's a neighbor within a hundred feet and he's a neighbor who certainly has the right to um you know, question or ask about, you know, our particular application today, so.
So if I get this this right, Mr. Mr. Ruchi, there's a stone wall that sometimes it smack dab in the middle of the property line and sometimes it moves into the subject property.
Yeah.
And there's sort of a sliver between the property line and the wall, though the wall seems like the border, it really isn't. And there's this sliver here that seems like it's the neighbors and the neighbor has been maintaining it, likes the way it's been maintained, wants to keep maintaining it and keep the status quo. Is that about?
Yes, if you look at number four, what I just put up on the side, you can see on the bottom part of the property, there's a stone wall that sort of starts for about oh, two hundred plus feet. That's kind of right on the line. And then as you see, it sort of starts to meander into the Reese's property. So it's, you know, probably another two hundred square feet, uh two hundred feet maybe of, I don't know, two to three feet. But that's that's one of the years and and also it's a farmer's wall that's um on the property line, which is also very um, which is something that the neighbor has expressed a great interest in, doesn't want to see any rebuilding of that particular wall. He likes the wall the the way it is um to be fair. So that was another item that was brought to our attention.
Uh Mr. Ruchi, I would assume that the property's been properly surveyed and that the the line is the line and
Yes, the line is the line.
Parties are agreeing in agreement with that?
Uh as far as I know, the, you know, it's been surveyed and the line is the line. Uh you know, questions always come up as to whether or not ownership has somehow moved from one property owner to another based on you know, any sort of adverse possession claim or something of that nature. But that's once again, a private property issue.
Easement and or something, yeah.
So there, like as I said, uh Mr. Hegney and I have had brief conversations about it. He's a newer turn. He's one, he's new to the um to this uh to the process between the two of us. So um you know, I don't want to speak for him, but you know, we we both feel that there's a resolution here somewhere.
Changing gears, if I may, Mr. Chairman, on the landscape plan, certainly there are a number of um uh very appropriate uh native uh plants of various sorts here. Some are not, such as Norway spruce, arborvitae. Well, arborvitae is deer food. I'm sure why you want to prompt that anyway, but that's me. Hydrangea, which are Chinese, and the rhododendrons and pink muli grass and black eyed susan are American, but not quite this area. So you may want to revisit that.
I mean, I I always feel like with the Norway spruce and arborvitae, it's really more of a screening mechanism. Which, you know, we've seen in the past, it's really just designed more for the screen than it has before. I mean, I think we should all be looking at, you know, whatever native plants we can for that are going to be helpful to screening more than anything else.
True, I mean um American hollies, which are evergreen, certainly, I think everybody thinks they're very pretty trees, they can get quite large. Certainly have some larger than my property and they definitely provide a lot of screening, but those in a alternating picket line, you're not going to get much going through them, believe me. But again, that's uh the applicant's choice, so I just want to mention that.
Okay.
Something you may wish to consider, particularly if the uh the applications continued. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, is any further questions for Mr. Ruchi? Okay, thank you.
Sure.
We have the
Yeah, public comment.
Yeah, public comments and the attorney you said for
Yeah, Mr. Hegney's on, I'm sure he's going to want to Do you want him to, what if he wants to refer to it? No. Oh, okay.
We'll open this up for public comment. Um do we have the attorney for the neighbor online?
Uh yes, Mr. Chairman, uh John Hegney, Hegney Lynn and Slane uh for George and Ann Budmire, uh trustees and owners of ninety five Hemlock Hill Road. Um and we have been in discussions with uh uh Mr. Ruchi, our attorney Ruchi and uh uh his development team about uh the project that they're pursuing at one thirteen. Uh we do have some concerns about uh the project that they're pursuing. Uh we do feel that more information is needed nor for us to determine whether or not this is a project uh that the Planning and Zoning Commission should approve. And also, as uh Attorney Ruchi pointed out, we are looking uh to make sure that uh there's a an understanding on how the common property line between uh his client and my clients uh are are maintained. I do want to touch on a a few things that uh I came up in discussion uh with the applicants here. Uh one, uh talking about a master plan. Uh you know, as a a planner Kerry has noted, uh uh the house has been permitted, the pool has been permitted, and it's a a piecemeal approach uh to developing this property uh that we're seeing here. I I do think that if the commission were interested in seeing a master plan for this site, I would be uh helpful in determining uh or in confirming uh that this property is compliant with uh the new Canadian zoning regulations. Uh and then I want to talk about a a little of what uh uh Architect Tanner White uh touched on. You know, the uh uh the applicants here are locating uh this uh garage or workshop, however you want to describe it, as far away from the home as possible, uh due to concerns of exhaust, odor and noise. Um those are things that my client would potentially be concerned about as well, until we find out what exactly is going on in the building. Um little things, you know, uh how tall is the building? Uh uh that might not be very important, as long as we can demonstrate compliance uh with the the height regulation for accessory structures. But it would also tell us, you know, where are the future plans for the building? You know, are we looking at car lifts? You know, uh if we're talking about maintenance and and car storage, uh that could be considered. Um uh in the main house, I do believe there is a a car elevator uh proposed. Um you know, I I would expect something similar here, especially if uh the property owners uh uh do have a a large number of vehicles. So I I think it's appropriate for the commission in this instance uh to ask, how is this building being used? It it has an office, a half bath, uh another room, and I think uh it wouldn't uh uh be out of line for the the commission to ask the applicant what exactly is going on in this building. In addition to the building, I I do want to touch on on the deer fence. I I know uh Jen Kopinski is here and I I I know that uh they do fantastic work over at William Kenny Associates. Um I I do believe a a separate notice is needed uh for the deer fence uh pursuant to a new Canaan uh uh zoning regulation six point five C four. Uh uh as discussed with Attorney Ruchi uh at the very beginning of this uh application, uh we are in the front yard here. Uh they are looking for a six foot deer fence in excess of the four feet that they'd normally be permitted. Uh they did send out notices for a special permit here. I do believe that that has to be a amended to include the deer fence in addition to this building. I I think that we need uh additional information on the deer fence and in order to determine the uh opacity to see if it's compliant with six point five uh C three. And uh additionally, uh whether the uh uh screening provisions in six point five C four A apply here. I I think one of the interesting things uh in the new Canaan zoning regulations is that uh uh you ask that the fencing uh have the nicer side facing your neighbors. Uh here, it's very clear to me, based on the the plan that Jenna put together, uh that they want this fence screened completely to their home. And I makes me wonder, well, if they're so interested in screening it, why is it being left uh unscreened to my client's property? Uh uh we may be able to draw a a guidance from uh six five C four B uh which asks for a natural landscape so that the fence blends in properly uh with uh uh the surrounding landscaping. I think that that's appropriate here and I I'm positive that uh Jenna and and uh Bill Kenny's office can can put something together uh that would meet that standard. Um I I don't think that uh any uh proposed site lighting is shown on the landscaping plan yet. Yeah, I I would suspect that anyone with a a a pool would be interested in night swimming. Maybe I'm the only one who grew up listening to R E M. But uh I I think that uh uh there is uh uh an opportunity here to make sure that uh we see that as well as part of a a an updated application from the applicants uh to ensure that we're we're again uh complying with the the town's regulations. I I I have to say, in looking at the application materials on file, I noticed a a number of discrepancies between uh the site plan, the survey and the landscaping plan. I I do think it'd be helpful uh to ensure that those plans are consolidated uh before the the Planning and Zoning Commission takes any action here. You know, uh uh it won't just help us determine compliance with the uh regulations, but will also help us avoid any issues with the state statutes which require uh wetland consideration and review uh prior to any action on site plans and special permits. I I hope that uh this is an opportunity or the start of an opportunity to uh uh reengage Attorney Ruchi's clients uh so that we can uh get some of the information that we're looking for here, uh that we can uh uh hopefully reach an agreement on how our common property line is treated and and hopefully get the commission uh information that might be interested in here for this application as well. Mr. Chairman, I have nothing further, but I'm happy to field any questions.
Missioners, any questions for Attorney Hengay Hegney?
Yes, when when you say you would like to see a master plan, does that include the boardwalks and the inland wetland application, everything? You think that that should all be included as part of this application?
I I in my experience, I think anytime that a a a property owner brings in their full development plan for a a large four acre site like this, where they're, you know, uh essentially redeveloping three acres of it. You know, I I didn't see a a topographic survey on plan, but basically they're clear cutting the the area and starting over. So I would like to know what that blank canvas is going to look like at the finish of the painting. Um you know, I I do think it's helpful. I think it's helpful to municipal staff so that when they're tracking compliance and determining whether or not this meets uh new Canaan standards and regulations, uh that they have a full picture of what they're uh uh reviewing and evaluating.
Any further questions? Mr. Hegney, you have seen the um submission by the applicant of their site development plan as well as their uh landscape overlay plan, which do show the boardwalk and the overall master plan of the site.
I I I am concerned only because
Where do you think it's, where do you believe that what they've submitted is de- is deficient in showing a master plan?
I think he said it was also in conflict. I'd like to know where they're in conflict.
Uh that that's correct, and it it's not that uh if the landscaping plan is indicative of their master plan, I I think that the applicants can certainly uh uh assert that on the record. Uh you know, I don't think that that's a a a an issue. But I would say that the plans that they've submitted and that they currently have on file with the commission uh uh don't all coincide. Uh in particular, the survey from RFK just has a separate set of hardscapes uh from uh what uh the landscape plan uh is sharing. Uh as well as the uh uh wetland boardwalk, which is only shown on the site plans.
So I can speak a little bit to that. Um their pool permit application has been in hold, on hold in our office for months because the survey and the site plan do not match up, at least per as it pertains to the pool. As it pertains to the garage, it appears the same to me, but there are discrepancies between the plans, but the pool is not something that's before the commission right now. Um we're just looking for clarification from a staff administrative side, but there are discrepancies.
Okay.
I would also, to Mr. Hegney's comment in terms of height, what is missing from the applicant's submission is overall dimensions for the height of the building that's proposed. Um there are footprint dimensions for the floor plan of the building, but on the sheet from um from the architect, there are no heights noted anywhere on the elevations or sections. So it would be good to understand that and document that. It might very well be totally compliant in terms of our regulations for overall heightened stories, but nothing's noted.
I scaled it um when we received it, but
Ever scale.
Okay.
Now, we would need the applicant to add add the dimensions to the drawing.
So Dan, what I'm interested in is um we should signal to the applicant. We've heard two different points of view from the two attorneys. Um Attorney Ruchi says that we should evaluate this on its own merits. It's the only special permit he's asking for. Has to do with the garage. The other attorney has said that really we have to look at, we we have to have all the facts for the master plan and we have to resolve all the conflicts between uh the plans, specifically the hardscape. So we should signal which way we're leaning, whether we need, wh- whether we as a commissioner are going to want to see the whole thing, or we're going to look at this piece by piece. I don't have a point of view on that, but I think we we ought to discuss that.
I, yeah, I do.
I I think because he's bringing up the garage, I think we have plenty of questions about the garage and we should just probably start with that before asking for some master plan.
Well, if I if I may, Mr. Chairman, a question from Mr. Ruchi on the garage. And this brings up the point that the um neighbor's attorney brought up. Let me find the picture. Maybe you look at uh slide eight perhaps. This proposed driveway or apron in front of the garage in the lower right. First thing I I thought of when I saw this is want to just move the garage up into the left. Uh get rid of the proposed driveway. There's certainly access, it could be reoriented, perhaps twisted a little bit, so it's facing it's the left, I don't, there's no um there's no compass on this, and that way it's farther away from the corner to the property. Less uh paved surface. Why not? Why not do that?
I noticed that.
Um so, Mr. Ruchi, if you could be of help.
I mean, that's the si- the site plan that's been developed, is developed by the architect as to where he's going to place it. I mean, we do have some trees that are existing in that area to the, so it's north that you're looking at. This is just a blown up piece of it, so north is essentially the top of 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 the page. Um and this is, I think that the way that the property has come in, you want to have a little space there. You don't want it to sort of just be on top of the other area. Um that garage on the other area, as you get closer to the the house itself. Um I mean, I think the garage itself is going to be set into this property, into the topography itself of the property as it comes down. The hill comes down into that particular area and it sits in nicely there, and it's going to be, it's going to be screened and it's only a story and a half. It still meets honestly, the setback that you would have on almost any single piece of piece of property, whether it's a side, a rear or a um front, it just happens to be this a hundred fifty foot strict restricted area, which is, you know, kind of less of an issue, I think, and at least this particular case, based on the fact that it is a rear lot. But nonetheless, I mean, we, this this board hears a lot of these applications with this hundred and fifty foot. I mean, you're still outside the setback. I mean, technically, he could have built his house there. Could have built his house, right, the, you know, structure in and of itself, and it could have been there as of right. I think as far as uh Attorney Hegney and, I mean, obviously, the survey, the site plan should have, be the same in the landscape plan, that I have no argument with that. Um so, you know, in and of itself, that needs to be corrected and submitted to this board before any sort of decision can be made, and I'm more than happy to continue the this application based on that, because that's, and I'm sorry even for me. Um as far as a master plan goes, I I think that you're really getting into something that you don't want to get into as far as this commission, and we've talked in the past about the amount of money that needs to get spent to bring these types of applications here, and if you're going to start requiring complete master plans of uh of properties that are being developed. Um you know, I think that that's not fair to an applicant. He wants to figure out here whether or not he's going to be able to get an accessory garage. Obviously, everything else on this property, whether it's boardwalks, whether it's height of buildings, whether it's a sports court in the back, all those need to be permitted. If something's wrong, they're going to have to come back and get a special permit from this commission again for any of those other things. Same with the wetlands. They're not going to get a C O for the building if they have a wetlands violation, whether that's on this particular building or whether it's on the the residence itself. So um I'm I'm not uh in favor of master plans for residential structures like this. I would be in favor for master plans if you're talking about, you know, when we had the Weed Street Farm, right? Like you wanted to see a master plan if everything was going on there. I get that. That made some sense. In this particular case, just trying to figure out whether or not this is going to be something. It's desirable to Um, it's desirable to this particular applicant to have an accessory garage. If I was coming in here with this house already built and putting the accessory garage, you wouldn't be looking for a master plan for other things that we'd be doing on the property. Just wouldn't be in your
I understand that, Mr. Rucci, I just picking up and Commissioner Tuscornius' comment. I mean, certainly the focus would be on the issue at hand, which is at least my mind appropriately um, on the garage, but particularly if there is our thoughts on the part of the commission, perhaps it should be moved a little this way or that way. You want to put it into context of what else is going on to the property. And say, well, you know, it's, it's, it's blocking an easy right of way for the fire department or something. Uh, so putting into an overall context would be appropriate. And I'm sure one needs to get too deep in the weeds on things that the uh, the applicant can do as a matter of right, but we need to understand the lay of the land. If we're talking about a piece of a of a master plan that we may may want to move a little bit. So we have context. I'm looking for the context is where I'm coming from.
Understood. I mean, obviously putting a detached garage anywhere else on the property is not, I mean, at least as far as whether you're going to put it to the west or the east. I mean, you obviously can't put it behind the property. You want to put it someplace that's going to be near the residence in and of itself and something that's going to be accessible. You're not going to put it behind it and add more pavement to the property just to get it, you know, outside of the hundred and fifty foot setback. Um, so it's not necessarily something that, I mean, it kind of fits into the whole grand schemes of this particular project and the way the driveway comes into the property. I mean, you wouldn't put it in the front where the driveway comes in per se, because you basically be coming right into a garage area and before you come up to the house. So, I mean, certainly we can ask the architect to look at different ways to potentially, you know, move that. Um, but I think that the screening in of itself that we propose is not going to make it any sort of issue for any of of the neighbors. Not taking away any of the concerns. It's been brought up, brought already by Attorney Hegney.
I think Mr. Rucci makes a very good point, commissioners, in terms of being focused on what the application is about. It's about the hundred fifty foot setback. It's not about being over coverage. It's not about being inside existing setbacks. It's not about, you know, orientation of the garage per se, relative to the other structures on the site. It's strictly the hundred fifty foot setback, which we as a commission have already acknowledged many times. The, the um uh, ineffectiveness of that regulation within our guidelines and something that we need to revisit when we revisit the zoning regulations as part, well, not necessarily part of P O C D, but part of zoning regulation amendments. Um, it's been haunting us for years and we've seen dozens of these applications come before us specifically for this issue. So.
However, Commissioner Radman, we, we, we have usually had no alternative. And you have a property here where your twelve feet difference here could be easily remediated. And you have a neighbor apparently with some concerns valid or not relative to the one hundred and fifty feet. I don't know. But you have, and you have, and this is particularly relevant to Counselor Rucci's presentation, you have given us a complete site plan with a series of, you know, in effect, master plan considerations that if we actually read the material causes you to wonder about the selections and choices. So, you know, I, I, I find this very interesting, particularly the commentary, you know, about, well, we've got a master plan here. You could move this building and not have to be here. You move it twelve feet. And, and so I, I would recommend that the notion of going to a continuance until perhaps there was some conciliation with the neighbor and consideration of those other ideas might make a lot of sense.
I would agree. Totally agreed.
I don't have any objections to a continuance. Um, I would say though, that other than our dealings with the neighbors, is is this commission actually requesting that we try to move this garage further away from the forty foot setback? I mean, if you look at the, at the plan itself, the more you try to move it out of the hundred fifty foot setback, you're actually going to have one part of the house looking at this accessory structure, which is not really a desirable effect for somebody in the
So my answer to that, Mr. Rucci, would be, um, I don't know, because I don't know whether the neighbor in this case is actually concerned about maintenance of that sliver or in fact, the presence of this in their backyard.
Understood.
And, and, and to me, I'd much rather have you guys resolve that than us try to guess.
I understand.
And, um, you know, I, I don't know the answer to that, but I would think that it would be much better if there were not, I, I hear concerns from the counselor for the abutting neighbor.
That's fair. I understand.
I was just, Mr. Rucci, that I understand why the applicant may be concerned about the visual impairment of garage much closer to the main residence. I do not want to, I would wonder about the appropriateness of addressing that visual impairness impairment by simply moving it farther away from the main residence and closer to a neighbor. So the neighbor's picking up the visual impairment. Um, which is what I'm hearing from the, from the neighbor's attorney. So, um, I guess that's one of the issues I'm wrestling with on this. Frankly. I, I don't have an opinion on final opinion on this, but I, I think the idea is, um, Commissioner Kessadant suggests that a continuance so that it can be a fresh meeting of minds would be appropriate in this case.
Agreed. Um, just to kind of put the nail in the coffin out of this discussion is this is all new construction. It's full new site development. As the other council noted, you know, scraping the land clean and starting over. It's all new landscaping. Um, it's a four acre lot and we're talking about a twelve hundred square foot garage um, in a corner in here. So I would hope that the applicant and the neighbor could come to some sort of a understanding on appropriate placement of the garage. None of us are contesting the applicant's intention of why they want it there. We totally understand that. But there might be some middle ground where in, in, you know, if it's not this exact location, maybe a modified version of it somehow that, and a modified version of landscaping and other conditions that could satisfy the neighbor.
Understood.
Thank you.
Yep.
Does anyone, we heard from the attorney, but just to check, does anyone else in the public have any comments on this application? Okay, this meeting is continued. This application is continued.
Uh, excuse me, if you, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, uh, uh, when the, uh, will we be notified when this will come back up on your agenda?
It'll come back up at the end of April meeting. I forget the exact date.
I believe it's, yeah, I believe it's the twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth of April.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Chairman, I may make a suggestion. We've been under three hours and I think the next application may be a bit of time.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll take a brief break before, I guess, the church.
Let's take a, let's take a five minute break and then we'll hear fifty seven South Avenue. We're actually doing okay on time, so that's good.
Yeah.
And then, uh, so I, I disqualified myself for the church and then, uh, I'm not
Wait, they're, they're, like, we're missing something. Yeah, they may have left.
Oh. And then like, and it's like an accessory building in the back of the pitch, like, with an ice house. And I mean, it's the ice house, that's double story, to the backside of it has a collage. Yeah.
Do we want to
I'll see the list there.
C D, uh, draft this meeting.
There we go. Hi, everyone. Let's restart the meeting. It's about nine ten right now. Our next application we're hearing is fifty seven South Ave. This is a continuation of the application. Ms. Abitakis, before you start, I know Kent, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Uh, Kent just wanted to make a statement before jumping into the application.
Yes, I, I wanted to apologize to St. A's and their team, their architect for being overly critical and harsh while discussing the accuracy of the perspective drawings and some of the missing information on the application. I reflect on this and I have become very frustrated over the past year that some of the applications that have come in front of us have been lacking information. Key drawings are missing. And it's been very difficult to get a true and complete understanding of what is being proposed. Um, I let the frustration get the best of me and I apologize to anyone that I might have offended and uh, hope we can move on. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sabatax?
Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Turner, for your words. We appreciate that. Um, so I'm here on behalf of St. Aloysius Church for the text amendment and special permit continuation. And I do want to thank the commission for their time the last couple of months and their feedback, feedback on the submission. Um, I hope you've had a chance to review the documentation which we've submitted, which include changes we've made to the building design and site layout to incorporate some of the comments that we've received to the extent possible, as well as adding some additional green space to the existing parking lot. Um, I'm joined again by Father Snally, our architect, Michael Tribe. On Zoom, we have our site engineer, Brian McMahon, structural engineer, Kevin Archer, and Ronan Wilk, our landscape architect. Um, so before I start on the design part of the presentation, um, I did just want to address the question about the text amendment. Um, I do understand that town council was consulted and agreed with the text amendment as drafted, simply adding religious institution uses as a special permit use in the um, apartment zone. But I did want to check and see if there were any questions on that before we move on to the meat of the special permit application.
Commissioners, any questions regarding that on the text amendment? Nope, I think we're good.
Okay. Um, I don't know if you wanted to close the hearing on the text amendment piece or wait and do everything.
I'd like to wait and do everything at once.
That's fine. So, um, for the, the next piece, I am going to ask Michael Tribe to walk through the design amendments. Um, as I said, we've incorporated to the extent possible the feedback we've received regarding the deck design. And I do think the commission will be happy to see the extent which we've been able to reduce the size of the building, particularly the height of the gym, some of the other aspects of the, um, uh, religious education building. Um, however, part of the reason we were able to do this reduction is um, due to a change in the expected programming on site. Sort of behind, uh, as a way of, by way of explanation, the school is run by the diocese. St. Aloysius Church owns the land and the buildings that are on the site. The St. Aloysius Church does not run St. Aloysius School. That's a completely separate um, corporate entity and it is controlled by the diocese. Um, however, the church had been receiving information from the diocese that enrollment in the school, expected enrollment going forward was going down. So we were making plans accordingly as we went along. Um, unfortunately, at four thirty today, um, a letter went out to the parents informing them that the school would not be continued next fall. So we now do not have the St. Aloysius School as a proposal on the site. However, the plans which have been submitted to you are being submitted by St. Aloysius Church. The church has, is the one that needs these buildings. Predominantly, they need the building for their after school religious education. They need a minimum of thirteen classrooms for the after school religious education program. They've also been in discussions, and I believe I brought this up during one of our preliminary hearings, that they would like to have a preschool program on the property. So the, nothing is changing as far as what we're applying for. However, I, this is now a religious education building as opposed to a school that is being run separately by the diocese. Um, so with that, unless there are any questions about that point in particular, and Father Rob can speak to that if, if there are any further questions. Otherwise, I would like Mr. Tribe to go through the design changes.
Is there any, um, concern or like desire to continue the school? Like, could you ask the diocese for to reconsider it next year or year after? What was going to happen with all the students?
Well, that's part of the problem. There aren't that many students enrolled. They were down to about, I, I think the numbers were twenty to thirty enrolled students. So those students will be taken care of by the diocese. They are working with them to find placements in other Catholic schools in the area. There are many Catholic schools in the, in the nearby area, but as far as it, it, as I said, it wasn't, it wasn't as if these were, this was a parish school with predominantly students from, um, the St. Aloysius Parish going to it. It was a diocese school.
This is Commissioner Nielsen. So how will this now religious education building be financed? Is it still going to be financed by the archdiocese or is the church financing it?
It was always financed by the church. I, I don't, I'm sure there was some, there, there's some overlap with the, the diocese and the church, but it was always a, this was always a church project.
Okay. And I guess this is maybe more question for either the chair or the planner, but does this change the nature of the application enough that it's a different application than the one that's been submitted? Uh, I mean, we went through having a traffic analysis on, um, you know, schoolchildren being dismissed at the same time and in that whole conversation. And now I feel like the nature of that has changed. I understand that the structure itself maybe hasn't changed, but the use is somewhat different and probably has different needs and different impact on traffic and, and some other surrounding uh, environmental things. So I, I, I don't have the answer to that. It's just what I'm wondering.
If I could respond, um, and then I'll, I'll turn that over to the chair as well. The, the use hasn't, I mean, yes, the school, as we've known it, as St. Aloysius School is not going to be continued. However, the use that was part of our application, we will still have, um, we'll have preschool, so we'll have the same drop off, um, staggered drop off, staggered, or drop off staggered pickups, which we discussed when we went through the traffic engineering report. And the after school religious education has always been a component of the application. In fact, as I said, that's been the most important reason. And if you recall um, from our hearing, I believe it was last month, we had the youth director speak to the importance of having the community center and the religious education um, space for the youth of New Canaan. So that's really the focus and has always been the focus for the church with this application.
Okay, so it's more a narrowing of the existing application.
That's, actually, that's a perfect way to put it. Yes, I would call it a narrowing.
But how would the modified use or the narrowed scope of use affect the traffic studies, for example, in terms of when the building is going to be used, timeframes, whom it's going to be used by? Um, is it weekends only? Is it weekdays? Is it both?
Um, the, as far as the week, so the weekend use was always really just for the sanctuary and church services. So that's not changing. The traffic engineers were more looking at school drop off and pickup, and we will still have the preschool drop off, preschool pickup. Um, and then we'll have the after school religious education drop off and pickup, which was always part of what was, what was going to be happening on the site. And I think the, the, if anything, again, it'll be reduced because it'll be a smaller number of students in the preschool part than we would have had, had we had a full, a fully, um, uh, enrolled school on the site. Um, and I, and we, and actually it is easier with a preschool program to do the staggered pickup, which was a big part of, um, particularly the town's peer review.
It's Commissioner.
Attorney's Abitakis, so I, in our first, in your first presentation, the statement that I think you made that night was that the non-conforming use of the existing building um, was important to continue as a school. And I, I'm only thoughtful on this matter because we had raised that in the very first meeting. And, and I'm thoughtful about Commissioner Radman's comment on sort of the entirety of the application. Um, some component of this hinges on extension of a non-conforming use. And your application originally, or correct me if I'm wrong. And your application originally, or correct me if I'm wrong, your application was it. The nonconforming use, but it was okay because it was the continuous school and maybe it is going to continue at school.
The 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 use is the church use, the religious institution use. And that use has been on the site. You know, for since nineteen seventeen or so. So that is why the first part of the application is the text amendment, rather than. Going in for a variance to allow the church to continue in this location. We're asking for a text amendment to allow religious institutions in the apartment zone. So. The to the extent there are any nonconformities on the site, there are variances in place for the height of the. The tower on the church, those are the nonconformities. And I believe there may have also been a nonconformity as far as the setbacks for the. What was built as the school building, but those are not use nonconformities. And and there is not going to be, if we, if the text amendment is approved, there will not be any use nonconformities. This will be a religious institution on this site.
So this commission Chris, just to reclarify, the text amendment is really that. Okay, the religious use is a grandfathered use since it's been here before the. Zoning. So you're grandfathered in. But given changes you want. The zoning rules have been built up around the church and sort of didn't specifically address issues on the church site. You want to codify that through a text amendment? Is that sort of plain language what you're aiming to do?
That's correct. And and in fact, and this was part of what we went through at one of the other hearings, there were, there was actually a special permit issued for this site. Even after it was zoned in the apartment zone. And, you know, again, I don't know. How how it happened that it was just when I was writing this application, I realized that in fact, this was not a permitted use in the zone.
And just to pick up on that comes from some fellow commissioners is that. All the things you were planning to do beforehand, or not you, but the parish was planning to do beforehand. It will continue except for the day school. So in effect, everything else is going to continue as far as who shows up where and when. Except for the twenty or thirty students, which will decrease the amount of traffic by twenty or thirty people. Being picked up and dropped off. Is that? Like in too deep in the weeds broadly, what's happening?
Basically, I mean, you know, if there had been a fully enrolled school of a hundred some. Students, we wouldn't have space to do the preschool. But. Now we had been looking into adding the preschool because we knew enrollment numbers were down even before. Tonight, obviously, there's a close communication between the diocese and the church. But as of, like I said, as of today at four thirty, the decision was made by the diocese not to reopen in the fall. And I apologize for not giving you that information sooner, but. That's why I keep saying it was four thirty because I was a little surprised to get the letter when I did.
And just to confirm, the entire site is owned by the parish, not the diocese.
Correct.
So separate legal entities.
Correct.
And. And got it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Since this is new information, is it going to change the structure of what you have designed and what we're reviewing?
Not what you're reviewing today. Again, because we knew the numbers were declining and we knew the commission had asked that we reduce the size. We had started down the path of reducing the size and. You know, frankly, you know, things such as the gym being lowered would have been a problem if there had been older children in the school. For for a full school day that needed to be able to play, you know, competitive basketball. We reduced the size of the gym anyway because of what we were seeing. And now. It's perfect that we did because preschoolers don't really throw that high in the air.
Okay.
So would you like me to turn the podium over to Mr. Tribe to go over the design?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Good evening, Chair and members of the commission. My name is Michael Tribe, partner at Peter Giselle Associates Architects. Thank you for the suggestions and the ideas that came from your board. It was very helpful. We reviewed all that information very clearly and analyzed it. And. It I think improved the design because of those comments. I'm going to give you a brief presentation of the revisions of what was changed. And I think we are very much aligned with what the the new Canaan strategic plan. With your plan of conservation and development and the village district of design guidelines. So you've seen this before. This is just an aerial of a site. At and it shows how there's parking lots and driveways separating the four buildings. And it kind of isolates the building. If you're in one of the buildings, you have to cross a parking lot or a driveway to go from one to the other. Cherry Street is on the top of the page. Maple Street is at the bottom of the page on the south side, park to the left and South Avenue to the right. So here's an image. On the site. Facing north. And you've got the church to the left and the school to the right, and you can see this driveway and parking. Another image between the church and the parking lot. Facing the the new library and you can see the school to the left and the parish center to the right. And then here, this is from Cherry looking towards Maple. Again, a lot of parking lot on the on that west side, the church to the left. And another shot looking from now Maple towards the. North east with the church and the school in the view. We had presented this image just to show you that we had started a master plan. Back in two thousand and five. And that. Even then, we were thinking of a of a pedestrian campus and moving all the cars away from the buildings. The master plan was improved in. Twenty twenty one. And the the there are some modifications to this plan since it shows a chapel closer to the. The gym that chapel has moved all the way to the south end. And. Always the idea was that we would respectfully. Creating a a green that was looking both at the current church and the old church. And bringing them into this campus center. This is an image of what we presented to you before. This is what the campus looked like. And I just want you to see where we're going. That's when it had a larger gym. And this is now with the reduced gym. We've also modified on the. Side, which was a two story building, which is the upper part of the drawing. There were five classrooms facing South Avenue. In this drawing, only three classrooms are facing South Avenue. And the two that are on the corner have turned ninety degrees and and face. Cherry Street. So that long elevation that was more than eighty feet now is less than eighty feet. And the setback as you move towards Cherry is approximately ten feet. So it starts to meet these requirements. So here you see again before what we showed you in February. And where we are now. So there's a there's a dramatic change in the size of a gymnasium that was a competition middle school gym. To something that's. Like a half court. And it has a lower roof. And then you can also see the five classrooms on. Towards the corner, those four or five classrooms facing south. And sorry, and how two have changed the direction and lined up. Towards Cherry. In terms of the tree removal plan, that hasn't changed. We always planned you that these three trees were in the way of construction and would need to be removed. The overall site plan. We're adding. Probably sixty to seventy trees. And I didn't mention it in the in the rendered plan, but if you look at the parking lot to the. To the west of the church, we've added the trees that you had suggested as a way of reducing the heat island effect. We've reduced the total number of parking spaces, but now both parking areas have trees. A lot more trees in the space, a slightly larger. Green and we've introduced a garden wall now that the the. The gymnasium has kind of moved away from the church. There's more space between those two structures. On on Cherry. So we've introduced a garden wall across there. For safety. Here's looking a little closer. We had talked about the benches on South Avenue. And about the. Terrace outside the church for outdoor services. Potentially the playground. And we also had talked about the the pollinator garden, and these would be all native plants on the property. Terms of lighting, we've updated the lighting level. Study, not too dissimilar to what we showed previously. And then in terms of signage, there's no change to signage. These are photographs of the signs that exist and we're not. Suggesting any modifications to the signage. So getting to the building again, and I think it's important just to. Now it's the building has turned, so. South is to the top of the of the sheet and Cherry's to the left. This is what we presented in February. And. This is what the building looks now. So again, those five classrooms facing south. Becomes three, then it steps back on the left ten feet, and then you've got the other two classrooms facing Cherry. And then the smaller gym, that gym is about forty by fifty. So that overall dimension there is also less than the eighty feet on the cherry side. Of the building and the other kind of little island floating in there. That's the second floor that sits on top of the corner of the the building. This shows the outline of the existing building. The L shaped new building fits pretty much inside. The footprint of the existing building, except for the chapel that pushes pushes out a little bit. But the original building has a U configuration. We are an L, one of those wings of the U. Is disappearing and it's creating more green space there. In terms of the roof plan. I think it's interesting to see what's happened because. At the corner, as we've modified those two classrooms, we've created a roof over that. It's a smaller roof. So that the articulation of the roofs could get from a larger central to a smaller one in the corner and then even smaller when you get to the gym. And we're also showing the location of where the mechanical units are. I did talk to the mechanical engineer. He said that. Anything within a thousand feet could be fed by these these units. So it's. It all works. And also we got some more information from. The solar panel, people who have been looking at putting solar on the roofs. We've been talking to a company called Luma. They make a metal roof. That has an integrated panel to it. It's not the large, large panels that you see everywhere. This is a metal roof and it has. Some of the panels have the solar included in it. It's it's very aesthetically, very good looking. I had a photo, but they sent it me today, so I couldn't include it in the in the PowerPoint and I can send it to you if you want to see it. But it's a it's a very elegant roof. It's probably going to produce somewhere between sixty to eighty percent of the power needed for the school and the community building. So now it's it's about finances and what the tax benefits are and how this can. We can make it work. The other thing I wanted to mention is the square footage has reduced. So originally we had a. Total building, first and second floor for the school of twenty seven thousand square feet. Now we're about twenty one thousand seven hundred. So there's a savings. A reduction in the overall size of the building of five thousand three hundred square feet. So this is just an image. With a circle showing where that flat roof is where those units are going to sit. Again, starting with. The elevations that we showed you in February. We've circled. The areas of change and I'll and I'll flip back and forth so you can see the differences. So on the top. Drawing. That says west elevation. The circle is around the the original gym that we showed you in February. And this is what it's going to look like now. It reduces quite dramatically from that to that, right?
Just help us understand this. Is that a reduction in? In volume or is it in absolute height? Can you tell us a little, is the foundation starting lower? Is the roof pitch?
So it it's all of what you're saying, right? So we we had a a gym that was maybe about eighty by a hundred. Now it's more forty by fifty plus whatever the, you know, stuff is around it and just general. So it's like half the size. We also for competition gyms, you have to have twenty four feet. Of height. So that if you're playing volleyball or something like that, it meets the standards for this. That's more now. A multi-use space for younger children, we can reduce the height. We've also increased the pitch. To to create a kind of a nice look with trusses inside. And it also allows for the sound of solar panels facing south. So the the height has been reduced. The peak in this is a little higher than the. In terms of the the shape of the building, but it's still lower than the origin. So if we go back to. The second drawing, the one that says east elevation. That's the south, south street elevation where that big oval is, is where we had the five classrooms lined up. We look at the next drawing. Now you see three classrooms with the center one kind of protruding a little further and in the corner, the two classrooms that turned. In the. One below it. Says south elevation. We're in the courtyard looking. Towards Cherry. And again, it's the the gymnasium size. And you can see how that volume has has decreased. And and there's a little more of a roof there. And we've taken a quote of some of the. Dormers on the existing church to put the dormers on this building. And then going back to the bottom drawing, the north elevation, this is what it looked like from Cherry Street. And again, the reduction of as the two classrooms turned the corner, the lower roof. And also the the smaller gym and also by making the gym smaller, we've kept it kind of on the courtyard side. So it's actually. Made more space, but we added space between Cherry and where the the gym is. This is just an outline of the existing building with with the U and we kind of fit as we showed you before within the footprint of the existing and the shape of the existing. The chapel. No changes. Basically, the same as what we presented last time with the stone end walls and the brick sidewalls. This is the same overall strategy that we showed you in terms of the program requirements for. The community building. And the space needs that are graphically represented above with larger spaces. And then comparison, that's on the right hand side, on the left hand side. Comparing to the current thirty maple building and how much smaller those spaces are. And then the two plans at the same scale below. Showing the differences. The plans for. Community building haven't changed. They're the same. The elevations have changed. There was a. Comment about the use of stucco. And probably brick was more appropriate. We tried that. We liked it. So this is now in brick. And I think it. You know, as as mentioned, it it integrates all the buildings better, but they will have the same materials.
Sir, when you say brick, Commissioner Chris, it's actual brick as opposed to that peel and stick stuff?
No, it's not the not the plaster.
Okay.
No, no, this is.
Actual brick with mortar.
Actual brick and mortar and real construction. Yes. Then. This this drawing we had showed you previously, and it really has to do with building heights, and I think it's still important to kind of go over it. Most importantly is there's there's a change in grade. The lowest point is the corner of. Cherry and south, which is at elevation two ninety. That elevation grows to two ninety nine in front of the church along Cherry. It also grows to two ninety eight and a half if you go. Along South Avenue to the corner of Maple and South. And then if you continue along Maple towards Park halfway up, that goes to the elevation. Three or three and a half or something like that. But when you look at the heights of the buildings. The view at forty and fifty, the library at thirty four and and forty five heights. Building heights. And then you look at the elevate the heights of the buildings, existing ones on the site. The nineteen seventeen church with the tower at sixty one and the ridge at fifty feet. And the church with its roof at thirty two feet and the tower at forty eight. And you compare it to what we are proposing. The community building highest peak is at twenty eight feet, has another peak at about a little under twenty one. And then the the school itself has. The highest ridge at thirty two. The ridge at the. At the. Gym at twenty seven. And then the one one story wing along south are about eighteen. And the next drawing. All we did was let's do, look at the relative heights, right? So if you measure everything for that from that elevation at two ninety. And you add the elevation of the grade to the other to the height of the building, then the view really looks at like forty one, fifty one and sixty three feet height. The library between four and forty seven. And you look at the church obviously is is higher. Um and you look at the church obviously is is higher and in relative in this relative height to the uh. Uh new religious education building is at at the low, one of the lowest buildings um proposed. Uh same thing with the roof section, the sections through the site. Um I won't go through this, but it basically has been updated to show the heights of the new buildings. And then we updated this uh rendering, which is the rendering of the community building. Seen from the courtyard on the top and seen from the parking lot at the bottom. And it has uh been updated with um with the brick. Um as exterior material. Um and. Okay, and then we get to the renderings on the exterior and how it fits into the context. So this is, we're at Maple and South uh looking north. On the left is the nineteen seventeen church, the parish center and the school and on the right hand side is the library. Whoops. Oh, that's too bad. We have a rendering. It didn't make it into the.
Yeah, I think there's a slide missing.
Yeah, there's an image missing. Sorry about that. Um I'll send it to Sarah. I'm sure she can show it to all of you, but um. It it actually looks quite good in the context.
Excuse me, Commissioner Turner, I uh just want to say that I have seen the rendering and it is a. More accurate. Uh representation of the building and uh it 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 actually is very appropriate. Um just want to make that point loud and clear.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And then we, so this is now, uh again, the 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 question was, can we look at? What what this looks like a little further back on Cherry? So we're on Cherry Street, looking towards south. Uh is you've got the church to the right, the school and the gas station a little beyond. And this is the beginning of this rendering. We've made it a little, uh the colors not stand out that much. But you can see how. The gym has become smaller in in volume. It's also moved away from, just just go back and look at the existing school. Gym, the current gym, and how this one has moved back and created some space in front of it on Cherry Street. And then the two-story school behind that, you can see the garden wall and then behind uh you can see the 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 new chapel. Close to the nineteen seventeen church. Um I won't go through this much. We had talked about the materials um and how we looked at uh all the materials on. The buildings on site and some of the shapes and forms and what uh architectural cues we could take from here. Um and from the school itself, from the church in terms of the the use of stone on the front, the tower in the back of the building. Um and the the standing seam metal roof. And then in the um space in between the front and the back of the church, the sidewalls are the exposed uh concrete, exposed aggregate concrete. Um here's a a better look, a closer look at the colors and the materials of this. We actually found stone and brick. That starts to meet the color ranges of these materials and those are the colors that we expect to use. Uh here you can see the main contacts next to the aggregate and next to the the stone. All the materials as we presented last time. And then the uh renderings, a little closer rendering, showing what how these materials would be used. Uh for the community building. Um.
Oh, one thing I noticed is you have synthetic slate on this particular building, is that right?
Sorry.
You have synthetic slate on this.
This, it was it was a choice uh at a point because the. Uh the existing uh nineteen seventeen church has state roof. We're thinking, should we match that or not? Um yeah, I'm hoping that the solar panel system is going to work, which is a metal roof. It's a dark charcoal color. And that's really where we would like to go, but again, it's.
I just noted that I wasn't sure which way you were going.
Uh on a related question, the beautiful red brick in the nineteen seventeen church. Will that be tied intentionally or not intentionally with the red brick on the community center? Well, what is the?
Yeah, we weren't, we weren't trying to, uh we didn't want to replicate the 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 original church. We think that that's. Such a unique and beautiful building uh with all its materials and. Our original renderings, we were looking at red brick, but then we realized that we really wanted to create a whole context that connected better with. With the colors that we were getting off of the uh nineteen, what is it, fifty five church? Sixty five, nineteen sixty five, uh the Saint Erosius Church. Uh there's a richness to the colors and materials there and that's what we kind of took. Took the language from there.
Thank you.
Yep. Um. So these are the the rendered elevations of the of the community building uh with the brick. And then uh again, the the materials specified uh and colors rendered for the the uh religious education building. Um and. The overall rendering of both elevations, the one along South Street at the top and the one along uh Cherry Street at the bottom.
So. Excuse me, it's Commissioner Turner. Um I noticed that the glazing that you're proposing is charcoal. Which is, you know, tinted glass. It's dark. Um is this for security reasons or um I'm I'm just trying to better understand. It's a. Going to be a little harsh on that east elevation, north elevation. Um what led you to decide that tinted glass was the appropriate solution?
So the glass in the in the classrooms, in the different spaces is clear glass. Then there's a spandrel uh glass um at the floor elevation, right? Between the floor and the ceiling of the room below. Um and we want a a a tone that works with the overall uh color. Of the window frames and um we had tended to go in that that color tone, but if.
I think what Mr. Turner is referring to is there's a note on your drawings about insulated glass aluminum windows parentheses charcoal. I think you're referring to the frame color.
That's the frame. The frame color, it's not the, it's not the glass.
Got it.
Okay, so it's clear plates uh throughout.
Yes, clear throughout, except for except for the spandrel.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yep. Um so just to round, just finalize the presentation. Um we're creating two new buildings that really shape the campus, create a green in the center. Uh make it safe and pedestrian uh safe uh. Uh that green allows for a nice connectivity between all the all the buildings. Um we were placed everything, so we're respectful to the two historic uh buildings. We're going to try and use the highest sustainable standards possible. If it's solar, if it's geothermal, um. Uh we heard today from the solar panel, if if we do go in that direction to get sixty, seventy, eighty percent of the power. From the sun and all the systems are going to be electrical, um that's going to be a really good solution for the parish. Um and we've talked about the safe drop-off area. And um less less building coverage, more green space and that we've added to trees in the parking as suggested by you. Uh if you have any questions, please let me know.
Um I have one question. Um. Well, thank you for the presentation, first of all, and thank you for considering the comments that were sent back in terms of. Working with the scale and the design of the building. I think it works really well. Um just reiterating what Mr. Turner said. Um relative to the to the gymnasium and the the program within the building. It's fair to say that um other than gymnasium, the rest of the classroom. For the most part, the rest of the classroom floor area and capacities have pretty much stayed the same. They've been reconfigured a little bit. To address the massing, but you're still basically keeping the same program in those areas, correct?
Yes, correct.
So is it foreseeable? Knowing what we just heard this evening about the diocese's decision on the school program here, is there potential for? That to be reversed in the future, that the the programs might come back as a. As a school and then there might be modifications required, future modifications required to the building?
Uh I, so I think, let me let me answer it this way. The the number of classrooms that are needed. Is driven by the after-school religious education and the number of students that are currently in that program. And the fact that the parish is still growing. Um it is not the intention of Saint Elosius Church. To run a full, um what was it, K through eight school it at this site ever. But now, could it, could it, could that change with a new, you know, if there's a new um bishop? Or knew anyone? Sure, and then they would have to, they they that change would, if this if this size needed to change, they would need to come back. I.
Because that was the intent last month, right?
The intent last month was to have a a K through eight school, correct? To accommodate the bishop, the the parent, the diocese.
Diocese request, yeah.
Um did you have any other questions for Mr. Tred?
Um I don't know um whether or not he's going to address questions on the old rectory.
No, he's not.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Just um. Architectural plans, not possible. So um so I really like the design. It's really great to see the articulation and the change in materials. I think it really. Seems to really tie things together and I really appreciate the extra green space and uh. You know, it's just the character site looks very just softer, which is nice to see, um interacts with the town. So I was curious, I know that you you lowered the height of the. Through some of the adjustments of the gymnasium, but did you also, one of the considerations we uh spoken to is on the south elevation. Seen with the floor elevation was relatively high on that first floor piece of the uh the roadway. And I was wondering, was there consideration as to the the height of the the first um. Let's call it, you know, occupied level. Did that change or is that still the same?
Yeah, so we we have a a great change that the church floor elevation is about around three hundred elevation.
Okay.
And that corner of of Cherry and South is two ninety, so it's, you know, close to ten feet.
Yeah.
Um we've taken some of the grading in in that courtyard, so the courtyard will have a slope from the church towards the school. We established the elevation of the floor of the school at two ninety six, which allows handicap access to make all of the elevations work.
Kind of splitting the differences.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. When you're on the on the sidewalk, which you're at some point, you're at two ninety one or two ninety or something like that. We're slightly change the grade. Um the grade up against the building right now is two ninety one and a half, two ninety two, something like that. We're going to make it consistent about two ninety two.
Okay.
So between the floor level at two ninety six and the grade at two ninety two, which is added in six inches or something of dirt. Um and and planting, um there's a four foot difference. That's kind of where that stone base goes across.
Right, that water table.
That water table is at that two ninety six, so you'll see four feet of stone.
Yeah.
But then the 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 sills, right, in the classrooms are another two, two foot eight inches or something. So what's nice is that there's not an approach, nobody can come in, come to that window and look inside. The window is at now six foot eight or so, the the and it it makes it a a safe environment for the children.
Okay, it's a good consideration.
Yeah.
Thanks for explaining that. That's helpful. Thank you.
Commissioners, any further questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Um so I just wanted to move a little bit more into the site plan. Um so here we go. Um we do have uh Brian McMahon on on Zoom who can speak to the changes to the site design. Um a- as you've already heard, we've had an increase in green space, an increase in the number of trees on the site. Um we have reduced the number of parking spaces to one seventy six, but as discussed, the parking is really designed for the Sunday services. Um and it there's not really any particular reason that the number of spaces was what it was before. There seems to be sufficient parking on site, um even if we do reduce it. And I think the the benefits of adding the trees are um substantial to. Um especially that large uh asphalt area. Um but let me uh let Mr. McMahon speak to that. Brian, are you on?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Uh for the record, Brian McMahon, licensed professional engineer with Redness and Me. Um and I really, Michael and Amy touched on most of the site changes. They really weren't, there really weren't many. Um the biggest changes weren't the introduction of the planted islands and trees in the parking lot. As Amy mentioned, there's a reduction overall of uh fourteen parking spaces from one ninety to one seventy six. Uh that coupled with the increase in green space due to the smaller footprint of the religious education building and the bigger courtyard. Uh means that uh the plan, while the plan you saw last month. Uh would have resulted in a reduction in impervious coverage and corresponding increase in green space. Of between six and seven thousand square feet for the site. With these changes. Uh that change goes up to about fifteen thousand fifty, just over fifteen thousand square feet. So the net effect of the plan you see on the screen is that we're reducing impervious coverage from current conditions and increasing green space from current conditions. By a little over a third of an acre, I think, which is which is substantial. Uh and so the 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 grading changes, as Michael mentioned, are fairly uh fairly minor and really incidental. To the modified building footprint. Uh one thing, one benefit from uh the change in the site. Plan, I know Commissioner Turner um. Uh last month had a question or two about the the ability to phase and stage the construction through the site. Uh this opens up that courtyard even more. We have consulted with AP Construction. We have uh issued a a modified um. Uh logistics plan there showing a a crane setup, uh offloading and the and the trafficking through the site. That that one-way sort of clockwise loop through the site coming in off of South Avenue. So I think the over overall, I think it has benefited uh the project, including the 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 staging and logistics. And really, that was it. That those were the biggest changes. There was been no subs, really no significant changes to drainage or utilities. Uh it's really just about the the coverage and the parking, uh what has changed here.
This is Commissioner Nielsen, just so I make sure I get the numbers right. Overall, the coverage on site is reducing by fifteen hundred square feet, is that?
No, fifteen thousand, uh from from current, from from current conditions today. Uh we are reducing hard surface, impervious coverage on the site with this site plan. And therefore increasing correspondingly green space on the site by just over fifteen thousand square feet.
But that includes parking. That's not just building coverage.
That's that's all, that's correct. That's parking, buildings, all hard surfaces, correct?
Do you have the number, the change from building coverage from existing to the current proposal?
I I I do. I I provided it to Sarah. Uh I think it went from twenty four to approximately twenty one point three percent. Of the overall site. I I can dig up the actual square footage numbers if you'd mind.
No, that's that, that's all I needed.
Okay.
Um hi, it's Commissioner Turner. Um I um read that there were. Uh I guess a partnership or some input from a major university about sustainability. And how they were helping you come up and and enhance the uh design. Um could you? Uh talk to that?
Brian, do you want father? Can I like to speak to that?
Sure.
Um thank you. So yes, in a cooperative experience with both the Diocese of Bridgeport and Villanova University. We are working on a sustainability plan that involves uh geothermal, solar. Uh green uh effi- efficient green energy and also uh the creation of. Uh a green space that is both compliant with what the commission would ask and what's in line with. Uh Catholic uh social teaching. Uh that's the the short version of it. So uh safe to say, uh the outcome will be. Uh compliant with what the town is looking for and it's really a teachable moment for the the um faith community. Uh about uh what.
uh, what, uh, how we are to um to put it in a bumper sticker way, save the planet. Period.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome. Father, I'm sorry, Father, can you just state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, Father Robert Canelli, pastor Saint Aloysius for record. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions? Okay.
Um, what I did wanna just clarify a response that I gave earlier regarding the um, this ever being a school in the future. Um, which was to say that whether this is a school or not is not the whether there is a school on this site is solely the decision of the diocese. They can the diocese could make the decision to put a school in here in the future. However, if that decision were made by the diocese, they would have to work within the structure. But, you know, assuming we get the approvals from you all, they would have to work within the approved structure or come back to ask for changes to the to the site.
Understood.
Okay. So the the last point that I think needs to be addressed is the thirty Maple, which is the old rectory. Um, I believe that the, um, no?
So she, our consultant that we had hired, Marie Ennis, she was on the Zoom, but she has since disappeared. I just texted her again. See where she is.
Okay.
So.
Um, we do have um Kevin Archer, who is was the structural engineer who presented to you previously is available if any of the commission has any questions for him based on their review of the peer review letter.
We don't at this point. We're hoping that we would have the peer reviewer here with us to speak to the to the review letter. No response yet.
Nope. I texted her ten minutes ago and then at ten oh one. So no responses.
I think, uh, well, unless there are other questions for us, then I think we're, we haven't had any public comment. If you wanted to do that and then perhaps go back to Ms. Ennis.
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay.
Does anyone in the audience have any public comment on the application for fifty seven South Avenue? Either here in the audience or in Zoom world? Uh, in the audience. Yes, please. Please come up to the podium. Thank you.
I'm Mars H. Hardigan, the second parishioner, resident of New Caden and a parishioner of Saint Aloysius. And I'd just like to say, speaking for myself, and I am a friend and admirer of Monsignor Canelli that this has uh been essentially a sad day for Saint Aloysius, that we have to close our school. But uh you don't have to look too far to see that that's what's happened to education, Catholic education. And uh Saint Aloysius has done a fantastic job with its youth ministry. And I think that uh this project which speaks to our our faith and our belief in what we're doing and in the youth and the ministry of Saint Aloysius uh really deserves your favorable consideration. A lot of work has gone into it. And we'll be here for a long time. Not I, I'm January and calendar is catching up with me. But this will be serving this this area for a good long time. And Monsignor Canelli has spent a tremendous amount of time, both in prayer and in action to make sure that the right right proposals put for before you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any public comment? Zoom world, anyone? No response? So we did have our peer reviewer, Maria, right, or Marie? Marie Ennis, who put together the peer review report. I don't know if you guys had a, if the commissioners had a chance to um, review it. She also assembled a series of photos of the findings. Briefly go in there. Giving a um you know, observed conditions and assessment of the existing condition of the building. Basically, the conclusion was that, you know, the structure was generally stable. There were some deficiencies when, you know, cracked plaster and movement in upper floors. Every sorry?
She's about to join.
She's about to zoom. Okay. So um gave a fairly favorable conclusion here um in terms of the condition of the building. And I know we we had sort of opposing views on the viability of the structure and trying to keep it. We all understand the the constraints that the size of the existing building places on the program requirements that the school has for it. Um, but we did ask to see if there was any um, any possibility of keeping the building, repurposing it. And, you know, determining what the structural viability of it was a big component of that. So based on the report from Marie, I don't know, Marie, have you joined us yet on Zoom world?
Um, she's in the waiting room just now.
Right there?
Yep.
Okay, uh, Marie Ennis, you there with us? She's muted? You might be muted.
Yes, I was.
There we go.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Thanks for joining us. Um, we were just getting into the structural assessment survey and letter that you put together for thirty Maple. I was doing my best at dancing around like a news anchorman, filling in white time here, but um can you please just go through your survey and give us a summary of what your findings were and your conclusion?
Yes, um, so I did not do a full structural analysis, which I believe Archer Engineering did, where they they did calculations and analyzed the framing members. Uh, I did have access to the report, so I saw what their conclusions was were. And instead, I decided to go and look at the conditions I could see and um, evaluate the extent of the problems that the building has, and it has some problems, but um I didn't see problems that made me conclude it was uh, dangerous or it didn't function for its original intention. And I understand that perhaps in the future, another use is going to be proposed that requires different code compliance and so on and so forth. But I I just want to look at the overall performance of the building. And so my report addressed uh, from the cellar level up to the attic level, the conditions that I observed. And I didn't see, in my opinion, a huge amount of deterioration and damage, other than when you get to the second floor and then up to the third floor. There is some cracking in the plaster, which is appears to be original plaster on woodlath, which is extremely susceptible to movement in a building and will always express the slightest bit of movement, um much more so than, say, a gypsum board kind of finish when there has been movement in the building. It appears that there's a problem with the roof, although in viewing the roof from the exterior, the ridges are pretty level. Uh, it's not like some buildings you see where there's a flattening of the roof and you can kind of, you really visualize and see that it's pushing out terribly on the walls. I didn't see that level of a problem. However, clearly, there's some kind of problem with the the um pattern of cracks that you see from the second floor and the third floor. Although there's some portions of the roof, uh, there's a gable on the front southwest of the building, I believe it is. That there's not the same kind of plaster cracking in the rooms below, so that gable appears to be okay. So I didn't do the thorough numerical analysis that the Archer Engineering firm did. Um, however, just looking at the condition of the building as it is, a hundred years old, having been used for a residential building, although it appears that some of the spaces on the first floor were probably used for gatherings of some kind. Um, whether it's the dining facility or for prayer, that kind of thing. So I think there's some capacity there that might be more than a typical house, but the upstairs areas were probably just considered to be bed chambers. With that said, I guess, I I concede that, you know, there's repairs that are required for sure, particularly with the roof. And then the proposed use of the building triggers all kinds of other code issues that, you know, I'm not fully aware right now of what all the proposed uses of the building are. I just want to look at the building as it stands today. And I didn't see it as necessarily being a tear down, although I understand there's a lot of reasons why the owner is considering the demolition.
And from a structural perspective, would you say that, and it's currently or it was originally designed as a residence, so a, um let's call it a light use activity. Um, if this were to be used more or continued using it in a more intensive way in terms of capacity of people and rooms, et cetera, then additional structural reinforcement would definitely be required. Is that a fair statement?
It depends. I think, you know, for office use that those loads are less than for assembly and it probably wouldn't be considered for assembly due to the size and the access issues. The first floor, again, I didn't do the analysis, so I would defer to Archer Engineering. I don't know what the floor capacity is. Uh, if it's fifty pounds, more or less for an office use. Uh, however, when you do, and this happens in house museums all the time, if you have offices in a house museum, you shouldn't put your filing cabinets on the wooden floors. You should put them, if you have a place like in the basement that has a concrete slab on grade, you can put the filing cabinets there. Certain things have an extra heavy load that you do not want to impose on your wood floors. So, you know, again, I just looked at the overall condition of the building as it stood for all this time under wind and occupancy. And that's what my observations were based on.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions from Mrs.?
Chairman, a couple of questions. I'm looking at the um Archer Engineering report dated February twenty third. And we mentions mentions a number of unsupported unsupported bearing walls on upper floors over supported the second floor over the first floor and the third floor over the second floor. The indication I I I'm getting from this is that's not a good thing. Uh, if you could speak to that, it'd be helpful.
Yes, um I mean, the kind of roof framing where you're using ridge boards uh, and valley boards is instead of beams, sometimes people now, modern times, you will use an actual structural beam at the ridge of your roof. But traditional roofing that is still done today in residential roofing, it it's a board. And basically, the way it works is you have rafters from both sides pressing more or less equally on it and it creates a stable condition um, without having an actual beam at the ridge of the roof. And as I mentioned, the ridges were pretty straight. Uh, there are knee walls, as they say, which if you go up into the attic, there's a flat portion of the roof, then it slopes down, and then there's these vertical walls that let into like closets into the unfinished attic space. Those are the knee walls, I believe, we're referring to. And um I I believe what the Archer report is saying is there aren't doubled up framing members under those walls to provide extra support. Uh, I'm not sure I saw all of those conditions, so I perhaps would defer to the Archer Engineering report on this one, but some of the cracking in those walls may be related to some deflection of the joists that they're sitting on.
There's also mentioned in his report that the foundation wall mortar is deteriorated due to moisture and just stress. Could you talk about what you have
Yes.
not seen on the site?
Yeah, um I'm not sure about the stress part of it. Normally, um with masonry walls from older buildings like this, they're proportioned more for uh, just geometry, geometry and stability uh, so that they're stable by their thickness. You don't want them too thin because then they can buckle and so on. I didn't see bulging inward of the walls that would indicate overstress from the soil on the outside pushing laterally onto the the walls. I mean, I deal with our our business pretty much only primarily does existing buildings. Generally, for particularly residential buildings, even if they're solid masonry and not wood, when you analyze the the weight of everything going down, plus the live load, the occupancy of the people, it's usually not overstressed in the masonry. And, yeah, there's some deterioration in those walls, but certainly not to the extent that it was you know, walls were bulging and failing and there there were large cracks or anything like that. So, yeah, there's a lack of maintenance. Sure, that's that contributes to that, but um from this period of construction, I believe, was nineteen seventeen. Uh, they were using mortar that had some cement component. It's not a lime mortar like you'd see in the early nineteenth or eighteenth century, so it has a little more resilience. But yes, moisture is not a friend to these walls and part of any renovation work, I mean, I know there were leaders that were not connected to the gutters, which concentrates water next to the foundation wall, which contributes to these kinds of problems. Grading at the site is also an issue. You want to make sure everything's sloping away from the building so that the drainage isn't causing moisture to be retained in the walls. But I didn't see anything horrible. I mean, I've seen a lot worse. Let's let's put it that way.
I was looking at the um Archer drawings and comments on the second floor, mentions a sagging floor, stressed exterior walls. Exterior wall is bowed out. That's what you've, you was in this, what you've seen or not seen on site near.
I I, yes, I looked, I looked for that and um there may be some outward displacement at the where the roof intersects the outer walls, which may be related to the thrust of the rafters. But I didn't see it's like scary kind of movement. Sorry for the 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 terminology, but it wasn't extreme by any means. And I think it can be retroactively, excuse me, repaired uh, if someone were to undertake a full restoration and repair of the building. But yeah, some work needs to be done up at the the roof and the intersection between the rafters, the ridge beams and the building walls and making sure the building walls are wall tied in at every location and that the thrust from the roof is not being transferred to those walls.
It's just a a a final question on potential reuse of the building. That, again, as I think you've noted, there are a lot of small rooms on the second and third floor, which were for priests and nuns to live in, rather modestly, I would assume, uh, which is not the current use of the building. Um, and that, if I correct, the applicant has said that, given the size of the rooms, they're not really good for classrooms and some other use. good for classrooms and some other uses, and and they were suggesting that perhaps they'd have to do a gut job on it and, you know, open, open it up quite a bit. I'm wondering if that's done, what sort of structural issues would need to be done in order to maintain physical integrity of the building? Just to be sure it's, you know, s- stays, stays up.
Right.
Sure. Some thoughts on that?
Sure. Uh, typically where you have a partition wall that i- if your joists are running, let's say east-west, and you have a partition wall that's running north-south, it's very possible that that partition wall is helping those joists to get from spanning from wall to wall and preventing them from excessively deflecting downwards. So if you're going to take out walls that are potentially contributing to the, um, support of the floor framing, then you'd want to reinforce the floor framing before you do that and make sure at the bearing points, whether it's an exterior wall or another interior partition, you have sufficient support there. Um, so that's one thing you would look at. Normally walls that are parallel to the joists are not necessarily considered to be bearing walls, but, um, I think that in this building, there are a few locations in there may have been some with the knee walls upstairs that were on, or there may have been some partition walls that Archer observed to be bearing on a joist that wasn't a doubled up joist. Usually if you have a wall sitting on a single joist, you'd prefer to have it sitting on at least two joists to give it some extra uh, stiffness to support it. So yes, if you wanted to do a complete reconfiguration of the partition walls, the partition walls in the, um, that are parallel to their steel beams that are in the, I'm sorry, uh, wood girders that are in the, in the first floor framing, you see them from the cellar basement, excuse me, on, on some steel pipe columns. Those points, those walls are certainly helping to support framing in the building clearly. Uh, we could see from the basement that the, the joists lap on top of those girders and which means they need that girder to sit on from both sides. So, um, if you were going to make any changes to those partition walls that align with the uh, big, heavy timber girders in the first floor level, you would absolutely need to do reinforcing of the framing. So to answer your question, I I guess is yes. You'd have to carefully examine what you want to take out and and then decide what you need to do to reinforce the framing so it continues to work and potentially the outer walls as needed.
Thank you. Uh, those are my questions. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any further questions on?
Commissioner Turner, um, could you, um, explain a little more of, you know, these alterations that would you would make with the partitions on the building? As far as building code, um, you're going to trigger a significant requirement for upgrading the building on a structural level, mechanical, electrical. Um, can you maybe talk a little bit about what that change of use impact would have on the building, how you would make it conforming to the building code?
Yes, uh, a lot of what triggers changes in code, a lot of it has to do with the number of people you want to have in the building. Even if the building has some structural capacity to support the proposed live load from the people, uh, coming into the space, then there's the egress requirements. Uh, there's the accessibility requirements and there are fire code requirements. So there are multiple requirements to, uh, address dealing with a, uh, proposed change in use. Uh, sometimes with existing buildings that are considered historic, you can have some variances if if the fire department and other, um, local uh, authorities are in agreement about it. I mean, that happens with house museums all the time. There's many house museums in Connecticut and the ways around some of the code upgrades, which would kind of destroy the little houses and things, um, is to limit how many people you have in the building and that sort of thing. Uh, and again, that puts a hardship on the owner for what they can and cannot use the building for. Um, but yes, I mean, if you have to sprinkler a building like that, that's a huge project. ADA, it seems you'd have to have a path at the right grade uh, down to the basement level. There's a entry to the basement on grade at the north, the back of the building. People could come in through there and then you could put in, um, some sort of lift or elevator. Um, and then that, you know, you have to do reframing of the floors to allow for a shaft for the elevator or lift to pass through. So, um, yes, it triggers a lot of different things. Um, I, at this point in time, I'm not a hundred percent sure if the building were to be reused, what it would be proposed to be used for. But you're absolutely right. There are a lot of code compliance issues that have to be considered.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any further questions from Ms. Ennis?
Uh, this is Commissioner Nielsen. I just have a quick question. It may be beyond the scope. I I mean, I read what you wrote, so I think it is beyond the scope, but do you have any comments on the historical value of this building?
Um, I, you know, I'm not an historian per se. I like the way the building looks, but that's, you know, that's neither here nor there. Um, I just think that it has a certain amount of dignity. There's also, if it were to be demolished, I mean, the windows in that building are fabulous. There's, there's things in that building that I would hope could be salvaged and reused somewhere if, if that's the way it goes. Um, I mean, the windows are just fantastic. Other than that, I I guess I'm not really qualified to make a statement on that, and I would defer to other preservation people about that.
Thank you.
I'm just an engineer.
Thank you. Commissioners, any further questions?
Was there any, um, evidence of, I have a house that's similar aged and one of the things that we found was just in the, the radiator heating pipes, uh, within the walls were covered with asbestos and that was problematic.
Um, good question. Um, my house is eighteen thirteen, by the way. Lots of problems, but not asbestos. I, I saw some, you know, I saw piping in the cellar and I have to be honest with you, our liability insurance does not include hazardous materials. But I would say that I did see some old insulation that probably needs to be looked at. Um, I'm not saying there was a lot of it, but I believe I saw at least some of that. So you would obviously for, for any work that gets done in the building, have to take a look at any materials you have, um, that could be considered hazardous.
Okay. And and along those same lines in terms of mechanicals, uh, did the electrical wiring, any sort of awareness of when that was last updated?
Uh, to be honest with you, I do not know. The last time I believe I saw BX cable, which is not at the time they built the building, I don't think they had BX cable.
The older armored cable, but with the cloth covering, so like the nineteen thirties through the nineteen sixties, say?
Yeah, I I saw some metal, the, the bendable BX cables. Um, but I don't think, since I'm a structural engineer, I didn't really exhaustively look at that. So I I don't think I really can comment on it.
Okay, thank you. No, that's, that's all. Thank you.
Commissioners, anything further? Okay, Ms. Ennis, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much and good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
So, Ms. Sabatakis, the big question is, is there any opportunity for the church to save this building and repurpose it?
Um, and I think the answer based on the, the programming needs are it does not fit within the, with it, within the programming needs and the difficulty, as was stated both by Archer Engineer and and frankly by the peer reviewer, as far as the work that would need to be done to make it usable is, um, quite, um, e- extensive. Um, I I did want to actually respond though to two sort of questions, points that were made during Ms. Ennis's presentation. Um, the first of which is, um, there was a discussion of salvaging, for example, the windows. It is the intention of the, uh, church, if this demolition goes forward, to, um, do a full salvage of any salvageable pieces, um, as well as, you know, we've, we've offered, um, anything that the historical society thinks would be helpful for their collection uh, to them as well. Um, I also just wanted to note that both Ms. Ennis and Archer, um, commented on the style of construction and um, Ms. Ennis says in her report that architecturally, it's a mix of styles, um, cedar shake cladding, applied faux half timbering, et cetera, and she states, um, some of the architectural features, um, are reminiscent of stick style, although that style originated in the nineteenth century. So I think it's sort of, we do need to sort of go back to, is this an architecturally significant building? And I think I have not heard anything just to state that other than being old that it is. Um, I think originally when the, um, Historical Commission was looking at this, they were under the impression that it was a stick style building, and I think the, the experts have indicated that it is not. Um, and so at this point, based on that, based on the, um, the structural deficiencies, um, in the roof, uh, and the load that that's put on the walls, which both Ms. Ennis and Mr. Archer, uh, alluded to, it's simply not possible for the church to incorporate this into its redevelopment plans.
So that's, that's assuming that it would, it would need to be repurposed for the community building that the new structure is programmed for.
Right.
Was there any consideration given to repurposing it as the residence for the priests? Because currently priests live off-site, correct?
Um, yes, that's correct, uh, across the street. They, they live across the street and property that is owned by the church.
That is owned by the church. Okay. Got it.
And it's a little, um, if I may be so bold, a little nicer than what the sort of monastic, uh, style of that building was.
Fair enough.
It's not that nice.
I've been in monasteries, I can tell you, some of them are actually pretty nice, so. It varies.
True.
Okay. Commissioners, anything further? Okay.
Did you want to hear anything from Mr. Archer since he is on the call?
Oh, he is?
Yes.
Didn't know. Um,
I would.
Sure. Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Archer, did you have anything you wanted to, to add? Are you there?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, so video. There we go. Um, I I just really just wanted to repeat again, um, what Engineer Ennis had said regarding the roof structure. And we we both agree on that, that the roof structure is the main problem with this building. And it's causing stress, um, most obvious at the top levels, uh, the finished third floor and down through the second floor. Um, it, it doesn't really, it's not as obvious as you go down through the building, but, um, the roof is, is the main structural issue here. Um, also Engineer Ennis, uh, talked about in her discussion here and also in her report. And she has a photo of, um, one of the rooms has two file cabinets in it. And she, you know, rightly says that, uh, you know, a use of such as that, which is like an office use in a formerly residential structure, uh, can cause structural problems. And that was also, uh, what Engineer Ennis was talking about with a change of use. If this does become, say, an office use for the parish, um, the live load requirement for the building increases by twenty-five percent. So if if the building is already having some structural difficulty and we do a change of use and, um, use it as office or or something like that for the parish, it it is going to require significant structural upgrade. So it, it's, um, structurally not a good direction to go to in this building. And also further to the point about whether this is a, a significant, uh, stick style architecture building. Um, Engineer Ennis pointed out that in her report that it is, um, primarily a cedar shake siding. And I went through and looked that up and actually that's not common with stick style architecture. Generally it was clapboard or flatboard siding. Um, and and cedar shingle was using, used more as relief panels or decorative panels, but it was not the predominant siding system in stick style architecture. And the other was, a question came up last time when we met about whether there was uh, demolition by neglect going on. And, um, I I I think there were two points there in, in Engineer Ennis's report. Uh, one was that the plaster is actually in very good shape or pretty good shape on the first floor and 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 decent shape on the second floor. There's some cracking which is coming due to the over stress from the roof above. Um, but and and she noted that, you know, plaster of this age is very susceptible to cracking, especially, um, uh, due to temperature problems, humidity problems. And and I I think the, the lack of cracking down at the lower half of the, the building just demonstrates again that the parish has been taking care of the building, has kept the heat on and it kept humidity levels at a reasonable point. Um, so they, they haven't abandoned the building, walked away from it. They've, they've done what they can to, to move it forward. Uh, and the last point is, um, uh, uh, the, the roof gutter that has become disconnected from the leader drain. Uh, and Engineer Ennis had two photos of that in her report where she points that out. Um, it's actually at the southeast corner of the structure. And if you look closely in the photos, you can see that the paint in that area on the house i- is actually in, in decent shape. It's in, in pretty good condition. So that would indicate that the, this disconnection that has happened in the gutter system is fairly recent, you know, possibly in the last few months, six months, something like that. So again, it's not something that's been leaking going on for, for years or causing significant rot or anything like that. Um, tho- those are the only points I had, but I'm open to any questions that, that anyone may have.
Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Archer? Nope. Think we're good. Thank you, Mr. Archer.
Thank you.
Um, let's try to think of, um, so I, I think unless there are any other, um, questions that need to be addressed, um, we're at this point prepared to, to close. Um, you know, I think that this is really an improvement to the property. Um, I think that the school building itself is very, um, very tired and not a not a particularly attractive building to have on the, on such a central corner in New Canaan. Um, I think it is, um, it should be noted that the church has really done quite a lot to preserve Stapleton Hall, which is the sort of beautiful historic structure right on the corner, right as you enter New Canaan from the south. And I think that the new proposed buildings will be very much in keeping with the balance of the architecture and will really, um, improve this area of New Canaan. And I think, and in particular, when you hear the reduction in hardscape and hear how much green space we're adding, the solar panels, the, the commitment to, um, sustainability, I think it's really going to be um, a gem for the town. And I hope that the commission will consider approving both the text amendment and special permit.
Thank you. Anything further from the commissioners? This meeting is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, um, we do have the Order of Business for seventeen twenty-three Hill Street to discuss and deliberate, but I'd like to, if it's okay with everyone, I'd like to just go back and discuss and vote if it's okay in terms of our order, discuss and vote on the open applications that we have in front of us that.
That can fall under number fourteen.
Sorry?
That could fall, uh, voting on the closed, published, yeah.
Right. So we'll go through those, uh, and then we'll conclude with a discussion on Hill Street.
Are we, are we still adjourning at ten-thirty?
We're not hearing anything new after ten-thirty. So.
I'm not sure what that meant.
Decide on old stuff or stuff we did today, I think.
Okay.
Meaning this is the point in the meeting where we really accelerate.
I see.
Okay. Um, so. Uh, going through. Applications we heard tonight. Uh, thirteen Owen Oak Ridge, that was the pre-application, they're going to come back to us. At a later date with a full application. Uh, forty-three Viti Street. This is the change of use going from the dry cleaner to the um. Special sales services, I forget what's the best.
Specialty services?
It's not exactly retail, it's. Custom sales and services, or I forget how it's worded in the uh, in the regs.
Specialty services?
Specialty services, thank you. Any comments or? Liberation on this?
I uh would actually move that we approve this. It, the reason that I would recommend that is that I think that it's going to take an existing structure. Keep uh an appropriate use in that part of the town. And uh allow us to continue to keep tax revenue flowing through to the town and. I'm disappointed that there's no alternative to force a review of the prior use. As a dry cleaner for environmental purposes, but since there isn't, I would move that we approve the use as proposed.
Without any conditions?
Without any conditions.
Do I have a second?
I'd like to second that, but you know, echoing Art's concern, is there a way that we can roof? Um, send a referral to the building department on the inspection of the renovation um to. You know, take a closer look at that, um.
You probably could.
I mean, it's a, it would be a referral, it doesn't guarantee anything.
Doesn't guarantee anything.
Better than being silent on it, I guess, is my point of view.
Yeah, we could do that.
I'll, I'll, Chris Herring, uh Commissioner Herring seconding uh Commissioner Casavans.
And uh, can you just verbalize the referral, how would you like to word that?
Uh, the commission would like to recommend a referral to the buildings uh department. To upon renovation, um. Consider. You know, potential. Dry cleaning uh remediation work.
That's good. But so this is not a condition of approval, this is just.
Not a condition, it's just a referral.
Sure.
I, I don't want to complicate our approval.
Re- review. Review potential contamination issues from previous dry cleaning tenant.
I may suggest would have also wanted to, to the health department, since it is a public health issue.
You could go to both of them.
I could send it in the same email to both.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'll move to vote, um. For approval on forty-three Viti Street. Dan Radman, yes, Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
Kent Turner.
Yes.
John Cris.
Yes.
Art Casavat.
Yes.
Cleric Discornea.
Yes.
Chris Herring.
Yes.
John Engel.
Yes.
This one is approved. Next one is one seventy-five South Bald Hill Road. This is for the pool house within the hundred fifty foot front yard set back. Any comments from anyone?
Mr. Chairman, the only comments I would have is that I think the uh landscaping plan needs a lot of work.
Okay. Would you?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move we would approve, although with the condition that the landscaping plan be changed. Uh, to include, um. Plants neg- native to Connecticut and also that the um trees that are on the, I guess, east. Excuse me, west and north, uh, that uh. Additional trees be put in for additional screening uh against the uh. Towards the uh road itself, the right of way as well as to the shared driveway. Um, with the final plan being uh approved by the uh. Town Planning Office, Town Planning Officer.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Move to vote, uh, Dan Radman, I vote yes, Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
Kent Turner.
Yes.
John Cris.
Yes.
Art Casavat.
Yes.
Cleric Discornea.
Yes.
Chris Herring.
Yes.
And John Engel.
Yes.
This one is approved. Move on to, well, one thirteen Hemlock Hill is continued. We'll look to see them at the next regular meeting.
That will go to the twenty-fifth of April, not to the.
That's correct. And that brings us to fifty-seven South Avenue. So.
I think this would warrant resolution, so I wouldn't recommend voting on it tonight, um. There may be conditions and there should be a brief resolution that I can wrap. Just given the size of the application.
But we should, we should uh.
Discuss.
Discuss and, and at least determine a direction.
Definitely.
Agreed. So I can start this off, I think. It's unfortunate that we learned tonight about the, the um, the school component that the diocese has decided to. End into the K through eight here, um, it's been, you know, as, as I know, some of the commissioners' kids have probably gone to the school. It's, it's been a valuable asset in the town for many decades, literally, um. But it is their decision, um, they are, they have done a great job at, um. Taking comments that we've sent them on the scale and. Um, design of the building in order to better to respond to the village district guidelines and our uh P O C D guidelines. Um, uh, as to the scale massing articulation of the facade, I think they've done a great job with that. Um, it's much more of a, I guess the right word is approachable, much more of an approachable building from the streetscape. Uh, the way they've put it together. Um, and um. I'm in support of it. Um. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Chris, I, I think the um. Uh, design is an improvement for the town, it's uh lower in scale, I think the design is far better than existing conditions. Um, I also like the uh expansion of green space and the approach they're. Taking to use of the green space as well as other environmental supports, which I think will be beneficial not only to the site, but for the town broadly. Um, regarding the uh potential, the um planned demolition of the former parish house. Uh, which seems to be used for some storage at this point, um. Uh, I, I, I get a sense from listening to both of the professional engineers that the. Building has some issues, not insurmountable issues, but. Pretty substantial issues as far as um. Work that would need to be done to uh strengthen it. Uh, in particular, um, significant changes would need to be made in order to make it more functional for. Call it parish use, uh, since it was designed as a residence, they want to do something else with it. Means often essentially a gut job renovation, uh, opening it up and walls and bearing walls and all that. Which would be quite a substantial effort, and in other words, they also have to make it ADA compliant, which is another. Uh, leap, uh, and, and so I, it seems like doing that would be. Quite a substantial undertaking and this commission would need to think about, is it sort of worth it? Um, I'm, I'm leaning towards. Probably not, uh, as far as maintenance of the uh, requiring maintenance of the old parish house. Um, it's sort of a nice old building, um, is it so nice that? Uh, there's compelling reason to uh cause it to be maintained, I'm, I'm, I'm not quite there. So those are my views, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, I'm inclined to agree with you, I think that the evolution of this plan was quite significant. I admire the fact that the uh committee were, received a clear statement tonight. And I'm sure it was very difficult to have to do this today, but about the fact that it will not necessarily, it won't be operated as a school. Um, I think that the integrated. Vision of this school set in the context of the neighborhood is quite positive. Um, it's obviously an issue for the school and parish to decide. Do they wish to make an investment of this amount of money? In the context of this not being used as a school, but that's outside of our purview.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to just make a comment, I think the, the, the evolution of the plan was quite, quite, um, quite. Positive and really encouraging, and not only, it was also encouraging to hear them working uh with a leading university like Villanova. To look at how, um, you know, the building can be used as a teaching instrument, I thought that was nice to hear and, and quite. Um, quite exciting. But the community, I also thought it was nice to hear about the concept of them using it as a preschool, I know that the town has identified. Youth programming and youth um education as a deficiency in terms of our capacity. Um, it's been in multiple articles, so that allows, you know. Incomes and other things uh like that to make the town more sustainable. Um, I also like the fact that they uh double leveled the school building, the old building was just a single level and they double leveled it. Which means that the, the footprint on the ground is less of, have same square footage from a use perspective. And I thought the materials are very consistent with. The town, I just think it's, it's, it's a really nice uh addition.
Mm-hmm. Agreed.
Um, I would agree too, the evolution of the plan came out really nicely, um, they seemed very responsive to our comments. Um, I love the idea of more green space, especially the trees in the parking lot, because that can be. Quite the hot area, um, I think I'll be, I'll just be really aesthetically pleasing to like soften up that hard parking lot. Um, as for the school, it's unfortunate, but. Honestly, the purpose of Se- of Sanays right now is their youth program, their CCD program is just. Huge, um, my children have gone through it, I've taught in it. Which I want to just touch on quickly, a use for the former rectory. I've been in that rec, that former rectory for a year, teaching confirmation students, and it is cramped. It's cold in the winter, it's hot in the summer, it's, it has no use for Sanay, Sanays doesn't have a use for it, it's an old home. And that's all it is, it, they don't have a use for it and it doesn't fit into um their plan, so sadly, I would agree to demolish that school. But um, I think the um, all the additions will really benefit Sanays, because. Where they're booming now is in their youth program and that's where they need the space and this new school program will definitely do that.
I, I share most of the comments that have now been made, you know, I'm prepared to move forward favorably.
Okay.
Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, should we be suggesting any particular conditions to approval at this point, so that. Uh, when we meet next time, we will have something drafted with all that in, uh, how would you like to proceed?
One, one comment I'd make is they, they showed the landscaping plan for the inside the building, um. But this, the section on South Avenue, we have a four foot high kind of foundation rock wall, there was no landscaping on that side at all. Um, so I don't know if we need to have that softened somewhat, but. The renderings that they show, not up there, but on, on your site, uh, looks like we just haven't done anything outside of the building. Which I think it, it's warranted, it's going to be quite upset that.
Sure.
You could.
Excuse me, it's Commissioner Turner, I didn't get a chance to uh. State the obvious, I, I think that we all feel very positive and strongly about this project. Um, the applicant has done a tremendous job. To listen to us, to um change the design, to make this the best it possibly can. And I for one, just thank them and um, I really believe that this is going to be a nice addition to our town. As far as the conditions, um, you know, we might want to ask ourselves. About the traffic impacts because of the change of use or the less density. Um, and any other possible change that the uh, the use is. Might impact on the current design. Um, and it, it, it could be something very simple, it doesn't have to be a extensive report, it, it could be. An opinion by an expert.
Wait, does it, one, one thing to point out is that they don't seem to be quite finished with some of their like mechanical designs and, and sort of energy efficiency elements. So, I mean, I, I wouldn't want to condition that, but it, there might be. You know, some of the materials haven't quite been nailed down as to the roof and, and. Just knowing, I mean, I'm not saying, it seems like the intent is very much in the right direction, so I'm not insinuating anything. But you know, we, we've gotten burned before with, you know, the wall being, you know. Cement versus stone and things like that, so there, you know, there are any sort of material changes that it come back to us or.
I think the roof in particular, it would be, it would be good to understand. I, I just briefly looked up Luma when, when he was describing it and it is an integrated. Um, solar roofing panel system, um. It, it's unique, if that's the most polite way to put it. Um, so it's better than sticking panels on an existing roof. Um, but is it, is it a fully seamless and nondescript roof? Not exactly. So would definitely be good to understand what extent of roofing they're going to want, that obviously south facing is best. Maybe it's going to be on the inner courtyard where it's not as visible. You know, I think that does need a little more definition. But as far as material boards, they've, they've given us their. Presentation on the, you know, the brick, the metal, the glazing, all of that is pretty, pretty much locked down, so that's good. And I like the fact that they've modified the community building to, so it's not just stucco or ephesus, but it's picking up all the brick. So it's more unified.
Mr. Chairman, quick, I can remember, uh, the uh roofing material look would have been what, without the new?
It would have been just standing the seam.
Which is okay for me.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's perfectly nice.
Yep.
Roof, I'm, I'm a bit, first, I'm a bit indifferent between the two visual wise, I'd rather have something that's general electricity. In a perfect world, but.
I guess my concern is in, in looking at the product they recommended, it doesn't integrate. Well with standing seam metal roof. There, it's just two different directions of material and transitions and it, it could look okay, it could look really. Sloppy.
What do you think their collaboration with um the diocese of Bridgeport and Villanova, they would probably. Like to attack that head on, right?
Absolutely, and they, I'm sure they can come back to us with, you know, supporting information of how they're going to do it and.
Like innovative things.
Absolutely.
So are you suggesting this is a condition?
Well, I've got three so far, what I've heard is uh potentially some additional plantings or at least a, a further clarification of the landscaping plans. Around South Avenue and possibly even, I, I didn't look, but along Cherry, I don't know if that, that was addressed along the gymnasium side. Um, that might be worth looking at. Um, the second one was uh a re-reviewer, relook by our exit experts. To Mr. Turner's point, um, speci- I think you're referring mostly to traffic, right? Um, Mr. Turner?
Correct.
So given the different, uh, different program and. Drop off, pick up times, et cetera, how that will impact the traffic study. Um, and to your point, Mr. Turner, it could be a simple one-page letter saying no impact or less impact. Uh, they don't have to redo the entire study. Um.
Mr. Chairman, have we formally closed the application?
At this point, yes.
We did.
I did, yeah.
Which means the, the data we have is the da- data we have, I don't see how we can ask for additional things in a closed application.
It's, it's a condition, we're just asking for additional.
Conditions would be different, but.
Yeah, I, I'm also thoughtful and, and the reason I asked the question about, early on about. The Maple Street Rectory is, is. We heard from two structural engineers who. In my opinion, agreed that there's nothing terribly wrong with the building. But it doesn't need to be torn down either, and I'm thoughtful about. Our experience with um the library and. I guess it'll get out of our hands, but I would love to think that St. Aloysius could. Reach out to the Historical Society and this might be a condition to have a real conversation so that we don't end up. Um, with the problem being, we haven't had somebody, at least not on this case. Specifically expert in. The historical styles here say that this is not a. Good building. We had two structural engineers say that they don't think it's a special building. But I'm a little worried that we may end up with another one of these discussions about whether it's. In the historical zone or ought to be in the historical zone or something like that.
Don't don't you think though that a lot of the experts had said this particular stick style, which the historic people were going after. Is in a certain timeframe and this this house hasn't fallen that timeframe.
Where I am on that, I I think you're probably totally right, Claire, but I think what we got is we had two structural engineers. And specifically Mariannas, who said, that's not my, I'm a structural engineer. I don't do that. We we have not had somebody like the experts that looked at uh fifty one. Say that this is not a. Queen Anne style, you know, whatever it is. And and again, I'm, this is obviously the applicant's challenge. Right? But if they don't want the building, right, they should probably proactively try to work with the Historical Society to figure out the best resolution. I don't know whether we can condition our approval on that or not. It might make it easier for them, but.
I mean, it seems a bit too little, too late at that point. They're proposing to demolish it, so.
Yeah.
Well, there are two ways to, Mr. Chris, two ways to demolish a building. Why don't you take a wrecking ball and just crush it? The second is you gently dismantle it and save the bits you can. I've seen any revolve buildings where they. Take out the old redwood beams, which they sell off and do something else with. And there may be pieces here that can be removed. I've seen that in any revolve buildings that are maybe structurally unsound. They just gotta go. But there are windows there. There may be doors and other pieces that are. Someone's gonna want and they can be um handled.
I even saw that tonight with respect to the movement from the building from Mill Street to the Historical Society.
I I I believe their attorney did say that they would salvage windows and.
They did, but I think to Art's point, um, Mr. Castwell's point. That uh reaching out to the Historical Society as well as the New Canaan Preservation Alliance about the um potential. Um, repurposing of um larger components of the building. At least as a as a condition of approval that we ask them to reach out to those people rather than just holding a yard sale.
Yeah.
Talk to those bodies and see what can be done.
That that was a very significant statement that they made tonight about intent and they'd probably be really smart to make that message clear.
Yep.
Do we know if they've talked to them or not?
Wanted to have yet, but you know, I'm willing to to spot them on this one. My own sense of things. But um. Yeah.
I'm reminded of the Steely Dan song about, uh, you know, the the castle in the corner and, you know, you you sense trouble coming, but you're staying just to say.
Yeah.
I guess you have to be really old to know.
So they did, they did go before the Historical Review Committee, which would have been an appropriate time where the New Canaan Preservation Alliance likely would have spoken out. And my understanding is there wasn't anything formal from the New Canaan Preservation Alliance, so that. They didn't come here, right?
Then I would draw, I will draw, that's.
It says something to me.
That's very.
You know, they had an open meeting. They could have come and said, hey, we want to preserve it for reasons A, B, and C. Didn't happen.
So let's stick with the uh three conditions that we discussed earlier, the planting refinement. The uh revisit by the traffic consultant and a um materials, just a. A further verification of what they're planning to do with the um green, green initiative, specifically the solar roofing.
I think the traffic and as you're coming on that, everything that we're going to do with. Youth education and preschool, they're still gonna do. The only difference is fewer people gonna be there because the students are gone. So no matter what, I think it's less than they had brought to us. So I I think they, to 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 my mind, they've answered the question regarding that, and I think. You take their old traffic study and just dial it down slightly.
And that's the letter we're looking for.
I think I'm, that's that's my take on this.
We're looking for that from the applicant's traffic engineer before the building permit is issued. Is that? What we're thinking?
I would say yes, yeah. I think that's a very easy exercise on the part of the traffic engineer. You'll put together a resolution and then we can vote on it at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, so that takes care of. Uh, fifty seven South.
What, sorry, would we like that for the April special meeting or the April regular meeting?
Um, I think we can get through that at the April special meeting. Get it done.
Because that would allow them to to move forward faster, right?
Yeah, um, on that point, though, I think you're not gonna be at that meeting.
No, April special meeting, I'm I'm.
You are.
I'm good. Yeah, no, that's that one. It's May that I.
The May one, okay. Is there anyone here that's part of this application that's not gonna be part of the April special meeting?
What is the date of the?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Twelfth day.
You won't be there.
You guys still have quorum in that?
Anyone on Zoom won't be there?
I won't be there, but I could.
I could, I could dial in if it's just for that, if, because I know some people.
If it's just for that, I can.
We just have to make sure we have a quorum for the vote.
Out in the Grand Canyon.
Are we gonna reserve for them their usual ten fifteen slot? No, we'll give them seven fifteen.
But so on.
Looking out for you, Amy. It is now.
She for six fifteen.
Okay.
On April twelfth, we'll be doing both this one fifty seven South and Hill in Urban. I'm just trying to figure out what what we have on the the mid-April meeting.
Yeah, correct, those two.
Okay.
So we have.
I will be in attendance. I'll be on Zoom, though.
That's fine.
We do have until the first week of May to decide on Hill, so it's not going to be, you know, an intense. You know, go go through of every single resolution like it was for fifty one Maine at the last resolution. I think it's gonna be more of a workshop of. Putting together the resolution. So I I don't think it's gonna take six hours.
Oh, I hope not.
Do you, do you think there's any way we could change that meeting? Because I mean, it's during break. A lot of us are away.
So that was just chosen, um, because we were, you know, trying to have people plan ahead and I thought. Second Wednesday of the month, or I thought the second week of the month would make sense.
During the school break.
No, no, I understand. I I wasn't one of that. It's just this.
Yeah, yeah.
I can look to see if there's availability.
Well, what do we, what do we have on the agenda for uh the twenty fifth?
Um.
Currently.
So there are a few residential applications, um. The police station um just submitted on Friday, so I know they would like to go forward. We have the.
Get it up.
Um, adding their paddle tennis court, um.
What club?
The field club. So those are the two big ones, a couple residential, including the Hemlock Hill.
Yeah.
And then on the twenty eighth, I think in a perfect world, that's when we're voting on Hill Street.
Okay, so let's look at an alternate special meeting date for middle of April.
Okay.
See if that works. And we would limit that to Hill Street discussion and the fifty seven South.
I I just moved stuff to meet that schedule, just so you know. So I, you know, I I had travel. So I I moved stuff to make sure I'd make it, because I knew that thing was gonna be on there. So I mean, I'll I'll work with an alternate date in April, but I mean, it's the problem of once we put these out, right?
Yeah, I know.
So we're talking maybe the seventeenth.
Sorry.
Being a special meeting. Then the following week, which is the twenty fifth. Would be the regular meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. I'm just not here.
We'll have a regular meeting on the seventeen.
So you'll find out room availability for that weekend.
Which week, Sarah?
The week of the seventeen. Is there a particular day that's better?
I'll do anything possible to make the media. I I'm, what I'm really strategic, like many of us, we're trying to make sure we don't. Especially as on these eight thirty G, lose the people who've now gone through twelve meetings.
Right.
And and I actually, I literally changed travel plans. It already changed after you sent that then to make sure I made that. You know, then to unravel it again gets harder, but that's. I will change my plans to make it.
We're not doing anything with the playhouse, right?
Pardon?
The playhouse is not in our.
Not on the radar right now.
I mean, we haven't gotten an application, so.
So let's, let's talk about Hill Street. We need to. Structure a resolution on Hill Street. And. Um, I'm assuming all of you have heard the wetlands. Uh, inland wetlands commission denied the application. Was a six to one vote, I think, right?
Yep.
Six to one vote on denial, um. Which is pretty solid in terms of determination on that side. Um, and. Goes to reinforce and and helps us reinforce whatever. Determination we make on our end. Um, Saran and I spoke about this earlier in the week, um. Basically, it it comes down to. Certain issues that are still outstanding that are. Um, what I believe a basis for denial on Hill Street, and those are number one, the wetlands. Right? And with inland wetlands commission ruling on that. That's a, that's a very solid point. Um, the second one is our fire commissioner and um and fire chief both. Uh, sticking to their guns in terms of a second means of egress ingress to the site. Which the site currently does not have. The owner has, even though they showed that sketch, that was not part of their formal submission and not part of their application. So the application as currently submitted. Does not have that second means of ingress egress.
Whi- which sketch?
Remember, they had the alternative.
They had the alternative.
Driveway.
They they touched neighbors. The easement on a neighbor's property and that's on the sharp left.
Yeah. It was, it was further, if you're looking at the site plan with Hill Street, with um Hill Street at the bottom of the page. Right? And your primary entrance drive is the S curve that comes in from the left.
Right.
They had a piece of property that was, I guess it was a flag lot or it was a lot with an easement in it. On the right side, it was actually on Urban Street, also parallel to the site. That would be a potential easement driveway to get into the site from the other side. But in order to make that work, they would have to cross even more wetlands. Without even more bridges and more disturbance.
And and not just that, it had to do a sharp left and they wanted to have it grassy. So I mean, what do you, what do you, you have to pave it so emergency equipment can get in there.
Yeah.
With snow, otherwise it's, you're sinking into. It did not strike me as a particularly usable. One for heavy vehicles.
We don't, we don't know the viability of that solution, because it was, again, it was a very preliminary alternate that they tabled for us. And it's got a lot of hair to it beyond the wetlands, because there are other property, other flag lots involved that have. Easement rights to that pathway to get to their properties, right? So it's a lot of. Wheeling and dealing to even try and make that work.
I have some familiarity with that property. I represented it many years ago.
Yep.
And I actually believe that it is defective access to that. From the, I think it's twenty three Urban Street, but I don't think it has access to that easement. That easement serves the. The neighbors uh to the north.
Right.
Or to the east.
East.
I think it, and I believe that my recollection, it's going backwards, but my recollection is that there was a a six inch. Um, gap between the two driveways. So while they look like they are parallel. And adjacent, there is a six inch gap between them. That the owners have not been able to resolve in the last hundred years. It would be useful. To have that investigated by attorneys before. This finally gets and to add that into our resolution and say, and furthermore, the the. Alternate solution proposed by the applicant has significant defects in it, if that is the case.
Well, we're not there yet, because remember that. They did not formally submit that alternate as part of this application. This is the primary application. They threw it out during one of the meetings as, hey, this is something we're thinking about. But not something that's part of this application. So we're not really ruling on that second access way through there. That may come up later.
We should do the research.
Fair, totally fair. But you know, it it may come up as a resubmission element that we would then have to do due diligence on.
Actually, we we probably shouldn't do research on that, though. I mean, if if in fact, right?
It's up to them.
It's up to them. If if our, if I, if we. If they applied, they've got to then deliver it or not, right? And if they can deliver it, they can deliver it.
That's right.
I I I also. On on the fire issue. The uh state fire marshal approved the single entry. But uh I didn't get a sense that the state fire marshal had actually seen the site physically.
Correct.
And walked through it.
You did not.
Did not.
Correct.
And uh it is being appealed by the town.
Correct.
Where is that? Has that been?
So, um, essentially, when the applicant um. Appealed the fire marshal's decision, they turned around a decision in three or four days. Um, when our fire marshal. Appealed that decision, um, they were. From previous experience, they were expecting that it would take seven to ten weeks to get a response, so they. It it was early March where he sent in that request, so we're only three weeks, four weeks past that, so we're still. Weeks away from getting any answer on that.
So Sarah, could I just ask a question? Have you actually reached out? Or has somebody reached out to the state to get a status update? Because it might be quite germane to us to know, even if the answer is nobody's done anything.
Yeah, I can ask the fire marshal to do that. Um, I don't think there has been a request since it's it's only been a couple of weeks, but I can.
Yeah, no, that would just be good policy, right, to check. I mean, the answer is probably no, nothing's asked.
When when the um, the the information of in the hands of the state fire marshal was simply the information presented by the applicant only?
That's my understanding.
Yes.
So our fire chief and our fire marshal didn't have a chance to even say, hey, here's my opinion and here's why I think you should do X. It was simply a.
No, they provided.
They provided that information.
Okay.
Yeah. They attached that letter to their submission to the state fire marshal.
But there was no physical. Visit to the site.
The fire, so our fire marshal had requested that that occur and um the state fire marshal did not.
And then the third element, um, so we talked about the. Um, the wetlands, we talked about the ingress egress, the second means of ingress egress. And the third element, I believe, which is a valid argument here is the, the um. Safety of for the traffic safety and the condition of. Hill Street and Urban Street in terms of vehicular and emergency vehicle access. Just given the size of the road, the parked cars. The modifications that would need to be made to make it a viable two way street, which it's not right now. It's really just. A one way street or a one lane street with a couple of cutovers that you can pass people on. Um, I think that's i- i- it's a valid point to be made in terms of. How um problematic that street is for. Um, fire and life safety equipment. Buses don't go down that road.
Yeah, I I'd piggyback on that saying pedestrian safety for like.
Pedestrian safety, but school buses don't even go down that road now.
I know, so the children are gonna have to walk down the road and you see these construction trucks coming down.
I I I think Claire's great here. I think we need to break that into two. One is street safety and the second is pedestrian safety.
Agreed.
Because if pedestrian safety issue flows in and out of the site.
Yep.
Um, and I I think these are very substantial issues.
I I would add a third in terms of health safety, because I mean, the idea of running. I I would add a third in terms of health safety, because I mean, the idea of running a rock crusher. For for six months straight adjacent to a residential neighborhood. To my mind, just seems insane. You know, the amount of hillside removal they're proposing. You know, forty-five feet by a hundred feet. Whatever the cubic. Millions of soil that is. And the idea of running a rock crusher. You know, five days a week for four months just seems. You know. Little space, special place in hell for. You know.
I I would also note, um. Remember, they never gave me an answer on this one, but you could have a clip what twenty, thirty feet. Some souls get up there and fall off and go smush on the bottom. I really think so. And just. To have this here just strikes me as such such a danger to have a massive cliff here in a hundred unit. Apartment building. It, someone's gonna climb up there, want to look at it, children. Others and. Just, it's dangerous to have something. This steep. This close to a major residence.
Yeah, we have regulations on terracing for a reason, you know, where you have to go up four feet and back eight, up four feet, back eight. I mean. You know, for that very reason.
Here we don't. And I mean, I I climbed up it. And it's steep.
Yeah.
And to think to drop down twenty-odd feet. Onto asphalt. That's not appealing. And to to have a situation where we would uh allow such a situation, a condition to exist. Strikes me as a um prima facie threat to health and safety. In my mind. I mean, do they put up a fifteen, ten-foot fence or something that uh keep people off? You have the. Visual issues there and.
Yep. Can't imagine being the neighbor behind them, knowing that you're gonna have a fifty-foot cliff at the back of your yard.
We haven't mentioned yet the neighbors below them who already have significant water problem. And I can't imagine that even if you don't produce more water from the site. The mere fact that you are going to have so much impervious service and and are going to redirect the flows of water. Around the site to the downhill neighbors who are already dealing with hundreds of gallons of water management, you know, per day. Uh, you know, i- it's a very precarious situation to be, you know, downhill of the site already.
That's a good point.
I don't know how we articulate that.
I don't think they ever answered the questions. There are gonna be an impact to the wells and neighboring properties. With all that crushing and. That was never answered. There was concern for the residents saying that that their wells can be affected, the water flow can be affected.
I don't. I mean, downhill of that is all sewer and town water. So I don't know if there are any wells. Yeah, so urban, urban street, hill street, that's all sewer and town water, so.
What about Russian Ridge, which is just above?
Russian Ridge is above. Street, so.
Al- also, there's, there's a critical issue here. These guys already have a water problem, right? Uh, and as, you know, I'm not sure that that's a compelling case for why. You don't build something which. If we listen to their technical engineers will not net add water. It doesn't solve the problem, but I'm not sure it's a reason. That we can move to denial because there is apparently a well-documented existing water problem. Uh, yet I I don't know. Uh, another issue that I thought about this after we closed this, and it really ticked me off because I didn't think of it, but the assertion that. The number of school children coming out of the view. Was quite small. And that therefore we shouldn't be worried about the impact on the school, but. I did not ask at the time how many of the view units are sold and fully occupied because they cited a specific number of. Of students who had come to the school, but I think the view is, I don't, I mean, you see it advertised in the New York Times. I don't know how many of those units are actually filled.
Well, I I. Well, Commissioner, I I would say that the applicant guesstimated, so I cannot rely on their guesstimate, guesstimates. Uh, they had an opportunity for their expert to. Speak specifically to new Canaan conditions such as we have in our affordable housing here, which would be a better comp. Or maybe one in Stanford or Greenwich or some nearby town. Didn't do that. I I I got the sense it was some off-the-shelf study. They just. Put a new. Cover sheet on. And uh I spoke about it, the chairman spoke about it and. Uh, I I didn't get a, I really didn't get a good feeling on how much I could rely on. On that study to be specific to the conditions we would have here, given our demographics. I just couldn't rely on it.
My only comment to that would be that their expert was someone um with a PhD and um I I studied ge- geography and. He he is a very renowned geography professional in the academic world. I really likes himself. Yeah, but um, I mean, I I was familiar with his academic work long before Arnold Karp hired him, so. On it, but I'm just. I'm not sure if it. It's a. I think there are much more valid points to this denial than that specific concern. It's it's still a concern, but. I don't know if we should be hanging our hats on that or maybe focusing more on. The slam, I I don't want to say slam dunks, but that's.
Yeah.
It is a point, I mean, like.
The stronger argument.
The more we, the more we kind of.
Dilute.
Dilute our argument by saying, you know, this, this, or this, it it could distract from the core.
And I'm not sure we can make the case of making comparisons with the view. In insofar as that um was built for a different uh market and it was uh sixty percent rental, forty percent. Uh, for sale and the rentals went quickly and the for sales, you know, have been progressing probably half. So leaving twenty of the hundred vacant. So um he he can point to eighty percent. Uh, occupancy there, but but the fact is it's at a different price point. And um. And the significant number of rentals versus for sale makes it just a very different project.
It it the, but my only point, John, is they use that as their presentation of why we shouldn't be worried about it.
It's a defective.
Arguments.
Huh.
It's a defective argument from their perspective, but I agree that's not gonna be the important argument.
And it's a different mix, I think, of uh size units. I don't think it's gonna be an identical mix of three-bedroom, two-bedroom, one-bedroom.
Just one, one last thing maybe about conditions is there, it's completely inaccessible to transit. For them to get to the train, they have to cross one twenty-three.
That's true.
So I would say.
Walking across one twenty-three is no fun.
No sidewalks.
And it's a, it's a hike.
Yeah.
It's a hike.
That that's actually a crucial point to given, given the.
Well, they're claiming it.
Yeah.
It's not public transfer, transportation.
What, John?
It's not public transportation friendly.
No.
I agree with you.
So I think we have enough here to. Put together at least a draft resolution.
Definitely.
And we can circulate that for comments. And then um.
Just so you're all aware, so with all the other eight thirty Gs, it was three resolutions. This one, we have a fourth resolution we have to do because we had. Interveners on it, so. You, it, it's much shorter inland wetlands did one, we can, if if we feel the same way, then we can likely. Borrow from most of their resolution, but we also have to determine, did the interveners meet their burden of proving that there was a substantial negative. Impacts to the environment based on this, so. It seems we're leaning towards, yes, they did meet that burden if we're leaning towards a denial of the application, but that is an additional. Item we have.
Understood.
So, so, sorry, I think then you would. Advocate as we think about our logistical and tactical planning. That this could be longer, for example, than today's. Redraft was because we have a different set of issues and a fourth issue, so. If we're. Calendaring this, we would do it at the. First special meeting in April, is that right?
Correct, so. I'm, I'm thinking. For the site plan portion of it, I have a solid draft for you guys for the April special meeting. Um. We try to get that where we want it, so then I can take the language perfected from that to put into the other resolutions, so then hopefully April. In a, at the end of April in a hopefully hour to two hours, we can. Send it away.
Also, on on the, on the wetlands issue, it's my understanding that. The inland wetlands commission operates under a different set of rules and it's basically just the crossing issue. They were focusing on, and we're looking at the entirety of impact on the environment. From the uh development in toto, which is different. Uh, a broader brief for us, because of the, the one they have. And so we may want to consider that too when we frame our. You know, potential wetland damage.
I I don't know, is that true?
So.
It's my understanding.
So their purview is um substantial negative impacts to the wetlands, but so they're. Focusing on all of the impacts to the welllands, not just the crossing, specific up. Like the specific request more than anything was that they were trying to expand the crossing, but the commission. Reviewed and all their peer reviewers and stuff were focused on all impacts because. Was additional work being done in the fifty-foot review area. That wasn't just the crossing, you know, related to site improvement, so. Um, I mean, I can talk to our attorney about this, but I think. The wetlands portion of it should be. Brief on our end and maybe just reference their resolution, because they're the wetlands experts, we're not.
Right.
And so. You know, we're agreeing with their resolution, so it may just. Be better to reference it instead of trying to. Go through every single issue.
I have one question that's been bothering me uh all along, the that um couple, happened a couple of meetings ago. There was a uh, the applicant has said that he got his approvals for a sixteen-foot wide, then an eighteen-foot wide, and then a twenty-foot wide. Is what I thought I heard, and they uh neighbors uh leapt up and stood up and said, no, he didn't. And their attorney said, no, he didn't. He didn't get his approvals. I found that confusing. I mean, it should be ra- rather. Black and white, clear, but. The uh intervenors alleged that he did not get, in fact, the approvals to get to twen- the twenty feet. He needed for emergency vehicles.
So my understanding of that is um their most recent modification, twenty nineteen or whenever it was, they were. Upgraded and approved for a sixteen-foot wide driveway that had a two-foot buffer on each side that was grass. So it cumulatively was twenty, and so that's what the applicant was saying, and I believe the interveners. Were interpreting that as that they had twenty feet of impervious driveway, and so the interveners are saying, no, they never got approval for twenty, so.
But the, does the applicant get to count two feet of grass? Uh, when, when, when making a case to us that he has what he needs for emergency vehicles and everything else?
Well, so I mean, that would be a. To, you know, the.
That should be a legal question, right? The wa- the lawyer should be able to tell us that that is considered or not considered roadway. To have uh, you know, grass edges.
It seems they're arguing it is because, you know, with their second. Alternative plan for the driveway, they're saying, oh, grass is perfectly acceptable to allow as emergency access for vehicles. It's. What it seems they were representing. For that portion of it, so. That's what they're representing, but. And I understand your confusion, but I think.
I'd love to hear from Pete Gelderman on whether there's any precedent for considering. Grass shoulders as part of a legal roadway.
I hear you. I just, I'm not sure if it's relevant to this determination at this point, since.
Isn't it relevant in terms of the apparatus access? Because I think that's the biggest thing is that they get, basically they were saying, hey. Our apparatus are gonna get clogged into this bottleneck because. They're arguing, hey, you're gonna have the ability that two passing trucks go by each other. We're gonna basically have two lanes of traffic. And I think. There was some concept saying, well, we. The trap, the, the truck is wide enough such that it will have like two feet overhang or whatever over. Over the grass, it won't actually the tires.
So I mean, the wetlands application was to expand it to a full twenty impervious that got denied, so. I hear what you're saying, but is that? Like.
I think it's gonna be an important argument that we make, that his access is defective, and we have to be very sure about why exactly it's defective.
It's not just the act.
Well, I think.
But it was a cul-de-sac when you get the. Maneuverability within the lot. Is challenging.
But the set, what this, the point Sarah just made is. The, the, the crux of it. They were looking for twenty feet. Wide. Impervious roadway surface. Which is what they represented to us that they were going to provide. As a safe pathway. But they were denied by wetlands.
And so they don't have.
They don't have it.
Yeah, we don't need.
Only have.
Book here.
They only have the sixteen feet. They can argue as much as they want that the truck can drive off onto the grass and back and do spins and turns. But it's not a roadway.
So we should refer to a sixteen foot. In our, in in our paperwork, in our resolution.
Correct. Well, we can refer back to.
Sixteen with shoulders.
But we can refer back to the, because this is the first time they've come to us. With a proposed twenty-foot roadway. They've been before wetlands multiple times. It started, I believe, as a. Twelve or fourteen foot back in like two thousand fifteen.
It was original.
I I understand.
Yeah.
With the original, then it went in two thousand nineteen, went to sixteen feet, and now it's going to twenty feet, and they got rejected. So we, and as part of our denial, we can, again, for that component, reference back the denial by wetlands.
Well, I think of other applications, there's Main Street. Which. Are smaller site, but and again, access issues are a big deal for fire safety here there. And on on Weed Street, it went from one entrance to two and touted it, isn't this great? Well, here you don't have to, so. Uh, and it was quite clear from the fire marshal that he was, he was not happy with the situation. Everybody thought it was a threat. I remember being asked. He said, we need a sec, we need more space or need a second entrance. And when a fire marshal says need, that's a pretty heavy word in my opinion, so.
I do think that John is right, that we ought to add that part of that maneuverability once you get onto the site of vehicles.
The fire marshal and the, and the, and the fire chief both mentioned that is an issue.
I believe so did our peer reviewer and.
Yeah, they all did. All right, commissioners, I think we have enough. To put the draft together. Um, last order of business is approval of minutes. Correct? Do we have anything?
So I had also um a brief administrative um. Issue with our um schedule. That we have posted on the website, um. It's not. Super urgent, we could push it. Special meeting, um. We also think it would take about five minutes, so. Up to you.
What is it? What is it regarding? Sorry?
It's regarding our schedule and our, what we have listed as our application deadline, um. It was. The previous town planner had um changed the. Structure of what our deadlines were um from what had historically been done and. After review of state statute and just. Seeing historically how applicants interpret that, it's. The schedule we're operating under is very misleading for applicants and it's causing issues for staff when applications get submitted and. Applicants think that they're on different timeline timelines and legally what we have to provide to them, so I was trying. To revert us back to what was done from what I can tell from nineteen ninety-nine through twenty seventeen. Um, that's what we have our Word docs. That's how far back they go, and from ninety-nine to twenty seventeen, it was done a certain way, so I'm trying to. Bring us back to that because there seems to be some confusion.
And just clarify what the issue is, was it? The, the date was moved to be too late, too early, what was?
Sure, so um the close, so there are two columns, closing date for application submission, and then there's the hearing slash meeting date.
Mm-hmm.
So essentially, when you submit an application, if you submit the application the day before the regularly scheduled meeting, so if. If someone had submitted an application yesterday, their timeline dictated by state statute is very different than someone that applies. The day after the regularly scheduled meeting. There is a month difference in the timeline based on state statute. And so historically from nineteen ninety-nine to twenty seventeen. It was stated that in the column of closing date for application submission, that the deadline was the day before. A regularly scheduled meeting. In twenty seventeen, that got changed to the day after the regularly scheduled meeting, so then. What I've noticed from my time in town is people have interpreted that to mean if I submit. On Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, my application will then be heard at the April twenty-fifth meeting, and that is completely incorrect. If if someone applied for an application tomorrow, we don't have to hear them till June. And they're reading it as if they. Get to go in April, and it it's caused issues because applicants are having expectations that are incorrect. So I'm trying to revert us back to what was represented. From ninety-nine to twenty seventeen.
And they, and from the date that they submit. They have to be heard within sixty days?
So when they submit, their date of receipt becomes the next regularly scheduled meeting. Or thirty-five days, whichever is sooner. Then from there, you have sixty-five days to open the application.
Whereas if you. If you were to accept something. Tomorrow on the twenty-ninth. Tomorrow on the twenty-ninth. That artificially adds an additional thirty-five or thirty days.
Correct.
Got it. I'm all for moving it back. Makes total sense.
Okay.
Do you need a motion?
We need.
Yeah, I need, I need you guys.
I'll move that we. Accept the Sarah's, I'm sorry, the town, assisted town planners. Administrative rule suggestion.
Second.
Great, let's have a vote. I vote yes. Kristen Nielsen.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
Kent Turner.
Yes.
John Cris.
Yes.
Art Casavat.
Yes.
Claire Scornia.
Yes.
Chris Herring.
Yes.
And John Engel.
Yes.
Great, that was easy. And uh approval of minutes. Can we lump these together as one vote?
Um, do we have site visit minutes yet?
Yeah, so we will tomorrow, we will have them. I just need a little help on the attendance. Um. Is Mr. Engel still there?
Yes.
Uh, was, Mr. Engel, were you present at the site visit for the Hill and Urban Street project on December ninth?
No.
Yeah, okay. Um, so then the other regular, so people I had that were absent, so tell me if I'm wrong, if you were there. Kent Turner, Art Cassavant, John Engel, and Chris Herring.
Dick Ward was not there.
Dick Ward is not there, all right. Thank you so much. I will have these meet. The minutes for uh December ninth, ready tomorrow, Sarah, but the other minutes are good. I do have a question though. Sarah, are we circulating all the minutes to the commission? I, I know I get them and I see them and I think Dan does too, but I don't know if the larger commission gets them.
Um, I believe Lola posts draft minutes to the website, but I um, I don't believe they get circled, circulated to the whole commission. But we could change that.
Okay, let's, let's, so let's not vote on them tonight.
Okay.
Let's push on them, let's circulate the minutes to the commissioners, let them have a chance to review, and then we can do a group vote next, next meeting.
All right.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time.
Get some stuff done.
Yeah, you did.
And we're twenty minutes early.
I know.
No, it's not even tomorrow, you killed Tuesday.[1777.82]